Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Bassin's not here. Campson?
Here.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Martin's not here right now. Rousen?
Here.
And Clanton?
Present. Dr. Martin has informed us that she's on her way. So she'll join us as soon as she gets here. Madam Clerk, if you'll go ahead and, well, actually, let me get a motion to enter an executive closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into closed executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we go into an executive closed session. Madam Clerk, please let the record reflect that Dr. Martin is present here now and Ms. Bassin. If you'll go ahead and read the resolution.
Yes. Move that the members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board of the City of Norfolk. Pursuant to subsections 2.2-3711A1 of the Act, the subjects of this portion of the session are the continuing annual evaluation of the division superintendent required by Virginia Code Sections 22.1-600.1 and 22.1-253.313:5, and the continuing renegotiations of the superintendent's contract pursuant to Code Sections, Virginia Code Sections 22.1-60 and 2.2-3711A29. Consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where discussion in open session would adversely affect the school board's negotiating or litigating posture, and consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsections 2.2-3711A7 and 8 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the session are those set out above in subsection A of this motion to a extent consultation with legal counsel is needed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any discussion? Hearing noted. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Rousen?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye. The motion carries, and we're in executive session. Do I have a motion to come out of executive closed session?
I move to come out of executive closed session.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Do I have a second?
I second.
All right. Dr. Rousen. It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, will you please read the resolution?
A resolution certifying an executive meeting of the school board of the City of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas the school board of the City of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board of the City of Norfolk, the such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the school board of the City of Norfolk hereby certifies that. To the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawful exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board of the City of Norfolk. Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Rousen?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye. The resolution certification is approved. Good afternoon, everyone. It's always good to see our trainers for governance training. I would like to make notes, Madam Clerk, that you have this and our superintendent, that the Board will have a special call meeting on Wednesday, October 12th, from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. for the purpose of continuing the evaluation discussion and contract renegotiation. Okay? And so with that, I'll turn things over to you.
That went by really fast.
All right.
Halloween first. Halloween, then Thanksgiving. So, yes, we're glad to be back. Hopefully, you all had some opportunity to kind of take a breather. I know you guys have been entrenched in the work, and we've got the kids are back, and you had a holiday. A holiday, and you had a school closure. So we got a lot going on. So I'm happy to be back with you all. Our outcomes for today actually are the same ones that we had last time because we're still going to be entrenched in this work. We want to continue to build this collaborative-centered trusting relationship for unifying this board and superintendent in the service of students of Norfolk Public Schools. We're going to spend a lot of time today just talking about trust, and it's going to lead us to the discussion about the norms. We're going to continue that and finish that. And I also want to begin the conversation around how we create coherence and begin to set the strategic direction that aligns to the new strategic plan, which has been approved by this board, yes?
Yes.
All right. Okay, good. We'll be spending some more time on that in the next month when we really think about, like, what are the key performance indicators? I know you're going to see some data, so we'll be able to identify those KPIs. And then from there, we will draw out what the board's work looks like around those KPIs. So we're doing the right journey. We're doing the right pathway towards this work, so I appreciate you guys leaning into it. Again, I always like to remind us that we're a community of practice, right? And what defines us is this common purpose, that we're all in this for the success of the students, and that, you know, we want to make sure that we always come back and we remember that as community of practice, you all use one another as partners and collaborators, and that the answers are already in the room. It's a matter of us getting them out. Our overarching essential questions, again, are the same. I want you to think about this. Actually, I want to hear it from you. So can somebody read to me the first overarching question out loud?
How will you as board members live and advance the MPS mission statement?
Yeah, we want to keep that front of mind. Although we do have intentions of revising the mission statement, because that's one of the recommendations that you made early on, we still want to make sure that we're living it and we're advancing it, right? That we have ownership and ownership and enactment of the mission and all the work that we do so we stay mission-driven. The second essential question, Ms. Campson, will you read it for us?
What is your responsibility, both personally and professionally, to dismantle, reimagine, and rebuild policies and practices that need to be used at each, every, each MPS student?
Yep, I appreciate you saying that. Each, not every, right? Because I-
I agree.
Yeah.
So it makes it easier to remember.
Absolutely, right? And so, again, it's about, you know, the work of the board being to dismantle, which is different than disruption, right? Dismantling is very intentional. Reimagine, rebuild, innovate, really think about, like, how do we create policy that moves this district forward? And so that's going to be our overarching essential question as we do this work. I always ground us in our norms for our time together, so we want to keep our eyes on the prize. We know that we all care deeply about Norfolk Public School students. In fact, you're going to hear us today as we continue to reference this work. We're going to always ground it in, in the service of Norfolk Public School students, right? Like, I want that to be like the sentence stem for all the work that we do, right? Whenever you think about your board meetings, you think about what you're working on, it's going to always be front of mind, putting it at, you know, putting it at the center of our minds that it's in the service of students. We want to speak our truths. We want to create space for multiple truths, recognizing that not everybody's experience is the same. Especially today, I really want you to lean into the conversations that we're going to facilitate and speak your truth, right? We want to create that brave and safe space for honest dialogue. Step up, step back, monitor your privilege, right? Be aware of how much space you take up emotionally and verbally as we have these conversations. And again, stay engaged because in this space, we are all equal. We want to get proximate to the problem, right? And we know that the problem, you know, one of the challenges with this board is unity, it's trust, it's a lot of these different things that I think sometimes hold back the work. And I think we've made a lot of progress in our four or five, this is our fifth time here, I think, I think it's the fifth, I don't know, July, August, September, October, November. Oh, no, it's only the fourth meeting. But I think what we've continued to surface is there are challenges in terms of relationship building and trust, and I feel like we can't, you know, we can't get into, like, the nitty gritty of the work until we first solve for that. And so we've, you notice we've been focused on that these first couple of meetings, is really about what does it look like to build trust? How do we put in place, you know, norms and procedures that help people feel like they can trust? And we'll talk more about that today. So that's the problem we want to get proximate to. We want to change the narrative, right? Because, you know, we know that there are negative narratives out there around this board, around, like, you know, public perception. And so we're being honest about that, and we're going to do the work to, and allow them, right, because it's a stream, allowing people to see you all doing the work of trying to change the narrative around the dynamics of this board, but also in the work that you're doing, right? I know that sometimes this work feels inconvenient and uncomfortable, and I want you to expect that, right? When you're, when you're kind of breaking things apart and rebuilding them, it's not going to always be comfortable, and so let's lean into that, right?
But also with that, just think about when things feel uncomfortable, what's causing that discomfort? Because that can be the, kind of getting to the root of what may be an issue that needs to be surfaced.
And today, we're actually going to do an exercise where you're going to be allowed to surface your personal burning issue. So, yeah, so that may feel inconvenient and uncomfortable, but that's okay, because we want to, we want to put these things in the space we can solve for them. And when you feel uncomfortable, we want you to stay committed and engaged in the work, right? Because I think that that's, that's when we can check out. And so we want you to, in those moments, respect the process and recognize that there's purpose behind what we're asking you to do. We want, of course, listen respectfully and maintain confidentiality, and my favorite one is the last one. It's always about maintaining hope and optimism, right? Even in the face of brutal facts, I think that if we did not maintain a level of hope and optimism, you know, of these past couple of years especially, imagine where we'd be, right? And I was in, all last week, I spent, last week, in the Pacific Northwest. I was at, I spent two days in Pueblo schools, and I spent two days in Vancouver schools. And I got to go in a couple of classrooms, and I tweeted, or I put on Facebook, I don't remember where it was, a couple of pictures of, you know, us. And I said, if anybody is in a state where they're, you know, losing hope because they see what's happening around them, you need only visit a school to remember the possibilities, right? And a lot of people chimed in and were like, you know, responded, and like, you absolutely were, like, I needed that reminder. I mean, I feel like the work that we do is the work of hope and optimism, right? It's like investing in our future, investing in kids, and all the possibilities that they have before them. And so I refuse to lose hope, right? Especially, you know, even though the world is crazy right now, I refuse to allow myself to fall into a place where I don't maintain a sense of hope and optimism. And so I think that people who work in schools should definitely be the champions of hope and optimism because we see every day, like, what, the value of our work. So I'll offer you that. All right, we're going to hold space for the range of our experiences and perspectives. I always bring these to you. We want to center on the experiences of those most impacted. We want to recognize the limitations of our own lens, and we want to embody a posture of curiosity over judgment. And that's especially important as we attempt to build relationship and to build trust, recognizing that we all have our biases, we all have our blind spots. How do we suspend that judgment as we do this work together? All right, you have your toolkit, everybody. I did per the last time. Did you ever get an email that you were added to the toolkit? Everybody got that? And then when I, so my question for you is, when I added something, a new resource, did it send you an alert? No. You got an alert?
Well, it might have been because it was already up on my-
How long ago was it?
Like, a little while ago. I just added a link to one of the documents. So that was my wondering, is if each time I sent something. Okay, so what I'll do is, that's an easy fix. As I, when I add something new, a little message box will come up, and I'll just say, you know, something's been added or whatever. So that's how we'll solve. I thought it automatically did that. Okay, so, yeah, so you have the resources. There's a folder, there's a folder that has today's date on it, and in that folder has a couple of resources that I will reference, because you don't have to have them up and looking at them now. In your folder in front of you, I did print out this slide. See, Ms. Campson, you got your little, your note-taking capture sheet you had asked for. And there's copies of some of the work you have referenced. So I'll continue to do that because I know that some of you prefer paper over electronics, so we'll just accommodate and do both. But what's in the folder is also in the toolkit, so you have it electronically as well. All right. So one of our outcomes, oh, do you want me to go back? You're good. So the one outcome was that we're going to continue to build a collaborative-centered trusting relationship for unifying this board and superintendent in the service of students of Norfolk Public Schools. And I'm resurfacing that because I want you to, I want you to react to even the graphic that's there. How do you think that graphic embodies this outcome?
I thought that we, trust eliminated from this decision. That trust was not accepted. Mine, I do remember it, that it was taken off.
Hmm. That trust was taken off as a norm? We actually have your draft norms. We're going to go through them in a second, but was there nothing related to trust? There was. There was.
Yeah, mine, that was, that was my number one thing, and it's-
No, it wasn't eliminated because part of the conversation was the way that it was worded and just understanding different things about it, if I recall correctly. It was the way, I think, the, what we did-
I know, I had a number of people ask me why we eliminated trust from our board. And I thought, well, because it's not there, and I guess we're not worrying on it.
So, yeah, that's interesting because the way I understood that is there were different intervals of what trust is.
And I think too, because, so we took all of the chart paper. You're going to see, we're going to do an exercise in a little while. You're going to see each of the proposed norms that we came up with from what you have here, and we're going to have an opportunity to give input on them. But I think they're all somewhat grounded in trust, so you-
I would think so, but that was-
Yeah, and so maybe-
... disappeared from it.
Yeah. All right, do you need?
I'm sorry you bothered me. If you want to speak and be heard, you have to have your microphone on. So is this on?
Oh, no, it's on.
Okay, hers. Everybody else's is on?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I turned it on. That's all.
Am I doing it wrong?
Back on.
All right, I just want to make sure it was on at the beginning. Thank you.
No worries.
It was definitely my fault, sorry.
So I would say hold that thought because if-
Oh, I've been holding it for a while.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to go through the norms that you guys proposed, and if, in fact, you feel like trust is still missing, then we can have a specific one that we can add to it. So there's an opportunity for us to do, we're going to, we're actually going to have that conversation, so I would hold on, hold off on that. Just hold that thought. It would be honored in this, in this meeting, though, trust. Trust, that we would discuss trust.
Which we eliminated.
Okay. Okay, so react to the graphic.
Reminds us of why we're here and why trust is so important. Without the trust, you can't, there is no relationship, and there is no unity. So there's no working together in the benefit of children. So that suffers when there's no unity and trust.
Absolutely. Other thoughts?
I also see a connecting family in the palm, which is also a symbol of trust. I mean, even though we're not family in the sense of personalized, but there is a sense of, when you talk about trust, there's a sense of fameliness, you know, in that.
Absolutely.
And I think that's important.
Carlos?
I abstract self comes in here. So I see the picture as both an internal and external family. The, of course, the students and families in the community for which we serve, but then also the internal, our staff members, that family connected. And I see them in the hands that, really being the superintendent, and that outer hand being that of the board, that we have to support the superintendent so that they can do their work that kind of reverbs through those who are internal and as well as external. But everybody has to support, and that's kind of my-
Yeah, that's how, that's how I saw it, too. When I chose the graphic-
I know. So I'm really intentional about the graphics, and if you noticed that. But when I chose it, I was like, this is, this is very symbolic of, like, what I'm hoping happens, right? That we, that we have this undergird, this support, right? And within that are other children and families and the staff, right? Who also, who then have to take care of students and staff and their families. And so, like, there's this whole, there's these layers of support that I think that this, that the hands and the, and the people in the center of those hands represent. And so you guys are those hands, right? When you think about it, like, your work. And so who wants to place something in someone's care, right?
That they don't trust.
You know, if they don't trust them.
I'm having trouble with the trust because I'm observing some behaviors that I don't trust. So I'm just going to be honest here. Government, when governance training's over, I'm observing some things that are counter to what we're discussing and agreeing to here.
I agree, I agree. We're going to actually have that conversation because that's why I'm centering this, because if, when we're together, we're not getting authentic engagement, we're not getting authentic behavior, and then post-governance training, things still occur, and then I come back and we make nice for the four hours we're together, and then we walk away, and we, that's got to stop. And that's why today we're going to focus on that. I've got a couple of key questions that I'm going to pose to this group. And I do hope that you will be honest and transparent and lean into the discussion, despite the fact that it's being streamed. I think that that's okay, too, right? I think our community needs to know that we're struggling with these things, and we're working through them. We're all human beings. They have a right to be, to be involved in this conversation. So I don't plan these, these sessions in a, well, it's going to be streamed. I plan these, and we need to have honest conversations, and it is your choice to, you know, allow that public discussion and answer to your constituents what they ask about it, right? That's part of your responsibility.
Which it turns out they do.
Yeah, as they should, right? I feel like accountability, much like the board holds the superintendent accountable, the community holds the board accountable, and they should, right? So I want you to think about, you know, you all as being the hands that really support all this work. And I hope that it conveys to you the magnitude of responsibility you all have and influence, right? School boards are very powerful, and, and they do hold in their hands many people's lives, the trajectory of their lives. And so I just, you know, I want you to take, take this role as seriously. I'm not saying you don't, but I'm saying the impact of the lack of trust has such dire consequences, quite frankly, right? And so we need to be honest about that. We need to be honest about the breakdown that this lack of trust causes in your ability to effectively serve staff, students, family, internal and external stakeholders. It is that serious.
And I just want to emphasize, one of the things that you said, Val, is that school boards are powerful, but sometimes that power seems to be individualized, and that's when I think the rub starts to occur, when individuals perceive the board power as individual power, and things begin to shift, and trust begins to erode, and individuals can then sometimes take a position or posture that this is mine versus this is ours.
And I'll be honest, particularly, you know, when elections are coming up, right? And this is not, this is not specific to just this board, other boards that we work with. There's a shift in behaviors, and, and we need to, I understand it's a process, it's a democratic process, but that should not impact what happens when you all are together in your current service, right? And I think that that's one of the cautions that we have to also consider is, does our behavior change and shift, you know, around election time, right? And so we need to have those conversations. You know, the way that trust impacts teams is, well, we're seeing it, right? But you know that when we do trust, you expect others to behave positively, right? You expect that, you know, you tolerate and you, you know, you allow for some vulnerability and uncertainty. You, you know, you work better with others. You focus on common goals, not on individual, you know, agendas, individual goals. When we don't trust, what happens is people are suspicious of one another, they're defensive, right? And they lose sight of the larger goals because they're very focused on their personal goals. And I would say that that's probably occurring on this team, you know, pretty regularly. And so from the text, when you read, I think page 92, yep, page 92 says, "When people trust each other, they can be much more adaptable and open to all forms of pluralism." When people trust each other, that they can think, I made a mistake there, they can think long-term. "When there's trust in the room, people are more inclined to collaborate and experiment, to open themselves up to others, to new ideas, and to novel approaches, and to extending the golden rule. They also don't waste energy investigating every mistake. They feel free to fail and try again, and fail again, and try again." There's two things that I think that are inherent there. One, it's the, you know, obviously, you know, behaving in the way you want to be treated, but there's also allowing for grace, letting people make mistakes, and then still being able to move forward. And I think a big part of the breakdown in trust of this team is that people have not forgiven the harms that have been caused to them in the past, right? Or they might even in the room say, okay, we're over it, but then they're not, right? So that means that we've not built true trust. We've not, you know, repaired the harms that have occurred. Because when we were first times together in July, we talked about, like, you know, what are the harms that have been, that have been, you've felt, and then what's to solve for that harm? And then we, we kind of committed that we were going to put those things in the rear view, but has that been the case?
No.
No.
No. And new things have come up, too.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. So that's why I want us to really think about, like, what is it that we need, that this team needs, to truly get past the harms, rebuild trust, which takes time. And I, trust goes this like this, but to get it back, it takes very intentional behaviors, very intentional practices, and in the case of our work today, it requires having some policies and some norms in place that we say we're going to follow and we hold each other accountable to. So I think those are all things we want you to think about. On page 94, it says, "Trust is when members of the board have faith that the motivation and inherent beliefs of colleagues on the team are honorable, ethical, and honest." Let me think about those words. Honorable, ethical, and honest. Trust implies accountability, predictability, and reliability. And then it says, "Trust is the glue that maintains organizational integrity." And those are all things that I will tell you, just even in observing, watching board meetings, right? Being with you all in the room, there's some things that are missing there. There's that, the, the, folks do not feel like each other are being ethical, honest, right? Or, you know, are reliable. These are very heavy terms, when you think about it, right? Honorable, ethical, honest, accountable, predictable, reliable, integrity. Those all speak to individual character, right? And if a group of people who have the power that we saw in that graphic, if a group of people who have that charge don't see that in one another, how might you expect your community to see you as credible, reliable, predictable, right? Ethical, honest? This can't continue. It can't continue. And so we've got to spend the time upfront, working on this piece about trust. I don't care if we spend two more governance trainings to unpack this trust issue because we can't get to the real work. We cannot get to the real work. And so I say all that because we're going to spend some time really unpacking the cause of this trust issue, and yes, we're going to move into the norms, but I still feel like the conversation has to be had. We got to have it today.
Yeah, and I also think that, from what I've observed, there's forgiveness, you know, there's, there's the, okay, yeah, that happened, I forgive you for it. But then that forgiveness doesn't go in tandem with trust. It's like, yeah, I've forgiven you, but I'm not going to forget it, and I'm not going to trust you.
And no one's saying you have to, like, like, I get the whole forgive and forget thing is kind of difficult, right? There's like, there's like, I'm going to trust, but I'm going to also watch. I get that. I think what happens is, with you all, in particular, from just, like, again, from my vantage point, is you might say, yeah, this happened in the past, and I've moved vantage point, is you might say, yeah, this happened in the past and I've moved on from it, but I've not moved on from it, right? Like I'm saying I've moved on from something, but then something else happens and it takes me right back to, right? So I, so it's like a lot of triggering that makes it really difficult to do the whole forgive and forget piece. I get that. And so I think we have to think about how we address that. How do we address the behaviors that are the re-triggers, right? For those past behaviors that make it really difficult to move forward. And, and some of that can be done, like I said, formally with what we're going to do today with norms and procedures, but some of it is also about individual accountability, like really being honest around, here's the thing that, here's the thing that makes it hard for me to trust, you know, whoever it is, right? If, if it's not a collective, it's just one or two people or whatever, you have to, we have to have that conversation. You have to say, okay, like, what do I need to really be able to begin to develop trust with this person? And what are the specific behaviors that we will both do in order to make, affect that change, to build that bridge, right? No one's saying you got to be the builder of the bridge, you know, like I experienced the harm, I'm going to stay right in my corner and you got to come to me. We have to move past that. We have to say, what's the, what are the behaviors that we will collaboratively take responsibility for to rebuild the bridge, right? And I think what ends up happening is we don't name it, right? We, we, we are mad about it, we stew about it, we get re-triggered about it, right? And, and, and it's, it never, it's never going to go away. It's never going to go away.
And we look for people that'll co-sign on it because that way it validates what we're feeling, but it really, it, it doesn't address the issue, it just validates the feeling.
Yep. Let's watch a quick video clip and then react to it.
Trust my team. Does my team trust me? Do I trust myself? My absolute favorite part of work is team collaboration. But now in a world of hybrid offices and remote colleagues, you have to rely on others, mostly sight unseen, to get things done. You want to hold people accountable without micromanaging. Ugh, all this boils down to trust. I have three big questions. What are the essential ingredients for building trust on a team? How do I build trust on a team, or with anyone at work really? And how do I regain trust if I've lost it? Before we get started, this episode is brought to you by Microsoft. Microsoft's mission is to empower every person and organization on the planet to achieve more, but it's nothing without the people behind it. Watch and read some of the stories of the people behind the mission at aka.ms/ascend.
Trust, which is the willingness to be vulnerable and have confident expectations of, of how somebody's going to act in a team, is really important.
That's Tyree Mitchell. He's a professor at Louisiana State University and his research focuses on leadership and trust within teams. Can you help me break down exactly what are the building blocks of trust?
There's classic research that shows that there's three judgments that we typically make about whether someone is trustworthy and it boils down to ability, benevolence, and integrity. When we say ability, we're saying, can they actually deliver? Can he or she do what they say they can do? Benevolence is this idea that, you know, someone's actually acting on your behalf for, for their common good and not having intentions to harm you. And then integrity is that there's some assurance that they're adhering to a principle or code of conduct or values.
How do you assess the answer to those questions in a non-annoying way, right? You don't want to like check up with them every hour and be like, okay, are you good? You know, or is it like a feeling? Do you express something? How do you communicate this, I just want to make sure we're on the same page kind of thing?
Sure. So one common practical tool that is, is used in a lot of teams is something called a team charter. You sit down and you say, well, here's our goal, here's what we need to accomplish. What do we need to do or how do we need to actually interact to be able to do that? And so this is a discussion and the power of it is that there's shared understanding and everyone is actually creating the norms for how it's going to get done.
So I love the idea of a charter. It's just like plain as day, expectations laid out and then everyone can weigh in and then sign off on it. It seems really helpful, in particular with like a new team or if a bunch of people are coming together on a new project, just to kind of like make it crystal clear. So aside from a charter, are there other things I can do to build trust on my team?
So there's three practical tips that I would offer. First, I would say avoid making commitments that you can't keep. You definitely don't want to promise and then under-deliver.
Sounds like someone's going to have to learn how to say no at work.
You want to own your mistakes. So we're human, we're going to make mistakes. If you do so, own it. And I think the more that you blame others or you deflect it, it's going to cause issues as it relates to trust.
Mistakes? No. I don't make mistakes. Like, I kind of know what I'm... Oh, shoot. Do we have that on tape?
The third thing is take an action that is not in your immediate best interest. So maybe you have a resource that you can share that can help another team member complete his or her part of, you know, their task. That may not necessarily be an immediate benefit to you, but that helps to build trust with them, knowing that you have their best interests at heart.
What happens if you just like mess up? Like that trust may not be there. Like you missed a deadline or you accidentally embarrassed someone. Like, how do you rebuild that trust?
If I promised to do something and didn't do it, or, or worse, I did something that could potentially be to the detriment of the team, if I truly want to try to repair that trust, one thing that I can offer on my behalf voluntarily, you know, is open monitoring of, of exactly what I'm doing. It's like, I screwed up, I let you guys down, I betrayed your trust. Actually giving them access to whatever it is that's, that I still need to do moving forward. Being able to provide those structural solutions voluntarily can really make a difference.
So here's the recipe for trust. Ability plus benevolence plus integrity. And thanks to Tyree, I have some steps for how to build trust. Don't over-promise and under-deliver. Definitely own up to mistakes that you have made and help others even when you have nothing to gain. If you are a watcher of this series, you know that there's always a practice montage and then I show before and after and like, woo, it's transformation. But trust is kind of tricky and involves people and involves vulnerability. Shockingly, actually monitoring and filming and possibly showcasing to a wide internet audience is not the best way to establish or maintain said trust. You may need to trust me on this, that I'm actually working on it, but just not for the camera. If you're still watching, one, thank you. But two, I'm really curious, like what do you want me to explore? Like what problems do you have at work? I love...
She actually has a really good series, if you guys, it's Harper Business Review. She's got a whole lot of series on work, basically, work relationships. So I want to hear your reactions and takeaways. I saw you all taking copious notes, so what'd you get from that video clip?
I'll just say, my dissertation was on organizational collaboration and the role of social capital and the three tenets of social capital are trust, honesty, honesty, and reciprocity. So I've done research on, on trust and, you know, it's kind of like that, that social capital creates the glue that keeps the organizations together, which obviously applies to people collaborating on a board as well.
Other reactions?
As an educator, I've spent my life working with groups. All of it was built on everyone working together, everyone having a common goal. And it always seemed easy, to be honest. It just, they all, the teams all came together and it was like we were having a glorious time because we were all on point and we were moving in the direction, talking a lot now about how we moved our schools so quickly and so well to national recognition. And how did that happen? And it, and looking back on it, I guess it just seemed like it automatically happened. But then when I, this, to be honest, was the first time I had come into a, what should have been a collaborative teamwork that I was so used to. And when, and it was so different.
It was a different dynamic too, because you were the leader of, of your school.
Right, but maybe that was the difference. When I came here, I was definitely not the leader. That's a thought I hadn't moved.
Or you are the leader, but you're also, there's several leaders, right?
Yeah, right, yes, but it was a different thing. So that's a really good point, but even in other times, it just, I don't know, I never seemed to have the depth of, of the problems that we have here. And I often think about it because it seems like it went wrong really fast at the beginning and we never recovered from it. So it's, that's what I was thinking about as I was looking at these ideas and wishing that maybe it would have been helpful if I'd had them before, that I hadn't really thought through how lucky I was to have good teams. I had two experiences in education with that. One as not the leader, but with a dynamic leader that we did have. And one of, one of the models that I use for my own things, but this, this team never came together from the beginning. And look back and it's, and everyone had a hand in it not going well. It wasn't something that just one person did, but it's just never, and it just seems like, sometimes it seems like it's starting to get together and then it blows up again. And I don't know, I have no solution for that, obviously.
And, and the environment that you, that you're describing, there was a culture of collaboration, would you agree with that?
Yes, it was amazing.
A culture, as we know, right, takes time to build, right? And so I probably, when you were a school leader and then you said in the second experience you were not the leader, there was probably tons of work that had been done, you know, historically that got them to that culture. I would imagine, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, that there's been a culture on this board. Members may, members may have come and go, but there's been a culture of, on this board of what we're seeing here. Would you agree with that statement?
Yeah, I think that some of the, thinking back to when we were first elected, there were some conversations that literally sabotaged us out the gate.
And I wonder, how much time did you all even build, just building relationships with each other?
Not from the beginning.
Because that, a relationship is the foundation of all of that. If you don't have, you know, trust is something that's earned over time, right? But if the relationship is not there from the beginning, then the trust is not going to, it's not going to grow, it's not going to develop, it's not going to, to become anything more than sort of that, that superficial, I trust you as far as I can see you. Or beyond that, yeah. I'll, I'll trust you while we're here, a little bit, but beyond that, it doesn't exist. And part of that is being very intentional about relationships because that's what, that's what organizations who are intentional in establishing and changing a culture, they figure out, how do we form a strong relationship personally and professionally?
Oh, sorry. Okay, let's go, let's go back.
Did you want to follow up?
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm also sitting here thinking, what are the citizens out there watching this, thinking, why are you wasting our ti, time and money on rela, you know, and trying to mend these relationships? Not to say that it's not worth doing, but shame on us, right? These are resources that could be going elsewhere, but we're stopping ourselves from working together.
But the community also needs to know, since they're listening, that the investment in this work makes you better for them, right? And it doesn't matter who the individuals are, it's not like, you know, it's not like you're being held accountable, like, oh, they're wasting money because they don't get along. We're trying to create the culture on this board where you can have relationships that allow you to be student-centered, that allow you to do the work of the board. So it does ultimately benefit the students and families and, and I would hope that the community sees this as you doing the work, you know, because, because we can easily just switch people out, that doesn't change anything, right? We, we have, we have the right people, we just have to make sure we create the right dynamic. And hopefully it builds confidence, right? I, I would hope that the community would see this and say, I have confidence that they want to do better. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm, go ahead. Dr. Burst, sorry. Then Leon will come back.
I, I just want to briefly say, like, I, I really appreciate having this space to talk about this. We had governance training before and I thought this was something, my number one priority was to talk about the trust, talk about the relationships, rebuild the relationships or even build relationships. And so we never got to that, to that at all because it was basically said that you need to work that out in another platform. And I knew, I knew we were being set up from fail, for failure from that. So I appreciate having this space to do that. My experience is very similar to Lauren's experience. And, and again, it was a different role for me when I became the acting superintendent. I had never experienced like a group of people not working together for the common good of children. That's how I perceived it. And so I would have, you know, conversations with my mom because she would, oh, how's your day going? I said, Mom, I feel like I'm having to fight to do right. I said, I have never experienced that in my life. I'm fighting to do right. And so I, I, I just feel like from the beginning, there were trust issues, they have never been worked out. And, and here we are today. I do have hope that this team can, can come together and do what's right for children, but it's going to take some time. And until we address those things, those hurts, I think you referred to them as hurts, we're going to be back here next week, next month, or for however long. So I appreciate having this space to really talk about things and I hope people can feel a little vulnerable to do that, you know?
That's my hope, is that we're creating a brave space for you all. I know it's extreme, but still, right? So like, I gotta go Leon, then Tanya, and then continue. Okay, go ahead. Trying to keep track here.
I think, you know, when we talk about trust and listen to the things, I think, you know, trust has to be a two-way street. Because it's, because I think you can trust someone and, but they don't trust you and it's like, what does that mean? What is that really equal to? I trust you, but you don't trust me. So I think it has to be, it has to be a two-way street. And, and I think that even building the trust, I think there has to be, you, you have to understand, and maybe this is a trust ish, trust issue in itself, that you have to understand what, what are people's intentions? Like, you know, they're saying they want to embrace you or what, but it's like, okay, now, some people back up and say, well, why, why, why do they want to embrace me? Why do they want to get close to me? And it's like, you know, what are their intentions? And so then I think that in itself can create trust issues because I may feel like, well, their intentions don't seem that good to me while they're trying to embrace me. It seems like maybe they're trying to get something out of it and that, that becomes an issue and a trust issue in itself if one feels that way. And I always, there's one thing that I always think about is that, and I think someone told me this a long time ago, many years ago, in my young, early stages in professional business, huh? Yeah, well, young enough.
You'll never be younger than you are right now.
Right. But it was like, be sure that it, it is not your responsibility, even as a teacher, to change people, to change students, but to make them changeable. But not to change them, but maybe to get them to a point, maybe they, you know, can think things in a wider view or think differently or, or whatever, but it is never your role to change them. As, as a teacher, even as a parent, it, it is never your role to change them, but to help make them changeable. And that's kind of how I see this process also. So I, I don't think it's my role, anybody's role to try to change me or me to change them, but maybe there's some things that I can say and some of my behavior and actions maybe could make them changeable.
Yeah, it's, so it's funny you say that because, because we can't change people's beliefs, but you can change the expectation of the behaviors, right? And so many people will put in place, you know, like we're going to do norms, processes, procedures for the behavioral expectations with the hope that the belief system comes along with it, right? So once we're, if we live these norms, if we live these values, if we live the procedures, does it then help me to build trust and build a, build a better relationship and rapport? Helps us get the work done, right? So to your point, we're going to put those things in place, but it still requires, right, the commitment on the part of the adults to do the meeting halfway, as you, as you referenced, right? Like, how do we, how do we build these bridges, right? I want to give you, oh, we have a couple more hands.
Yeah, okay, you can go to Dr. Gabriel.
Here?
Yeah.
Okay, Dr. Gabriel.
I was just thinking that as far as how do you others see our actions right now, we can use this as teachable moments because if we're having these very real issues, I'm sure others, even within the division, can be having these issues. And maybe we can say that even from the perspective that we are in, if we can be honest and if we can be open and speak our truths and, and all of the items that you have mentioned before, and we can come out of it ahead, then they can too. And so I'll, I'll just say that maybe we can use this as, as an example for them. And, you know, I did not leave our last meeting feeling wonderful. I thought that there were definitely some areas that we could have done differently, owning mistakes, coming back to processes. And so not to shy away from holding ourselves accountable, but maybe coming back to doing like debriefing and saying, okay, well, what could have been done differently versus allowing items to, you know, fester or to, you kind of create a story in your head as to what happened. So those are my thoughts on that.
Here's what I, here's what we're going to do. I'm going to put, I have three questions I'm putting up and I want you to take out a piece of paper. Actually, this, this, this may actually be one of the handouts. I don't have the handout, it may be in your folder. If it's not, just grab a piece of paper. I want you to take quiet reflection time before we have this dialogue. And there's these three questions I want you to reflect on and I want you to choose your words while I'm giving you time to think, right? I want you to kind of jot down the, what comes to your mind when you think about these three things. Do members of the board have faith that the motivation and inherent beliefs of colleagues on the team are honorable, ethical, and honest? Does this team demonstrate ability, benevolence, and integrity in its individual and collective actions? And what specific behaviors and actions impact group accountability, predictability, reliability, and organizational integrity? So we're going to give you 10 minutes to just think about these questions and what you want to say to the larger group in response to these, these three, these three questions, okay? 10 minutes, I'm setting a timer. Ten minutes, I'm setting a timer. Four minutes. Oh, shoot, sorry. Chocolate. Got these, I found these. Everybody good, any more time? Everybody good? All right, I know Carlos is dealing with something, so we want to offer him grace. Want to wait a few minutes, you want to check, you want to check to see if he's, is he coming, trying to spec?
I think he was just getting some coffee.
Okay. Bio break by any chance?
What's that?
Does anybody need a bio break? Want to take a break real quick? No, we're good?
Okay.
Now, as you're waiting, think about which of those questions was easiest to answer, and which one was most difficult.
They were all hard.
Hard? I always say that hard and difficult are two very different things, right? Right? Because we can do hard things. And difficult requires us to, like, to push, to press, to think.
Maybe I did it wrong, I thought it was easy.
Oh. No, it's not wrong. It could, it could come easier to you, I mean, you've been, you've led this board, you've been on this board, I mean, you may have a different perspective, right? So we're going to surface that in a little bit, so. Okay, 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 okay. Anybody else need to go refresh their drinks? Okay.
Are you flying out tonight? Now, you're in.
Charlotte.
Charlotte, okay.
It's a short flight.
Is it really? Does it have sharp, short flights to other places in Carolina?
I think you, I think, you can fly from Charlotte to Myrtle Beach in like forty-five minutes, Greenville, they have a Greenville flight.
Well, what about flights from Norfolk? What, 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 um, flight?
Director Charlotte, uh-huh. Director Charlotte. Oh, American, American.
It's American, is that the only one that gives you direct?
So it's the only one I use. There was a time that I came here before this work, actually, I don't know if you guys remember this, but years ago I did professional development for the principals here, and, uh-huh. And, no, I don't know, seventy, eight years ago. And there was a flight, I took a flight here that had a layover, no, from Charlotte, it was Southwest, I don't mess with that, it was Southwest. It was from Charlotte to Norfolk, guess where my layover was?
BW.
First of all, why was there a layover? Baltimore.
I know, because I fly, I fly at all the time.
Who does that? Who passes over where you're going to go? So I don't do Southwest anymore, but yeah, I'm recognized as direct flights.
All right, so I deliberately gave you guys the ten minutes of reflection time around these questions, because I wanted you to really think through what you wanted to say, how you want to address these issues, and, and, and have the time, the, the free time, right, to choose your words, to choose the things that are most important. So the way that I want to handle this is that I, I do want to hear the answer to each of these questions from every one of you, right? And you're going to say, wow, that's a heavy lift, because we need to hear what, you know, how you feel about this board, but then you, look at that third question, right? The, what specific behaviors and actions impact group's accountability, predictability, reliability, and the integrity of the organization? We need to put them in a space, because we're going to do a, a review of the norms that you guys drafted, and I want you to think, are we missing something from those, from, you know, something missing, there's something we haven't considered? So, so this is going to help ground us into where we need to be talking about, like, how do we make sure that each of our norms is embedded in trust, how we build trust, how we do the work, right? But I want to have the honest conversation first. And so I chose these three questions based on the reading, based on what we saw in that video. But I want you to think through inherently, what do I need to be able to, to trust, to be able to trust my colleagues, to be able to work in this environment, to be able to show up as my authentic self, feel valued, feel trusted, feel respected, so that we can work together? So I'm not going to call on anybody, but I want, at any given time, just chime in with, you know, here's, here's the one question that I, let's, we can do one question at a time, you can speak to all of them, but, but I'd rather do, in fact, no, I take that back, we're going to do one at a time. So we're going to do the first question, and we're going to kind of whip around the room, what you wrote down as, as your thoughts, and we'll come back to the second one and the third one, so that each person has an opportunity to speak. Make sense? Okay. All right, so the first question was, do members of the board have faith that the motivation and inherent beliefs of colleagues on the team are honorable, ethical, and honest? Who'd like to go first?
And even though that's a yes or no question, we want you to explain your thinking behind that response.
Expond upon yours.
I was only going to do yes and no.
I know.
I mean, let's quickly do, let's, let's quickly do the yes/no first, let me just do that, let's whip, let's whip, and then let us, so.
No.
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 Nope.
No.
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 It's, it's a no for me too, by the way, right?
And unanimous vote.
Look at that.
You're great.
You're capable of, look at that, you guys can have unanimous votes.
Look how far you've got us so long, we're already. Great.
Governance work complete. Okay, so you want to go first, Mr. George?
Uh, maybe. So, so I did write no, then I changed it to yes. Then I changed it to yes somewhat. And then with the somewhat, I added, but not for each student. So.
Not for each?
Student. So, so I, as I reflected on the, the question, you know, there's, there's the questions, you know, collectively, there's individually. So the reason I changed it to, went from no to yes to somewhat, was I was feeling maybe it depended upon, it, it depends, that sometimes I may act that way, sometimes we may act as having beliefs that are honorable, ethical, and honest, and other times I think that I don't and we don't. But.
Let me ask, let me ask a clarifier. Is, is honor, honor, ethics, and honesty, are those sometime traits that, as an individual, like, that's what I'm trying to figure out, like, like, either you are or you aren't, in my mind, but I could be wrong, right? So either you're honorable, ethical, and honest in all circumstances, because it's inherent in, in who you are.
Well, that's, again, that's, that's part of why I, I responded the way I responded. So, my, that's why my answer, when you asked me to answer it, I said no. But then I also was trying to put it in the context of just dealing with, something I wrote down very early on, and I just have in my parking lot, is, you know, we talked about moral purpose and imperative, and I'm not sure what that, if we ever decided what that is. So I was addressing the question somewhat in that context. So we may not be, or I may not be honorable, ethical, and honest, but I would really like to have a conversational understanding around honorable, ethical, and honest in the context of our shared moral purpose and imperative, and, and our desires for students. And that's why I responded the way I responded.
Yeah, you did, I'm, I'm going back to the notes real quick, because we did this side on the moral imperative.
Yeah, I was wondering what that was.
If he, it's probably in the notes from the August meeting.
Yeah, I tried to search to find it, but I couldn't.
In the folder, it should be there. However, not to, not to get us off track, it was, it was grounded, being grounded in service of students, right? Which is why we started adding that, like, I kept, kept giving it the phrase, the moral, the moral imperative of the group, remember you guys did the individual moral, moral imperative? And then we did a group one, and where there was common language each time, was that we were not student-centered, and the moral imperative was to make sure that all of this work, policy work, committee, committee work, board, everything was student-centered.
So in that context, no.
So in that context, no. So, so do members of, of the board have faith that the motivation, inherent beliefs of colleagues on the team are honorable, ethical, and honest? And so you added, in, in.
In service for students.
In service of students, and your answer is no.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody want to add to your no's? Why, why is it a no for you, for you? Yeah?
Well, I understand what this looks like in my own field of work. And it is relatable to the examples that Ms. Hansen and Dr. Birdsong had said, with regards to when you feel like you're having a, um, a task in you, and you're with a like group of individuals, and you, you feel that, that, you know, culture, then you can get the work done. And with my field of work, you know, I can think of examples all day long of how I go to another colleague, and I consult them. I don't necessarily put it in the chart, so to speak, but it's, it's a trust item, and I'm discussing it with them, because I believe that they're honorable, ethical, and honest, and it is in the best interest of the child, of the patient. And, and you have to have that, and so while I think that individually we possess these traits, we don't, we don't bring them forth in their best appearances at our meetings. And it is very evident in the way that we have our actions. And so I think that we can have very healthy discussion and disagreements, but we can still come across as a unified cohesive board. But the way that we come across is almost like us versus them. And, and that's how our community, um, well, I'm assuming that's how our community, that's kind of like some of the feedback that I get, uh, it is, and, and, and I almost feel like we kind of feed this evil beast of, of how that works, and then the community, you know, jumps in and tries to, you know, get in on the action. Uh, and so this can be very powerful if we have these items. And it can, it can definitely benefit our kids. But we do not have it, we don't practice it, we don't demonstrate it in our actions. And maybe what we need to do is have a little bit of faith in each other, and try it, and see how it works. And, like they said, um, don't file it away, and then, and then, and then come back to it later, or never come back to it at all. Maybe we just need to keep trying to practice this and do it in our actions. And not take it personally, when we don't agree.
I would even challenge you to think about this too, like, what is, what does it mean for me to be honorable, what does honorable look like for me, period, as an individual, right, personally? And then what does being honorable, or ethical, or honest look like in my role as a board member? And I'm not saying to, to do that now, I'm saying that, that's a personal reflection I want you to think about, like, if we're saying that honor, ethics, and, and honesty are, are truly character traits, right? They should, they should be inherent in who you are in all of your interactions, right? And, and then they, they may in fact be who you are, but in this room, in this space, in this cohort of individuals, you're probably not demonstrating those. So I think it's, it's something to think about too, as, as, as individuals, like, what do, when I say that, when I want people to say that I'm honorable, and I'm ethical, and I've been honest, what's the, how do I give them that perception? It's probably easy to think about it in your day-to-day life, right, and the way people experience you. What I want you to think about is the context of what does being honorable, ethical, and honest mean as a board member? Yeah?
And I think, um, I was feeling the same way Mr. Jordan was, I, at first I wrote sometimes, then I said maybe. Um, and then I said, well, holistically, no, but maybe that tied into biases, because that's a whole nother term, because, um, because I, I know we all have biases. And it's like, because I have a bias, am I dishonorable, am I not ethical, am I not honest? If I have a bias, or, you know, maybe have a, a interest in something that's very particular to me, am I not being ethical? Because I have that, and I'm not being, so, so what I came to is that I think there has to be consistency. I, I've had colleagues that had biases, but on a, on the big picture, we all kind of had common threads to make things happen. And I think holistically, we were honorable, we were ethical, and honest, because we were kind of consistent in making sure that we were looking out for the students. Even though sometimes we had our own little thoughts about them, biases, you know, you know, yeah, you know, whatever that was. Um, you know, but for seniors, that, we had somebody who really were like, you know, senior's gotta be the first priority, it's like, well, not necessarily, but they just had a bias for that. And my bias was more maybe for freshmen, because I felt that was the beginning, and so that would create what they would be seniors, so I don't need to be, so that, that's interesting. But we were consistent in that we were supporting students, even in those biases. Because I know it's hard to be totally unbiased in any situation, work home wherever, even with your own children. So, so as long as there's some consistency, um, and so when I thought about consistency, are we, as a board, consistent with those things? Even though we might have differences and different focal points and whatever, then I came back to no again.
And don't confuse two advocacy, because you're allowed to advocate, right? That doesn't necessarily how your biases show up, I think where the biases show up is in biases about other people in the room, right? Like, you know, well, this person, you know, is probably gonna do this, or probably thinks this way, or is gonna vote no, right? And then that shapes the behavior, so I think that, that's what I mean, like, by, by, you can come with different perspectives and advocate for different things, and that should be okay, right? You should be able to do that, and, and still maintain honor and ethics and honesty. Hey, here's why I'm advocating for this, I think that ultimately this will impact, if we start with our freshmen, and we change this policy, or we make this investment, or we spend this money here, it will ultimately get us the results that we want. By the time they're seniors, you have a rationale for what you're advocating for, right? That's, that should be allowed, that should be part of what you do, so.
And just another way to maybe think about that and frame that is, how would, how would you say that colleagues are honorable, ethical, and honest, without saying they're honorable, ethical, and honest? So how would, what would that, what would that look like? How would someone know that that's who you are without you saying with this? Because oftentimes we say, yes, I am honorable, yes, I have integrity, yes, I'm honest. But how do you say that without saying it?
What are the behaviors?
Doing, like, your actions and your words?
But what specific actions?
Yeah, that's actually, that's, yeah, that's like the third question, because we're gonna, we're gonna want to know, like, what does that behavior look like? Stay, stay with the first question, who, I want other people to chime in, this idea of honor, ethics, and, and honesty. Yeah?
Well, for my, my answer for question one was no, with an exclamation mark. Have any in-betweens, because I don't think that we go into each of our discussions with this.
Lauren, use your microphone.
Oh, really? People should just turn up their, you know?
Turn up their ears.
That's like, right.
Listen harder.
On top of it all, I can't get my voice up, so, um. I think that we all, we all came in with our own beliefs about what we should be doing on the school board, and what the school board's function should be. And we had a different point of view, which is okay, that's what you want, if everyone has the same point of view, how are you gonna grow? You don't get in new ideas and the stuff that makes you move forward. But I think that that's how, how a lot of us came in, and we came in from different backgrounds and, and careers, and we came in with mostly brand-new people, but with the people that had been there a long time. And, um, I would assume felt that the way they were going was the way that they were, you know? Uh, whereas a lot of us that came in, came in with this pie in the sky idea of the world we were gonna create when we took over. And, well, you know, I call it, I, when I.
That's okay, that's diversity of thought, right? I mean, that's what you want, you want diversity of thought and perspective.
But what happened was, we don't want to hear anybody else's. I think that that would be a real good. I knew what I wanted to do, and these other people had all these other ideas, but I, you know, but I think it's a, it's a. I'm not, and I, I don't even call this a team anymore, because we're not a team. Uh, but with the other members of the board, I think that most of us came in with the idea, they already had a track they wanted to go. And so when an opposing idea came up, uh, there wasn't always support. And, and when your own idea came up, very often we had like filibustering and ways to block any action, and nothing moves forward, they just, you know, talk, talk, talk until it, everyone turns the light off. So I, so if I look at, this is my beginning point, that's where I came in with. Accepting the responsibility that I have for myself, and the fact that I was not my own best self at times, just like everybody else. That I would be upset if I didn't, you know, if people weren't listening to me and didn't want to go with, like, that was, I was doing that also, it wasn't just, you know, other people. And so, and I think that my failing there was perhaps not to be as aware of that as I should have been. Because I had my own ideas about what was wrong with Norfolk Public Schools, and what needed to be done, I put my model together at my own school, and I didn't understand why everyone else wasn't doing what I said. Couldn't be that they just had a different population, or their teachers were coming in.
What were they thinking?
Or that I was hiring all first-year teachers, because I wanted it to be, you know, in the vision that I had. And I, and I admit that, and I think that that was a, a big problem we had from day one. I think we all maybe brought some trash to the meeting, or some things that maybe didn't need to go there, that we all, are all responsible for how this set off. I think maybe some people, as we moved forward, might be more responsible now, I don't know, but I think at the beginning, we all had a chance to try and bring it together, and we didn't do it.
You have a chance now. You have a chance now, I mean, I feel like, I feel like, you know, this, yeah, that goes back to that hope and optimism, but it also goes back to the offering grace, like, we, we don't need to be stuck in where we were, right? And, and.
And sometimes the new eye, we don't need to be stuck where we were, but sometimes we might try to move too fast in a direction that everyone, we're moving along, and we turn around, there's nobody behind us in the situation.
And, and, and I'm glad you said that, because that's, that's one of the reasons why I've even paced this in this way, right? Like, we're not rushing through it, I'm not saying, oh, we gotta cover these things, like, the conversations are what need to, needed to have happened, and, and we're trying to create the space for the conversations to happen.
May I request like a ten-minute break?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure, yeah, let's do that, everybody, take, take ten. Okay, we're back, good, thank you all for taking a quick break. So, where we were was, we were talking about this first question, this idea of, of, do you have faith in one another? Uh, that the motivation of each other is, and, and inherent beliefs of colleagues are honorable, ethical, and honest. So let's continue that dialogue, I don't, I don't think we've heard from everybody yet.
Faith is a strong word. It's in that question, do members of the board have faith? You know, in all of what you have noted up there. And I know Adele said something about actions versus what people do, I, I'm a firm believer in that. If you say you're gonna do something, then, you know, if we, if you don't see it, then in your head, you're telling yourself this story about that person's, um, honesty level, if they're honorable, and all of that. And I think, again, as, as a team, I don't think we've demonstrated that to one another. And, um, I, I, I think just looking at any board meeting, you, you'll see evidence of, of that, without me calling out specific behaviors.
I mean, from my own witnessing of meetings, right, I don't, I don't think that you have, I don't think that people see one another as necessarily honest. In terms of what they say in the room, and then what they do when they leave the room. Um, which speaks to the whole, you know, are we operating from a place of ethics? So. I'm in.
Can I just say that I feel very uncomfortable when I can't trust someone, like, I feel ve, it makes me, like, and I'm someone who's very optimistic, very, you know, hopeful, I know, I'm like, come on, we can do this, you know? Um, and so I, my, that's my default face, is like, alright, let's, let's fix it, and, you know, keep, keep fixing it, like, let's, let's get that momentum going. And, um, and it, it's very uncomfortable for me to admit to myself that I have lost faith. And, um, and my name is faith, my, my saint's name is actually faith, and so that word is very important to me. And, and so anyways, I just wanted to take that out there, because I am uncomfortable having this conversation.
Yeah, I mean, think about it, any relationships, any, any of your relationships, personal, familial, if, when trust isn't there, of course you're uncomfortable, right? Like, if you, if you don't, if you can't trust your, your mate, your partner, right? I mean, that's just the dynamic of everything, and the way you interact with them, the way that they experience you, the way that you experience them, it's through this, this lens of, I'm not sure I can believe what you're saying, you know, the trust had been broken down, I mean, think about. You know, marriages, friendships come to an end when, when trust is breached. And so here we are in a room full of, you know, adults who have had breaches of trust with one another, who will now have to still work together despite that, right? It's like the, it's like the, there's a, there's a phenomenon out there called married living apart. Which, I don't know, it's, it's a thing, right? It's a thing now. And so similarly, or there's people who are uncoupling, who are under the same roof, right? And, and so imagine that dynamic, we still gotta meet in the kitchen, we still, we only got one Keurig, right? Right? So I still gotta see you at the coffee maker, um, and so I might make nice at the coffee maker, I might smile and be like, you know, I'm not poisoning you, so here you go. But if you still walk away, and you can't make the collaborative decisions about what's best for your kids in that household, for example, using that same analogy, right? If we, if we can't come to consensus on what's best for our kids, if we can't come to consensus on what's, what's, what decisions are best for those who are not directly, you know, not, not directly impacted by who, what I do, right? There's, there's, there's not gonna be success, so you can, you can separate all you want, you can be in two different rooms, you could only meet at the, at the water cooler, or the Keurig and be nice. It still doesn't create for a healthy dynamic for the others who are involved in that circumstance, in this example, would be some children, right? See your hand up.
That's in, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, so it's kind of like a vicious cycle, you don't trust, then you can't be vulnerable. If you're not vulnerable, you won't speak your truth about what's really hurting you, and then it never gets resolved.
Yeah, you just smile, when you're at, when you see each other at the, the common area, right, which is, in this case, this room. We come in, we, you know, we, we, we behave accordingly, but we walk out of here, and we're still, we're still mad, we're still uncomfortable, right? We still don't trust, you know, that what people said when they were in the room, and that doesn't make for. Team. Progress, it doesn't make for a, it definitely doesn't make for a team, but it certainly doesn't make for one that can do any of this work in the service of students in Norfolk Public Schools. Yeah?
I was gonna say, it's very interesting that you brought up the, relating this to marriage, because, um, when I was, um, I'm campaigning for reelection right now, and, um. I was talking to, I was knocking on doors, and I had this gentleman, the first question he asked me was, are you, he's like, I can see you're married, how long have you been married for? And, and it went into this conversation of, if you, you know, he said, I like to, I look at the leaders, and I will select ones that have, you know, they're willing to do, like, he looks at what their closest relationships are. And, um, the integrity of relationships, and, um, and so anyways, it was the first time, like, it first time. Okay, that's. But, um, but I, it really impacted me, and that's why I'm remembering it now, and how, um, we, you know, like I said earlier, it's our actions, how we, how we manage our relationships.
And in that, in that example, that person's making a judgment on, um, like, a beliefs, a belief around one's commitment, right, for longevity, right, to stick things out, to solve problems, because they know relationships are hard. So if you can stay married for however long you've been married, he sees that as, I'm just speculating.
An anniversary on Saturday.
As a character. How many?
Eight, uh, seventeen years on Saturday.
Oh, congratulations. He probably sees it as a, as a, as a, a character trait, right? Much like going back to the narrative, what is the character trait of this board as seen by others, right? If that person made that judgment based on, okay, look, you, yeah, I'll vote for you, because you show stability, you've been with this person for this many years, whatever, they says, you've worked through the hard stuff, right? If the community sees this board staying together, sticking together, working through their problems, right? That, that's how you build integrity, that's how you build trust. Because people say, well, yeah, I, I, I remember watching the board in twenty-twenty-one, they were struggling, but here we are in twenty-twenty-three, and now they're, they're very student-centered. You can see the shift in what meetings look like, right? That's what we want, that's our goal, is that we, we go back and we watch board meetings from like this year or last year, in two years, and you're like, oh my God, is that us? Like, you should be, you know what I'm saying, like, it should be like, we've come a long way.
Yeah.
We see the growth, and I think even in just the time that we've been together, I'm seeing some growth. What I think troubles me, if I'm being honest, is that what's happening in the room when we're here together, doesn't match what happens when I watch the board meeting after we're together. So that's why I'm resurfacing, and saying, no, we gotta have this conversation about trust, um, because we're getting good behavior in the room. I don't want good behavior, you don't, you don't have to impress me, you don't have to, or cameras, right? Like, don't do the good behavior if it's not gonna be authentic and genuine, you know what I'm saying? Like, so, yes, I, I can, I can lead us in singing kumbaya, like, like I'm some kind of choir director, right? director, right? But if we still leave the room and we go sing our own song off pitch, does it matter that we were able to master singing kumbaya in the room? Right?
You had a comment.
Yeah, so, this piece on faith and that piece, and so, I, I have to just apologize to my colleagues in a full transparent moment. I really have not been myself in trying to be engaged in this particular meeting today. My brother had been missing since last Thursday. And so, when I sat here, I literally had gotten a notification that a man was found in, in Ocean View. And so, of course, trying to, with my family, trying to get that in there, so I apologize for that and appreciate you all being able to take that time out, that one. But, going back to faith, I'm an individual who has been brought up to have faith besides a must-secede. And so, even in that amount of time, when I called my sister to find that, my sister didn't answer the phone. And so, I called my nephew and got back and my sister actually texted me and she told me that even in the midst of all of that, that she had just gotten off the phone with my brother. I say all that when I go back to faith in this particular board, that the way I really approach things is that, that faith of a must-secede. I said when I took my oath of office, that I mean, I always agree with everybody, but I'm not gonna be disagreeable. And I try and to reset and to come in and try to be fair, try to hear different voices in the role that I am, and try to get things moving. Does that go without having scars, without having hurts, without having approaches? You know, when you have been, when your, your character, when you as an individual has been attacked repeatedly, when you are the oldest in your, your family, you have to be that And I hear about trust and I hear about trustworthiness and I hear about certain things, I cannot put aside some of the actions and some of the actors, but I'm gonna always have that faith of a must-secede, and I'm always gonna try to find what I believe, when, where can we find agreement? We're not gonna agree on everything. We come from different vantage points, we have our own truths, we have our own backgrounds. But what are we doing when we sit here? And I have to remind myself, you know, why do I even put myself through this? And it's because I have a love for kids. I, I, I put myself out there because I care about Norfolk Public Schools and, and my community. And like I said in 2017, just from my mom passed, my mother encouraged me, she said, you have something to give and go for it. And that's what I've been, my consistent strive every day to come back in here. So, I was like some of my colleagues, I was, when I had looked at this question, the honorable, ethical, honest thing, I was like, you know, no, then I went through that maybe sometimes, you know, there's certain groups, but just like Ms. Campson said, you know, we had agreement. I cheer those moments when we have agreement. But I have to also realize that we're not gonna always agree, but when we leave that room, it's the important piece of not being disagreeable and being able to come in on a fresh, new day, and whatever that topic is at that particular point in time. And also, just inherent on, in the government piece, that we rule by the will and majority. And it's just like in my fraternity, we, we're taught that if you have a vantage point, it's your incumbent upon you to win over the, the will of your, your fellow brothers, to understand and to vote for you. And that requires communication. And I think sometimes, you know, I even attempted to try to do calls, but I'll be honest, sometimes it's just, I don't have the emotional will and, and energy to call sometimes. And so, that's draining. And it's like, because you wanna do what's in the best interest for kids, what, what we're here. But I think that this board, it plagued from the beginning, and we allowed external factors to play in to how we would even come together as a team. I remember a time when we went to Charlottesville just for training, and we attempted to try to go to dinner together. It didn't happen. When we thought to go into Charlottesville was, like many boards, to go to the SBA, when we had a reporter literally call a reporter friend to put a recorder in the middle of the room just to hear what we were talking about. We've allowed external factors to play into this board and who honestly placated to an entire narrative, they're a three-four, three-four, three-four board. And, so, yeah, we all have a play, a role to play into that. Do I believe that we can move forward and do things? I try to hold that more hardly each and every day. I think that sometimes some people think that people are plotting. I personally tell you, I don't have time for it. I've just, I, I have so many other things that I gotta try to do, I just, I don't have time for it. And I'm, and I'm not personally plotting against people, I'm not, I'm really not. Honestly, even serving in this role as chair, the folks who tell you around there, I didn't wanna be chair right now. I knew what it meant to serve in this particular role during an election period.
Do you think the narrative out there around this being a, I think it's a five-two board, does that feed into this idea that we're not honorable, ethical, honest? I went back and looked, just for my own edification, at kind of the voting history, and, and you consistently are five-two. So, of course, the narrative out there would be, right, that, that there are certain people on this board who don't wanna see the work move forward. And I think if that's the external narrative, it's probably also the internal narrative, and it's what leads to a lot of this trust and, yeah.
That's, that's interesting that, was that, for clarity, your interpretation of what the five-two?
It's, it's. It's a perspective I'm asking, I'm asking a question, but the, it was, it was that, for like a lot of the major things, the five-two, I don't, I'm, I don't know who the two are, but in many cases, it's, it's five-two and it's usually the same five, the same two.
Right, so then you, so since you know that, you know the two, who the two and the five are. But it's interesting that the perspective is that the two may be two that don't wanna see the work move forward, when oftentimes, sometimes it's the two that perhaps feel that the processes aren't in place to make that decision, or the data is not in place to make that decision. And that's oftentimes actually positive feedback that I, being one of the two, that I do receive, is that, thank you for asking those questions, those are great questions, you know, so, it's perspective. The five-two doesn't mean that we, in general, does not need to indicate an ineffective board, because we bring different perspectives to the table. But I find it interesting that the interpretation right now is that, I guess that you're bringing here forward is that two don't wanna see the work move forward.
That was the question I asked.
Yeah.
It's not my perspective, I'm saying, does that feed into the narrative around the way folks come to this work? Because he mentioned that it was, used to be whatever, what did he used to say?
It was three-four.
Three-four, okay, but now, some, for the, some of the major things that I went back and looked at, it's five-two, five-two, five-two. So, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if that's part of the narrative that we need to discuss, think about, you know, you, you just, you just gave a perspective around that, that maybe is not the narrative out there, that these, it's not that the two are obstructing, it's that the two have different perspectives, but we're gonna put in place procedures and policies to allow those perspectives to be in the space to inform the decisions, and if a decision is made that's counter to that, you still are on board, you still are part of the, you know what I'm saying? I don't know, I'm.
So, that, that was highlighted a lot when we first came together, especially in the first two years, and in the newspaper. So, the reporter really loved to, to put that through.
That's narrative out there, yeah.
But my, some of my frustration is that I can see, like, what, I see what Tanya's seeing, is that there's a difference in approach. I don't believe that Tanya and the other one.
Pardon me.
I don't believe that they don't want the work of the board to go, to advance. I think that there's just different perspectives on how and process, and sometimes I do feel like sometimes our processes are pushed faster than, you know, need be. I think that if we allowed ourselves more time or maybe some more work upfront, that we could come together to more unanimous votes, but I don't see that happening. And, and I've asked for it, and, but, and so, we just land on getting the vote done, right?
We're gonna talk about, hold that, hold what you just said as an idea, because I, because I'm gonna make sure that shows up when we talk about the procedures in a little bit. Go ahead.
And so, I just wanna add, so, because my belief to that question is no, of course, that I can't trust that the processes in place are honorable, ethical, or honest, or, or even done appropriately, you know? So, where I, and, you know, feedback that I get that members may be rubber-stamping a proposal or whatever, I cannot do that. I'm a trust and verify, and if I can't verify, then, you know, that's, that's lost. So, just gonna say that, yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry, my hand, my calling on is, my calling on is terrible. You're gonna take those eyes.
It goes back into this whole thing of, well, if there's a group of individuals who are voting or supporting a recommendation that comes from the administration, it's a rubber stamp, as if individuals haven't done their homework. It's, you, you hear that, you, I've, I've heard that before, oh, you're rubber-stamping the strategic plan. I heard that even come from a comment from the community, a public comment, you're gonna rubber-stamp the plan. And it's like, but we're sitting in this room, we're sitting and looking at this stuff, and at the end of the day, there may be a difference of opinion, and a lot of times, it is procedural. Maybe you have some others who wanna spend more time, and there may be a whole different group of individuals who are like, no, we need to get moving, we don't have time. You hear that a lot come out of Ms. Campson, saying, you know, tick-tock, tick-tock. So, my thing is, but then we allow others to misconstrue what a vote may be, and then what is supposed to be the will of the board, even if five vote for something and two vote against, what is the collective board doing to support the overall success? And that's where the frustration comes in, because I feel like sometimes the line gets drawn in the sand, and then we perpetuate that on either side, rather than, yeah, you know, you may have been this many days, but we, if you didn't win with that particular vote, that doesn't mean that all is lost. We still need to, and it goes back to that thing of the communication, how we support one another and keeping things moving, and, and I, I don't see that happening.
So, I guess, then one of the questions that I, that draws for me is, when, for example, let's use the strategic plan as an example, when, when there is a five-two, what's the communication afterwards, right? So that, so that there isn't public perception of this division, right? Because I think that, that, that's when the two, in this case, it's the two of you, what's, what's your messaging to your constituent groups, sort of folks that give you feedback and say, you know, while, here's what, here's what, here's a, I'm just gonna like narrate, like what it could be to help counter some of this. While I didn't vote for that, right, here's how I'm going to support it so that it's still, you know what I'm saying? If, if the community was hearing that, yeah, I didn't vote for it, but, you know, I, I interacted with our strategic plan, I think that we, you know, it's, it's a living, breathing document, we've got time to make revisions or to the, you know, as we look at the data more closely, right? So, it's not just that I didn't vote for it and I don't believe in it and I'm sitting on this board. Instead, I didn't vote for it, but I'm going to work hard, right, to ensure that we do what's best for Norfolk Public Schools' kids. And the strategic plan, you know, it wasn't rubber-stamped, it's a living, breathing document, we're gonna continue to dig into it, we're gonna continue to look at data, we're gonna continue to make refinements, and so, we'll ultimately get to where I want it to be. If I'm a community member and I hear that, I'm, now I'm not focused on the vote, right? I'm focused on, okay, well, they're still working hard for this. I'm not sure that that's the part, I think that's the part that's missing, I'm not sure that that happens, right? People see the vote and then they walk away with a narrative. And I also don't know what happens as a result of that narrative. Is that narrative then perpetuated? Is there, are people feeding into it? That's, that's for you all to think about, like, for, as individuals to think about, what am I doing, what am I saying, what's messaging, am I giving out that, that furthers a negative narrative? That's the work that you'll have to do, right? Like, we, I, you know, I can't say, oh, here's what they meant, here's what they meant, folks, right? They've gotta be able to see, because if, if the narrative they walk away with is just seeing this five-two, a story goes through their heads, yep, they're not on board with this, and, you know, they're not, so, the other five, you know, depending on what, which side of the issue I'm on, the other five are the ones that are gonna work for this, those two are not. We wanna eliminate all of that, right? And, and that doesn't mean that you have to sing kumbaya, you have to have unanimous consent on everything, that's not gonna be possible, but I think that you have to be able to communicate, have, leave space for communicating why your decision was what it was, but also what you will do to still move forward the work.
And if that's not communicated, then the assumption is that I'm gonna make it up.
It leaves it up to everybody else.
It means that oftentimes, in, in the absence of information, people make up a story, and then that's where it kinda drifts down.
I think I saw it this way. Yeah.
I just wanted to go back to our other comments, but before we started discussing this particular item, and that was on the processes and probably the protocols that it talked about in chapter six. We definitely have a lot of work to do on the protocols.
We're gonna do today.
Because they were, they were kinda like handed down, handed down, and we never really kinda had time.
It was like wholesale adoption.
Had time to, you know, and even as I was going back and looking at our norms and our protocols, I reached out to Carlos and I said, you know, these are really outdated at this point in time, we, we really have got to come together. But, the, the issue that I have, I struggle with is, there is work that needs to get done every day, and you took the words out of my mouth, but as Ms. Campson does say, the clock is ticking. I see it before my own eyes as I've seen kids go from kindergarten, now they're in, you know, third grade, and it's just like this, and it's, so, there are things that we have to tell ourselves, these things have got to get done. We have to have a superintendent, we, we have to have a budget, we have to do these things. We cannot afford to not have these items, because if we don't, what are the consequences? Because we're, we're volunteers. We, we have jobs that are outside of this, we are doing this in the service of children because we care. But in order to, you know, truly dedicate all of this time, that's where we have to turn to the superintendent. And then, I wrote these items down, and I'm just gonna put them out there because I really did like when we were training with V SBA, we had these little elephants, and we could just put them up on the table, we're like, what's your elephant in the room? They even mention that in the chapter two.
Similar in a little bit.
You know, what's your little elephant? And, and I'm just gonna put this out there. Do we have trust in the superintendent? Do we feel that the superintendent is a superhuman? Do we think, a superhuman, superpowers?
Don't ask these questions, by the way.
Do we think, do we think that the superintendent holds herself accountable? Do we think that the superintendent understands the seriousness and urgency of what we see with our children in our schools, whatever school they are in? Because we're gonna find them in every school, there are some schools that certainly have a lot more needs than others. But do we feel that? And I believe that no matter who is sitting in that role, they have come to this because they care for children. This work is a lot of work. So, I don't believe that anybody comes in here with an agenda of, oh, I'm gonna, you know, make all this money and I'm gonna have these benefits, and they're, they're here to serve. And so, really, it goes back to, you know, do we have that faith that this person is going to do what we feel like they're here to do? And I think, I would like to have that conversation, because that is where I think we can come together and build on some things, and maybe know that we have to work on some of these processes, enough to say, okay, we're gonna work on these processes, but right now, let's just trust the process and keep trying to keep things moving, and we're gonna make sure we allocate time for these items.
You know, it's interesting, as you, as you were talking, I thought, switch out, let's, 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 let's just put in, in chair and seat superintendent, any superintendent. The behaviors, the dynamics, all the other, so, if she's only, if she was the only denominator that we change, I don't think any would be different in this room. I think you need to ask, that's, that's the bigger issue, right?
That was, yeah.
Yeah, so, so you can, you can do musical chairs with superintendent, if the behaviors, the, 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 all the things, all the things that are causing this dynamic, they don't change when the superintendent changes. So, to me, this work is superintendent-agnostic, right? Because it's about the behaviors of this board and the way in which they govern. Now, remember, the board only has one person with whom they are, they are responsible for evaluating, and that is a superintendent. But if a board. But if a board membership comes with all of this baggage that you guys come with, no matter who the superintendent is, they're gonna, they're gonna experience you in the same way. So in a little bit, we have an opportunity for each of you to, is, is a question for you, and she, you'll share out the way that, what you need in order to experience trust with this board and vice versa. I want to tackle these, these last few questions, I want to put that space in the room, and then we're gonna do an activity where I'm gonna ask you to, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna come back to them in one second. So I wanna, I wanna make sure that we, that we get to the other two questions as well. So go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Jordan.
I can, I can wait.
No, 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 go ahead.
Um, well, uh, you just want me to, um, so the discussion with, with this particular governance team, I've had with every governance team in my time on the, on the board. I agree with what you just said, and that's part of what, when, when Dr. Gabriel was just speaking about, uh, trusting the superintendent, to be honest with you, that's part of, um, something that bothers me. Because each and every time I feel that there's a conversation around what we need to do as a board, it gets shifted to the superintendent. And I feel that it then tries to place this position of me versus the superintendent, or some board members versus the superintendent, and I don't think it, as I said, when we did the things last time, um, uh, I think I was the one that wrote the, the question about should you make a decision without the superintendent's input, I think I wrote never. Because I think the superintendent has a right to that, to that input. But I think that's part of the dynamic that, that I think we need to work on. As for the mention about the five-two and the strategic plan and so forth, I, the, the concept of, you know, once the vote is taken, then you support the will of the board, I really don't have a issue with that concept. I knew I was going to vote against the strategic plan, because I shared that, and I shared my reasons why. So in this particular instance, I did something that I hadn't really done much in the past. So I informed some of my constituents that I was going to vote for and why, if it stayed in the current draft fashion that it was. I haven't had any conversations about, um, you know, the narrative of what I'm gonna do moving forward. The, the agreement was at the last meeting when the vote was taken, we would come back and revisit some more about it today. So I'm waiting for the continuing conversation about today. The other thing, I think that, um, every board, every governance team composition I've been a part of, we've had conversations about trust. That's not new. I think we have worked through it at different levels of success throughout the, throughout that time period. But I, but I also think it's a little, um, I think we have to be a little honest with ourselves. This, for me, it's a struggle with the whole concept of the public and what people are saying and what people are viewing, and that whole, that whole narrative. The, the, the four-three did not come from the reporter reporting on four-three. And I don't think four-threes or five-two come from the community coming and trying to manipulate and find, find solace in, uh, in the five-two or the create device. I just think that as we moved to, um, to this fully elected school board, I thought Ms. Campson kind of touched on it. I think the, um, members who were elected in 2018 had a vision that they wanted to see. And, and I think to the extent that's been a part of that majority, and I think they, that there's been success in, in achieving it. So I just think there needs to be some comfort in, um, embracing what folks want to see. If you're part of majority, that's fine. School board is not the first board I've been on, when I've voted, been to one vote often, so. But there is something to the process of affording, um, genuine input, uh, not saying that somebody has input is filibustering. Sometimes there are questions that folks have that I think are legitimate questions, and I think in our governance, as we talk now about, well, we just need to move things forward. Any and everybody who's in the majority always says that, okay, what it is. When, any and everybody who's always on the minority always feels like, oh, well, maybe, well, I shouldn't say always, often feels as though their input is not, is, is not considered. So I go back to what I was saying earlier about the, the moral imperative. So I don't know about trust, I don't know if I'll ever trust everybody in the room, and I don't know if everybody in the room will ever trust me. What I would like to be able to have some clarity around is, uh, what is it that we want for students? How do we define it? How do we measure it, and how do we hold ourselves accountable to it? And, and I think that, um, you know, that's where I think some of the opportunity to build trust and collaboration can, can be around. But, you know, we've, we've been four-three, we've been five-two. Um, I think we started out that way. I think often we are still that way. I don't think we have to be that way. But the, the spirit of collaboration never really existed. And, um, and I don't think it exists yet now. But I do think we ought to find a way to get there for the benefit of children. But I just think we just have to be honest. Sometimes we will make decisions and there'll be consequences for those decisions. Sometimes the consequence may be a positive one, trust is established. Sometimes the consequence may be the opposite. But we have to be willing to own it and, and then decide what we're gonna do after we own it.
Forward, yeah. And I, and so we, we, we're gonna have a conversation in a little bit, in fact, I'm gonna move us there shortly, to thinking about like what the procedures are that get us to collaboration and trust, right? Building in time and space for those conversations, to ask the questions so that you're feeling informed, so you feel heard, right? Those are all things that are gonna come up, and you'll see that in a little bit. Let's tackle these, this, let's, I just want to hear your thoughts, what you jotted down around the second, second question and the third question. Does this team demonstrate ability, benevolence, and integrity in its individual and collective actions? Let's do the same thing. I want to hear the yeses and nos real quick. So we'll start with you, Mr. Jordan. Second question, does this team demonstrate ability, benevolence, and integrity in its individual and collective actions? Let's whip around for the yes or no.
Ability, yes. Execution, no.
Dr. Martin?
I just put no.
Um, ability, yes. Benevolence, not sure. Integrity, sometimes.
Dr. Gabriel?
Yeah, I put, I put sometimes as well.
I had not all the time.
Inconsistently.
I said sometimes because I think ability is not lacking. We have ability. That's a yes on the ability part. I don't think, I don't have anyone that I work with on the board that I don't feel has the ability to do this job. The ability's there. I think we run into trouble with the other ones.
I said no because of the end.
So you agree that, that you have the capacity, right? It's just that we're not demonstrating it. And next, that question specifically says with collective actions, right? So it's not saying that as individuals you don't have that. It's, it's when we come together, right? And then the last one is the specific behaviors. You've called out some of these things already, but I want to hear, like, let's name it, let's name the things. What specific behaviors and actions impact group accountability, predictability, reliability, and organizational integrity? Now, I will tell you, I've heard stories, right? I, I do read your local paper. I watch your board meetings, right? So even though I'm not here with you, I try to keep a pulse as to what's happening, what the perceptions are, what the interactions have been. So tell me some of the specific behaviors. You can tell me some recent ones, you can tell me some older ones. I'd rather, rather we focus on the more recent ones, because I keep saying to put this stuff that happened in the past behind us, but I know that even between meetings, there's, there's been conflicts. So what are the specific behaviors that impact group accountability, predictability, reliability? That ultimately impacts organizational integrity?
I'll go first. I, I have a list.
Let me get my list out.
Well, and I'll start with one that has been explained to me. So I had emailed the group because I read in the newspaper that we are consider, considering moving to a four-day work, a school week.
You read that, you found that out in the paper?
Yeah. And so I emailed Carlos asking where'd this come from? And he has responded with an explanation. But it's things like that, it's like, wait, when, when did we, when did this happen, right? And so there's just a list of those. It's just, uh, uni, it's, there's unilateral, unilateral decision-making that's being, that's happening without the input from the full bar, board.
The four, let me, let me take, let me, I'm trying to make clarification. The four-day thing that was in the paper, was this something that was, it's not, obviously not something that's been decided, right? You're not going to a four-day.
We haven't even talked about it, but it's, but the reporter put that, put it as Carlos told her that something we were considering.
I was gonna ask that next, I was gonna ask that next.
Yeah.
Are we, are we just unilaterally believing what, what's in the paper, or was it well-sourced? You're saying that you, you saw that the reporter said it was per the chair, you went to the chair. Okay, keep, continue, yeah.
Um, we, there's a new, there were committee assignments made when we'd previously talked about having those in January. Um, and then there's a new, well, a revised committee that has been put in place.
A, a new committee?
Without the full board discussion. And, um, the one, other one that we've already kind of tou, touched on a bit was prioritizing time over process, which we already talked about. Um, I have a few more, but I think that's, and I don't want to just be picking on Carlos.
No, 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 I, I, no, but you're giving those.
I want you to continue so that we can have this open discussion.
Well, I, it's, it's gonna come up, it's gonna come up when we talk about the procedures too, because what I, the reason why I'm asking you to, to, to say the behaviors is because I want to put it in the space, because we're gonna have a conversation about the norm, what the behaviors that match that norm are, and you might say, well, no, that doesn't address this particular incident that we talked about before, like, it doesn't address building in the time, right? If we saw, if we say that, we need to think about how we build the agenda for meetings, what topics will be discussed, so that, so that board members don't feel blindsided. Here's their pre-re, like, whatever the case is, like, we need to think about the procedures for it, so that's why I'm asking you to surface them. So it's okay if you're reading off your list. I don't want you to feel like you have to respond to those, because we're just, we're just surfacing the behaviors that impact it. So I'm, I'm okay with you reading your list, it's, it's good.
Yeah, the other one that I'm, I'm repeating, repeated, rep, continually, um, also observing is, um, cutting people off when they're in the middle of talking. I'll stop there.
Other specific behaviors, actions that impact the predictability, the reliability, and that really impacts the way people think about yourself in terms of the, the integrity of the organization of the board. I use the term organizational integrity there, I didn't want you to think about, like, North Public Schools, I want you to think about the, the integrity of this, this entity within the organization, so just I want to narrow that a little bit for you.
I can add, um, building, building on some of what Adele has shared. I would say using, uh, hold on, let me put my glasses. Being evidence-based, uh, data to drive decision-making. There's been surprise tactics, um, which we've talked about. I'm sorry, what was that?
No, but I was talking.
Oh, oh. Surprise tactics, information that one member has, all members may not have. And I still, I believe that some board members come to meetings more prepared than others, um, so I think preparation is important. Let's, I'll leave it there.
Sounds like, just from those examples that you surfaced, right? There's building in time, to be prepared, making sure everybody has, you know, those are all process, procedures, and behaviors that we want to outline when we talk about the norms. What else comes up for you? Specific behaviors and actions, yes?
I think that sometimes people don't take responsibility, um, for anything. Nothing's their fault. There's just no responsibility. It's always everyone else doing things to a person that is, you know, that doesn't fit with building relationships.
Windows and mirrors, right? We do more windows than we do mirrors.
Yeah, I, I think you have to be willing to stand up and admit that maybe you made some mistakes, that it's not always everyone else's fault when it doesn't turn out the way that you wanted it to turn out.
Which is still a trust imperative, right? Because I'm willing to admit mistakes if I feel like I'm gonna be offered grace and not have it held against me, right? So if we don't trust each other and we feel like it's, you know, this is gonna keep coming back, I'm, I'm not gonna admit that I was wrong, because what's that gonna get me, right? So it still goes back to a trust, a trust imperative.
And oftentimes, that's rooted in shame and fear.
I think it's also, um, yeah, I can't think of a good adjective that I want to use in here, but someone who uses a system like forcing, delivering, um, um, foyer questions, serving everyone on the board with a foyer and they're a member of the board, is a little bit disruptive to the building of relationships.
There's a, there's a lot of, I guess the word is power play?
Yes.
So I think, I think, when you go back to that graphic where the, the hands, that was your collective power. I think that if you take that analogy, let's, let's run with it, and each digit of the hand feels like it has its own power, it is exercising its own power. It diminishes the strength of this if the thumb is not part of it, the pinky's not part, does that make sense? So I'm, I'm taking that, I'm taking that, that graphic and running with it, but I think that's the thing, it's like the individual, there's individual power struggles, power yielding, that I think happens, that you exert on one another. And I think that's what, that's, that's tricky, like, that feels, that can feel very divisive, right? And of course, it's gonna impact trust. So, yeah, your, your hand was up.
Well, I was gonna say, sometimes we have to look at the root too, and ask the question why. And some of the, the reasons could be that, again, going back to one of the things I had on my list, of board members not having all of the information, or unders, understanding, you know, a rationale for why certain practices are put in place, or, you know, not getting a response. So that was one of the things that was, I, I believe, on a sticky note, about being responsive to questions that are being asked. I, I, I think that when you have enough of those underlying behaviors, that sometimes that is the platform for why a foyer request may be made, or.
Platform for no relationships being built, and that's what we're talking about.
Well, that's true, but like, one of the behaviors that I think you, you hit the nail on the head when you said not taking responsibility for actions. So here, we're talking about, um, you know, what behaviors, what do we think, but, but there's no accountability. And I, I, I believe I raised that during the first meeting, the very first governance training that we had, about there not being accountability.
Can I ask a quick question? What would have been, what's a counter behavior? Instead of, if, if, if the foyer, if the foyer request wasn't an option, what would have happened otherwise? Like, what's, what is, what are alternatives? That's what I want to ask. What would have been the alternatives? Because I'm trying to think about the process, right? What would have been the alternatives? You, I, I asked for some information, I didn't get it in whatever time, whatever is considered timely, because I need to define that too, like, that response to requests are within a certain period of time, that could be a norm as well, right? But I asked for something, I didn't get it within a certain period of time, and so what are some other steps that could have been taken prior to a foyer request?
I can speak to that, since I submitted the foyer.
Say tell it on yourself.
I don't mind. You said, you said you want to be authentic in the room.
That's fine, I, I refer to that.
I, I don't have a problem being authentic in the room. And accepting, as I said, whatever the, the consequences thereof, I can, I can accept that. The, the, the steps were, there was, the draft agenda was available. I asked about the draft agenda on a topic that I've asked about several times. I didn't get a response. This is prior to, I didn't get a response. I, um, can't remember, because I can't remember if it was the same Friday, and I know it might have been that same Friday. Subsequently, I, I called the chair and he had mentioned that. Subsequently, I, I called the chair, and he had mentioned that, I think in the meeting, or somewhere along the way, I learned that he had a, uh, it was the day of his birthday, so he was busy and didn't, didn't have the chance to call me. But I reached out and left the, left the message. We then, you probably didn't get the message. Okay, well, I called you.
You called me?
Exactly, that's how rare it is, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I called and left the message, yeah.
Don't never just.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, we're talking through it, we talked about steps, so I sent an email, didn't get a response, I, I might be wrong on that, I, I called you at some point on a Friday, I just couldn't remember.
You might be wrong, because I, I recall that, okay, just want to make sure you put that out there, because I'm not just ignoring you.
See, this, this is, so what, what?
No, keep going, keep going.
No, no, what Dr. Martin said, this, this is what, these are the Jordan rules.
Where I'll address that too.
So if I speak, everybody gets to interrupt me, but when others speak, I just sit here and let them speak.
No, keep going, keep going, we're, don't respond to, we're, I, I want to hear the behavior, because we want to make sure that you have an opportunity to surface them, because we're gonna talk about the procedures to address the behaviors, so go ahead.
So there's, there's been questions for three, four years about, um, how we handle public comments. So we have policy around it, and I think that what our process has been is that we discuss policies as a board, and then we make decisions as a board. What, what has, in my opinion, what has occurred is, we don't do that, that there's, the, there's a different perspective that, um, that those decisions can be made either by the agenda planning team, or can be made by the chair. So I had inquired about, um, the, the process, because when the draft agenda was there, I was, I was just confused about, I was trying to make sure, what are we, what are we doing? So in the last meeting that we had, um, we looked at the agenda, discussed the agenda, voted on the agenda, I thought the agenda had a typo. We, um, had a, had a meeting, and then, um, citizens' comments on non-agenda items was moved to the end of the meeting, which to me, many boards do. And if, to me, that's our will to board, we can have that discussion, and we do that. So, um, I didn't know it at the time, but not only did we move it to the end of the agenda, um, we cut off the streaming and the comment, and the, and the, uh, video. So I got a text during the meeting that said, what happened to the stream? So I didn't know what it was, so I asked in the meeting, did we cut the stream off? And then there was, I can't recite, anybody can go, I don't know if it's on video, because I didn't go back to see if it was probably cut off at that point. But there was some explanation that somehow it has been decided that the citizens' comment on non-agenda items would be moved to the end, and that the comments wouldn't be streamed. So I felt blindsided by it. The cameras that we have around the room now, the full board at the time had a discussion around it, we talked about it with the superintendent, we put it in the budget, we agreed to, to do that. So after the meeting, I went and I asked, uh, the attorney, because it was stated that the attorney had some involvement with it. And, um, the responses I got from him was that, um, um, that somehow this decision was discussed Monday before the meeting that we had on that Wednesday. So then I went over to Dr. Gabriel, because Dr. Gabriel and I have served on this board together for the same amount of time, and have been through ups and downs, and even as we may not agree, I still feel that, um, that I can share my thoughts with her, whether she agrees with me. So I went to her, and I just said, hey, um, because she's the vice chair, I said, I know what's going on, I'm concerned about this, I think it's a blind side, and I don't, I don't think it was appropriate. So I sent an email, and I asked, sent an email to the chair and the superintendent asking about it. The chair didn't respond to me, superintendent did respond to me, superintendent said that the chair had decided that we were going to discuss this matter at today's session, which was two weeks, whatever it was. And, and I responded, said, well, I, I have a big concern of that, I don't think that he has the authority to do that, and this, to me, is a continuing pattern. So, so at that point, that's when I said, okay, I don't, I don't understand what, what the big secret is, I don't understand why it can't be shared, I have a concern about it being done in agenda planning, this is, oh, and there was a, a different email I had sent where we had something related to that, at least I thought it was related to it, on the policy agenda. And I did ask if that could be reconsidered, and I did get a response, and we said we were going to, you know, come back and, and deal with it, uh, today. But there's a pattern for me of, um, just questions being ignored, or being somehow suggested that, um, that a simple answer could not be provided. And so, yeah, so the, for me, we're talking about how the foyer can, um, impact, um, trust, the trust didn't exist to begin with. So that's, that's my, in terms of steps, these are steps that I, that I took, and I just think that there is a, uh, pattern, and sometimes, I believe, intentional, to not share with the full board things that, I, you know, I just don't think everything is shared with the full board.
But why would that be a foyer against me? What did I do that has to do with the agenda? My name was on it, I got an email telling me I've been foiled.
It's not a, it wasn't a foyer against you, it was, it was a foyer, so once upon a time, and I don't even know if it's there now, we could go to, um, board docs. We could see the minutes from the agenda planning, we've had.
But what does that have to do with me? I mean, I'm still sitting here thinking, I got a foyer, I got an email telling me I was.
Well, the board got a foyer.
The board, the board got a foyer, they're mem- we're all members of the board.
So let me, let me ask this, um, because I think there's a couple of things at play. So my question was, what steps might you have taken instead of? You outlined what you had done, I, I, I still feel like there could be policy, there could be some procedures that we put in place for what one does when they don't get a response, so we would, we have to address that, which is why I think it's important to surface this. But I also think that as I listen to you, um, explain this, it's, it's not, the issue isn't even whether or not it was, the comments were streamed. Because I'm, I'm not hearing you say, like, I think, I, 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 the sword, the sword that I'm on right now is the fact that I need, I need public comments streamed, that, that isn't your issue.
No.
Okay, so I want you to say that, because I think that's, I think that's the thing that ends up getting caught up here. Your issue was pro- was process, your issue was, um, use of power, y- your issue was lack of collaboration, all of which, by the way, are because y'all don't trust each other, right? But I think that what ends up happening is, we, we get stuck in the incident, right? And that's just an incident, that's just one of many incidents. And so you, you're, uh, what I don't want you to do is to be stuck on the incident, well, if I said this, he said that, I emailed him this day. I got foiled, you foiled me, right? Like, those are incidents.
That was retaliatory.
Well, and, 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 and that goes back to, right? I don't, I don't know, I don't feel like it was honest, I don't think it was honorable, right? I don't trust, I don't, the integrity, all of that still boils down to a lack of trust. What I want to, what I want you to, to extrapolate from this is, again, it's, it's not that you have a prob- and I think this is how it's interpreted, it's interpreted as personal. You, Carlos may have felt, I'm, I'm not speaking, I'm not speaking for him, I'm just saying, like, Carlos may have felt a certain kind of way about that, like, just like Ms. Campson feels, like, well, you foiled me. And I think that what we have to start asking ourselves is, outside of this particular con- like, this particular thing, that this particular event, right? What are the underlying factors? I think I showed you guys that pyramid, right? You guys get real stuck at the event, at the event level, and we, and we talk about the eventual ad nauseam. He did this, he did that, she did this, she did that, uh, my response to what she did was this. What I want you guys to think about instead is, what are the underlying rationales behind the behaviors? In your case, you even said it had been a pattern of you not getting the answers you wanted, and so you saw your only recourse in this instance to do the foyer. It wasn't even about this particular incident, it was about other stuff. That's what I'm saying to you guys about you guys bringing forth other stuff, right? Like, the things never, never go away, you're never allowed to, to make a mistake and fail, and we move forward, and we're responding to a lot of past stuff. We're responding to, this has been my pattern of experience, and then it puts everybody else on the defense. Now, I'm sure there were other things that could have been done prior to going the foyer route, you went that route because in your experience, you weren't getting the answers you wanted, et cetera, in your experience, your perspective, which is totally valid. So we want to make sure that as we're doing the, when we move into the procedures, that you've got a procedure in place for when I ask a question, when a board member requests information, we have this window, at a forty-eight hour, seventy-two, I don't know what it is, you guys will figure it out. Uh, seventy, uh, you know, that does, you allow, allow the grace of seventy-two hours for, for you to get a response, and then if, then you have an if then, right? If I'm still not satisfied, I'm going to then have a sit-down, a one-on-one, or two-by-two, whatever, whatever y'all do, to have the conversation with my colleagues, right? And that could be closed door, it doesn't have to be, you know, in the room. So I think that that's what I want you to think through, as, as I, I'm, I'm not asking you to name these specific behaviors so you can, like, duke it out. I'm naming, I want you to name them, so we say, we need to have something on paper that helps us address when we don't get a response in a timely manner, or when I don't feel informed, and I come to a meeting, and I feel blindsided because I wasn't part of that conversation, right? So that it eliminates it from being a specific person thing, because that's what it is now, it ends up being a specific person thing. I emailed him, it was his birthday, he didn't respond. Right? All of that, we've got to, we got to put the kibosh on all those things. I want you to always think in terms of what are the procedures that are gonna get us to be productive, right?
And adding, what are the procedures that are going to help us be better for the students? Because I think that's a big part of it too. It's taking the personal away from it, thinking about the action, and how does that action get addressed?
I don't disagree with some of the needs that some of my colleagues have already mentioned, because I can definitely, uh, I can agree with a, a lot of what they have said. Um, but the two things that I need is, I need to, uh, I think everybody respects time, but I don't think everybody demonstrates that they respect time. And I'm talking about time that we take to be here in this position, the time that we take outside of this position in order to prepare for our meetings. Because in the way that I see it is, we have very clear expectations of our teachers, of our administrators, of what we expect for them to achieve.
And hold them accountable to it.
And hold them accountable to it, um, with their job. And if we cannot demonstrate that ourselves, and if we can't manage our, our own personal needs, of what we feel that we need in order to come to grips with a certain decision, whether it's, it's been in favor or not in favor. I think we need to work on that, that's what I need, because the time is extremely valuable. Um, not that we cannot commit the time, but the time that we are here together needs to be very meaningful. And some of the, um, some of the, uh, examples that they had in the book, like on page one fifteen, it says, um. Um, let me see here. We will keep our remarks brief and to the point, we will build upon the ideas of others, and look for common ground, and paraphrase for understanding. So that's, that's just one thing that I, that I need, um, from everyone, and I, and I know that we all are respectful of it, but I don't think that we do the best job of demonstrating it. Um, and then the second thing, I go back to our process of the strategic plan, which, in essence, that is the, Rodney, you had said three things about students. You said you want to define why we're here, wh- what it means to us, and you had said something else.
Oh, yeah, it was about the, the moral imperative.
Yes.
What do we want for students, and how do we measure it, and how do we hold ourselves accountable?
What we want for our students, how do we measure it, and how do we, didn't you say define it?
Mm-hmm, and how do we hold ourselves accountable?
And, and to me, I, I was looking at the strategic plan as that.
That's what it's supposed to be, yes, that's exactly why this was.
I mean, I, tell me if I'm wrong, but I'm like, this is our strategic plan, and this is what I think that it is supposed to do. Um, I, I, I thought that we tried to do something that was collaborative, inclusive of, of board member feedback, of community feedback, but even as we had our meetings, I could definitely tell that there, there were, um, individuals that, that felt like there was more that was needed. And I think that, um, Mr. Jordan had submitted some items, um, that, when I first read it, I was like, you know what? I kind of like some of these things, and I think it would make the strategic plan actually really powerful. But unfortunately. Rodney, I, I, the way in which it was received, I, I think that, um, and I'm just gonna speak for myself, that, um, rather than us being able to come together and have further discussion about it, I think that there was concern about, well, how much longer is this gonna prolong the discussion? Or what else has to happen in order for, for some of these items to come in collaboration? Or is there, um, you've done all of these changes, did you, did you feel like what was presented by the superintendent wasn't, you know, good enough? And I'm, and I know that's not your intention, I know that wasn't the intention, but what I'm, I'm using that as an example to say, we, we could have had an opportunity to make something that was great even better, because we were trying to build on perspectives from other board members.
Let the how impact the what.
Uh, yeah, and, and for me, I, I really want to be able to incorporate everyone's thoughts and ideas without us preemptively shooting it down, because we're concerned that it might drag on the conversation and not get us to the point of action.
And when I say that.
I don't know how else to say that.
No, that makes sense. When I say that, you let the how impact the what, like, the what loses its power, because we, we get into the, well, how are you gonna do that? It's gonna take longer, it's more discussion, da-da-da-da, I don't trust this person, da-da-da. So the what, while it may be very substantive, loses its what-ness, right? Because we get caught up in a conversation about the how, how it was delivered, how it was, you know, like, even, I, I used this example I used last time, right? The whole X-ing of the superintendent letter, right? When I first saw that, I was like, my God, who does that, right? It may have been perfectly valid, you have great, had, had great rationale for it, without context, if all one sees is a big red, you know, X or whatever, right? You read that as, this is, this is silencing a voice, it may not have been the intention at all, I'm just saying, it goes back to the how, right? So one's first instinct, when they see that, would be, he's trying to silence her, and, 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 and so one might take action around that. Versus the, let me go talk to Mr. Jordan and find out what his thoughts are on the superintendent letter, maybe he wants a letter from superintendent and board, maybe he doesn't, you know, whatever, he may have a perfectly good rationale about it, right? If I trust him, if I think that he's honorable and ethical and honest and not trying to do things, that's my first mind, I'm gonna have a conversation with Rodney, and just ask about this. Because absent those things, right? See red X, make judgments, get mad at Rodney, say he's, you know what I'm saying? Like, I think that that's the way you all, that's the first instinct. What I want to do is challenge us on our first instinct, and the offering of grace, and the, and the letting people have the space and opportunity to, to explain their rationale could go a long way, right? When I heard, when I, when we, when we raised the thing about the, the letter, and saw the other feedback, some of it didn't make sense, right? Um, I, you know, but again, that, that, that conversation never occurred, and it was like, here's my feedback, red X, right?
The conversation that occurred was, I asked, because I didn't, I didn't, for me, personally, from my, my vantage point, I didn't think we had, um, at the time that we received it in June, the draft, board engagement with it. So other than maybe particip- you know, if, if a board member participated on one of the, on one of the groups. So I shared that at the meeting. And then, um, and then my understanding was that we were going to come back and discuss it at the retreat. That didn't, we didn't do that. So then, as I understood, the assignment was, um, because we always say we don't have time, and I think time is important, that's why I think prioritizing what you want to spend your time on matters. So, you know, we could, we could do an assessment of how we spend our time, and then what we prioritize our time. So the assignment. So the assignment was given to board members that if you write your, write it down. And that we were supposed, because actually I was late. Because we were supposed to do it by whatever it was, Sunday, whatever the Sunday was. And so I was trying to follow the task that was given. And I remember the reason why I knew it was late. Because I worked on it on an airplane and then worked on it in, in LaGuardia in New York. And by the time, because my flight was delayed, by the time I got back, I didn't, wasn't able to send it till whatever it was later that night or the, or the next morning. So to me, something like the strategic plan, something like goals, something like measures, those types of things about students' outcomes, I think are, are important. So, so if I raise a question or try to make a suggestion during the meeting, I'll get talked over or shut down. Then I'm told, well, just write it down and send it to the superintendent, just send it two or three days in advance. So then I take my time, my time, to write down what my feedback was. Actually, in the, and for me, in the context of, these are just my thoughts for board consideration, superintendent consideration. They weren't directives. These were, this was my perspective of what I had read and what I thought we should, should consider. And so even because I knew I had Xed out the letter, I think I'd even written a little email and wrote a little note. And I said, and I just thought it should be superintendent agnostic from my perspective. And I think you and I may have had a brief conversation about it, may see it differently. So that's what I did. But I, I think that in, while we have, the reason we have work sessions, the reason that you can build, you know, like, and sometimes things do, you know, two readings of things or two reviews or two work sessions, then you build up before you take action. I think you can do that. I think you can have a calendar and a strategic approach that allows for engagement of the board, engagement of the community if required, and execute things on a timeline. And it doesn't necessarily have to be that we, we have an hour and a half in one work session or two work sessions, we put it on there. And then there really is, in my view, very little board discussion. There's Q and A with, with staff. So I think Q and A with staff is good. But I also think if we're talking about consensus or we're talking about agreement, the board has to be able to have conversation.
Would an added step, I'm just, again, we're back to procedures. Would an added step have been, provide your markups, whatever, in writing. Bring them to a conversation so that we can discuss. So if that, if that had happened.
Yeah, I'd recognize everything I, believe me, I recognize that anything I suggest, and I don't mean this in a negative way, I'm just saying, it's the dynamics of the right to some input, but no question about the final result. So I know I have the right to some input. I know I don't necessarily have any guarantees about the final result. So yes, I do think that having the input matters, as you heard. I may have considered some things that others didn't even consider. And so to me, that is the value of having seven board members and the superintendent at the table dealing with something and having a conversation around it. And, and then when we start talking about the, the vote and the will and the majority and so forth, it is then easier for any individual, whether on the winning side of a vote or a losing side of the vote, to be able to do what you talked about earlier. Because each person would have felt like they had a genuine and auth- authentic.
Opportunity.
Opportunity into the final decision.
And I think one of the things that also, and I, I keep harping on this because it's important, is if there had been a relationship, a stronger relationship, then you would understand, oh, that's how he communicates with us, so we get it, it's not intentional or harmful in any way. But just accepting that some people do things differently, perhaps than, than what others do. So if I know that about him, then I can anticipate that it's not coming from a place of, of vengeance or anything like that. It's coming from a place of, this is how, again, going back to one of the things that you've said, this, this is a pattern of how. But I can also see that's how it could be misinterpreted. If that is a pattern of how it, of operation, it could be interpreted in a very different way. But it still boils down to me, to the kinds of relationships that are around here and that those relationships lack an essential foundation of trust.
And so if you come at, at all of the, if the reaction is generally that there's malintent in a person's actions and we respond from that place, like that, that becomes the baseline. This person has mal, has malicious intents, right? And so my response is driven by that. I think that that's, that goes back to how you see one another, yeah?
So I just became chair in July. For what, first part of October. So this pattern, I'm kind of thrown off. I became chair, and the first thing that I did is I called everybody and all the board members to find out what were some of the pressing things and to try to generate that agenda. And one of those things was to have board member input into the strategic plan. So I created time in our agendas to do that. But to be responsible and respectful of people's time. And also consistently, if you looked at any of those meetings, you'll hear me say it. There's the work that goes on during the meeting, after the meeting, and preparing for the next meeting. So when we came down there and even about the responses back and writing up, though we're going to have a tool, did submit it in, I responded back in the email. Thank you, Mr. Jordan, for submitting your stuff. I submitted it to superintendent. They'll come back and look at what you provided and provide the recommendations back to us. Ms. Pessine was out of the country. For some reason, she was getting blocked from where she was at with our spam filter. Got in contact with me, I made sure that her information was included. So I don't know how that's being malice or having ill-will intent and trying to make sure that everybody's doing that. Even so, we even changed so that we could have more time for board comment and not necessarily external comments, so that we could talk about these things. So if you go back and you look at the agenda, I provided those intentionally based on the feedback for the board members. And granted, we still needed to get moving. We, we realized that there also was a outside team and that this plan was conclusive of really the voices of the community. That was what was communicated back to us, so we're providing the opportunity. And yes, I looked at some of the things that Mr. Jordan came in there and I was like, yeah, I, I could agree with some of those too. But we provided those opportunities and I don't want people to walk away and feel as though that it, it wasn't. We went three months beyond when we originally thought we were going to approve this. We just approved it at our last meeting. So I, that kind of, there was provided opportunities, but this is where I go back to that concern again. Five, two, four, three, whatever, may be when certain individuals don't get what they want. Or you don't go in their direction of what they say to do, and that's not the will of the board, then it becomes an issue or you're, you're doing something, you're not following the pro, it's the process, it's the process. But we can't get to a process of where we're dragging our feet. And we're not taking action. Because then that's the other thing that's being said about this board is that we're not taking action of the things that we need to. But I do want to go back, because I feel that in all fairness, I do need to address some of the things that were stated earlier. And, and. So let me go back to committees. So I received an email after we had our presentation from Advantage Strategies, which is our consulting group that does our lobbying. And they asked about that, hey, we need to get moving on developing the legislative agenda, bring your legislative school day, all of these things. We had had a prior conversation and I even asked you, Dr. Gabriel, when we asked about, hey, committee structures, you know, you have some examples of what that looks like. We had had a full discussion around wanting to be able to talk about, in the future, where are we going to go to a committee of the whole? That was one idea, or what we streamline some of the committees. Based on our last meeting that we had in governance training, I was like, we're not going to get to committees anytime soon. I've got to get moving with the legislative stuff and, you know, so I was like, hey, yes, as the chair, which is every chair's had, every chair selects who the committee members are. I did that, I provided a rationale and submitted it to the co, my colleagues.
So they were assigned, everybody was assigned to the committee?
Everybody was assigned to the committee. There were some shifts that moved around because I was like, you know what? Let's move some things around here. Certain people have some different opportunities, some people have been on committees for a long time. Let's, I was looking at people's skill sets, just putting all that stuff there. And I stated, hey, I'm moving with these committees because we need to get moving on some things. But please know that we are going to continue this conversation, but there's some things that we got to get moving on. So this unilateral or to try to insert that as the chair, I'm doing anything that any chair does not have the authority to do. July, August, it wasn't until September until I made that, that decision and sent that out there. We were losing time. We needed to get things moving. And so this, because the same thing could be said, that there are two members that sit on the facility committee. A member of this board asked to be appointed to that committee. As the vice chair, I brought it up three different times to my former chair. Was not heard. Did you hear a big pooh-pah about it?
It stayed vacant.
And it stayed vacant for an entire year. So I'm like, this, 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 this sending stuff, I've only been sitting in this, like I said, I didn't want this particularly at this particular point. But that there is some, some will that I'm going out to target people, no, I'm trying to get work done. And at the end of the day, anybody who truly knows me, I'm all about work. And when it gets down to the, the, the processes of things, I'm always going to be an individual. It's parliamentary, just in the respect of will of the board, procedures. And it wasn't until I got back, well, I got into this particular seat, that we even added back to the agenda approval of the agenda. To, to put voice back into the board members, everyone around here, that yes, the policy states that there's a committee, the agenda planning committee that puts it together. But the board has the final say in what's on that agenda, what could be moved, what could be changed. And that's what's been present at the last several meetings. So when it's brought up in the last meeting, and if you all were, got a chance to read that, there was a section in the agenda that brought up the approval of the agenda. Mr. Jordan did bring up about a policy item. And I said, yes, Mr. Jordan, I took it off and I wanted to add it to this section here so that we could talk about it, as you had asked, you said either pull it off here, whatever. That was the only thing that came up. The agenda had been sitting there and on two separate occasions and said, was this properly placed out there on that Friday? It was. So if there was any concern on the agenda, I expected it to come up as it had at two prior meetings by the same two individuals about the moving of public comment or not having non-agenda at a certain point. Because I was moving things off of the agenda at that particular point so that we'd have more time to talk about strategic plan and to have more voice.
So my question, I guess, in that, in that instance is two things. So the, so the agenda is published. Do you guys have a procedure for the amount of time in which, I don't know, again, forty, forty-eight hours, whatever, for input from other board members?
It's supposed to be twelve noon on Monday, emailed.
Okay, and so when that doesn't happen, or if it, in this, in this particular instance, it didn't happen, so then it was, it was raised at the board meeting?
Excuse me, what, what's supposed to be, I missed something. What's supposed to be twelve noon on Mondays?
Any questions regarding items on the agenda, that it's in our policy. It says twelve noon on, by Monday, email it to the administration, anyone else has enough time to send it back. But what we don't get in many cases are clarification questions. We get, I'm removing this, or I'm requesting this to be removed, or I have a lot of questions, and so I'm just letting you know that I'm going to pull these items out. Rather than what I perceive is the work that has to happen before the meeting. In many cases, things that could be answered, clarity could be brought before we get to a meeting, which then goes into this other thing, then why do we want to wait for a meeting to pull out certain things? And then that gets into the other question. Are we doing it to be seen, to be, to have an additional conversation, to do something? Rather than, and then you look at the rest of your colleagues that are around the table, did this have been asked, or why are we taking all this additional time?
How far, how far in advance is the agenda built for the upcoming meeting?
So agenda has to be posted by that, that Friday, by four-thirty.
That's going to happen on, on Wednesday.
Well, that Wednesday is out, but I, but I will tell you, I have personally expressed that I want more time. I would love it till we got into a cycle where literally the agenda's out two weeks ahead of time. So that there's plenty of time so that you can have two-by-twos. That's something that I've expressed there. I've looked at other boards and looked at their, their governance one, and where they, they literally post it, it's there. Anything that needs public comment, there's almost like a two-week period.
Yeah, ten days.
Yeah, ten days for people to, to provide on it. So I, I know and I realize that that's a quick turnaround. But I'm, I'm not unilaterally making that decision to change that out there because I knew we're going through this particular process. Which is the other thing that I, I want to just address when it comes down to the, the piece about public comment. Yes, there is this, you know, we, we all went through science and, and we know we have to have a little hypothesis type of thing. Well, if we do this, what reaction will we get from this? And to be perfectly honest, what we have seen, and it's been brought to me on different occasions, we've had certain groups who've been protesting, saying that we were trying to stop voice when honestly, we were trying to create opportunities for this governing body to have more discussion on its strategic plan, which is what was asked of. And so we adjusted some things, which is not uncommon. And certain entity was still outside protesting. And Ms. Campson, as you know, she has no fear, I mean, she is a former school principal. She went and asked the question of them, you know, why are you out here? And it was stated back to her.
Have a sign against me, I was wondering why, it was my sign.
You know, and it was stated that a member of this board had told them that I was trying to take away their opportunity to, to have public comment. So we continued to see this, that same body of individuals not coming in during the summer. And so we're coming back to our meeting in September. Again, I'm a policy person, but I understand that policy is the top thing that we have to do. So there's mechanisms for which the board has to do certain things, and that's through parliamentary procedure, taking votes to will of the board, to do things procedurally until we get to a policy level. I even stated during that meeting that there was a cap that we were trying to get rid of regarding our retirees. And there was a question that came in there, and I think, Mr. Jordan, you brought up the fact that why don't we just make this a policy rather than a board action? And then the, the thought was, no, we shouldn't be creating policy directly right here. We have a mechanism in place already and it hasn't changed. We send it to the policy committee. And so if we're going to change something, we're going to send it to policy committee and a recommendation's going to come back. So with that, when we get to the meeting, okay? And we get here and we, we change things, which by the way, I'll tell you, it's not the first time that we've separated agenda items and non-agenda items. We did that in our, our, our last year when you served as chair and I was your vice chair. So it wasn't uncommon that that had happened before. It changed when a new chair came in and it went in a different direction. Okay, no problem. But yes, did I inform the entire board about the fact that a camera was going to be shut off? No. Because the hypothesis was this. Why are people really coming here? Is it to have a conversation and to express their comments from the external, from the community to the board and for us to be heard? Did everyone who have an opportunity to express their comments and signed up, get a chance to speak to the board that night? With their entire three minutes? Yes, they did. So when it got known that there was no camera on, what we had experienced, if you go back and look at some of them, have really been, because this board has adopted a policy, that it won't respond back. A sister board over in Portsmouth, they respond back, right then and there, if it's wrong information, they respond back. They, they, you know, they even got the cameras up, things like that. But it was also based on really trying out something from the Virginia Beach School Board had done it for years, where they had it separated. And the only reason why it's of late they brought it back together is because it was virtual. We were all in COVID. So my hypothesis was, if the cameras weren't present for the non-agenda items, let's see what would happen there. How would the comments be directed to this board? Would we have a conversation? Would people be in a much more tame manner? And you all were sitting there with me, it was a much more tame manner. Now, granted, I, no, granted, I, well, I, I think, yes. I think it was a much more tame conversation at the board. And everyone who hadn't wanted an opportunity to speak, did. Did I take a liberty on that particular evening to have the camera cut off? Yes, I did. I did. And that's, that's being transparent? I did. Why? Because I wanted to see what that was going to do. Because at the end of the day, serving in this particular chair, I want to make sure that we can get our work done and get it done in a way. Not do I want to silence voices, but what removes the distractions, and we've talked about this before, external factors coming in and playing into our meetings and allowing, not allowing us to focus on the things or pitting board members against board members or different groups and so forth. So yes, and as I stated before, it wasn't changed in policy. It actually got brought back to us that while Ms. Dr. Martin was sitting as the chair, we had sent this to the policy committee. For us, yeah, Attorney Cloud brought it up, that we're supposed to be reviewing it and changing the policy regarding public comment. And that was sent back in like March or April. And so I was like, oh, wow, I totally almost forgot about that one. So it's back there for an opportunity for us to do just that. And really, for board members to put that input in there and for it to go to the policy committee and for the policy committee to make a recommendation. And so that's what I asked the, the city attorney on. You know, what does that look like, looking at other examples of that one, to bring something back to the board? Yes, so when we came back in September, the, the main thing of that one is that the board had full opportunity to ask questions. It was asked, and we got a seven-oh. It was asked, and we got a seven-oh approval of the agenda that's clearly separated and put the public comment after the adjournment of the regular business meeting and for its own separate, um, section.
And let me ask you this. If you, I want you, I want you all to chime in, chime in on this. If you had, when you made that decision, sent an email to everybody in this room with the rationale you just explained, hey, here's what we're going to do, let's, let's give this a try, let's see if this enables us to move forward with our agenda. You may not have noticed it, but on the agenda that you all had consent to, you, you saw that I moved that, that part won't be streamed, here's why. If you had gotten that email, would that have been?
I'd have asked questions about it.
Yeah, I would have asked.
You'd have had the opportunity to ask questions about it in advance.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's, it goes back, it's all about the process.
It goes back to process and trust, because my concern would have been, the reason why I didn't bring it, was that some of the main actors in that do have close relations with members of this board. And my thing was, is that my, the whole hypothesis is that if they were tipped off, I wouldn't have known if it really made a difference.
They don't trust. They don't trust.
Can I just, can I speak to this for a moment? the, the, the work around the policy committee procedures and how the board works to try to give each member input in the process. I mean, that's, that's, that's something that far as every board I've been on has talked about collectively. The, whatever, whatever citizens' comments that we've had, I don't know, last couple of years, whatever, whatever timeframe you want to put, they're tame. They're tame compared, I've been, been on this board for a long time and, uh, is, is, you know, we've sat through public comments on some real contentious issues. And, um, so, you know, I don't, I don't quite follow the, I don't agree with the narrative of, you know, people just being lined up and trying to divide the board.
Can I throw a wrinkle in that?
I don't know. Go, go for it.
I'm not speaking for anybody in the room, but I think this is an assumption that I can make. I think people, I think there might be a perception in the room, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, that there, there's coaching.
You didn't say that.
There's coaching, there's planting, come, come to, come to the board meeting, come to the mic, right? And, and cause this divisiveness, and that that's happening by design from people who serve on this board.
Yeah, I, I believe that that is believed. But I'll give you an example, there was a individual who spoke at the, the last meeting. He was a teacher. And I ran into him somewhere, I can't even remember where, where I was, somewhere out in the community, could have been, um, at a school, I can't remember where, where I ran into him, and he had a concern. And I said to him, like I said, to say that members of the public all the time, well, I said, do you, do you, did you go through your chain of command? And I, I think his response was yes. So I said to him, well, you know, you do have the right to come if you have a concern that you want the board to know about. You have the right to come to the meeting and express your concern. I didn't know what he was going to come and say. I didn't think he said anything that was, uh, divisive. But there's a, there's a process to that. So even going back to the committee thing, we've all, we, as I'm listening to the conversation, again, it sounded like I heard that maybe there were some other conversations about how to handle committees. But as I recall it, we said we were going to defer the committees and come back and address it as a whole. So all I'm asking is that, uh, that the board as a whole be afforded the opportunity to have input. That doesn't slow down, that doesn't slow down any process, it's worked fine. If it, if there's been disagreements amongst the board, we have been able to, to, to work through it. I think it is, um, a concern that I have that, um, that the full board isn't being involved. Even, even in the example of when Dr. Gabriel was chair and the citizens' comments were split up before, I raised the same concern then. So the, the examples from Virginia Beach have been something that I have shared and with the board for some time. So the principle for me is, is that we are a board as a whole and that the board as a whole has to, the right to some input. Yes, I know all about things that the chair can do and should do in the role of the chair. But the chair doesn't have any more individual authority than any other member of the board outside of those things that are required by law and signing papers and so forth. So it's that principle of, uh, you know, bringing it to the, the board is, is what I'm talking about.
Looking for more opportunities for collaboration.
But this is my thing, though. What other chair has brought committee chairman, a committee membership to the entire board for a conversation?
We've done, we've talked about it.
I mean, because I'll, I'll sit here, when you, when I said as your vice chair, you did not do that. You did not do that. And, and when Ms. Campson asked the Servant Facility Committee, when we asked about the Safe and Secure Schools Task Force, you blatantly ignored it. It did not come before an entire thing of the board.
I did, actually, I didn't ignore it because, no, Mr. Mallory and, and Dr. Birdsong and I.
Did you appoint the second member of the Facility Committee?
And what did I say to you, Adele? I said, the board voted to have the task force. The board voted to have the task force, you didn't get to just eliminate it.
What, what are you talking about? That is not true. I don't want to get caught in past grievances. I don't want to get, yeah.
Well, it's not true.
Okay.
I mean, it's just.
That's fine. What I think.
But what committee, my thing is, I feel that there's a certain new set of rules and standards being placed on me as chair.
This is wrong.
As me as chair, yes, we had a conversation about revisiting as a board how we would do committees.
We haven't.
We haven't. And I clearly stated that it looks like right now, we're not going to get to this right now, but there's things that we got to get done. So I'm moving forward, knowing clearly it's in my email, but we'd like to pick and choose what I put in there, that we would come back as a board and talk about this. But I'm only doing this to keep things moving along. We're two, we're three months into it right now. You know, I just, it, to me, it's like, it's a double standard right now that for, this has been what, I've been on this board four years, it's been the chair who makes committee selections.
It's all, it's all the baggage that, that just ends up on the back of whoever's, yeah, I mean, so. So I think we, I think we have, we, we, I want to move us forward, because I feel like we need to talk about the procedures that address all these things that you brought forward. I want you to do the quick activity, and I want, I'm going to, I'm going to model it for you, and interestingly enough, look at the sample that I have for you. So you're going to do an activity called My Burning Issue, because this is your opportunity to, to get that one thing, that sword, that sword that you'll die on, right? I want you to surface it. I, here's my sample. My burning issue is, the issue that bothers me the most is that we do committee of the whole, or instead of subcommittee meetings. Why it bothers me, I don't feel like a chairperson of the subcommittee anymore, it's confusing. Non-subcommittee members want to participate in the discussion, but only subcommittee members are allowed to vote. We have unintentionally diminished the role of the subcommittee in order to allow for other members. It confuses the public, when all of us speak on the issue, it only few vote. It's a committee of the whole meeting, but members don't always show up. How does that look to the public? These are brainstorms, right? Uh, what my colleagues might say about this, we have to comply with the open meeting laws. We need to decide what's more important, our traditional structure or the opportunity for all members to participate in discussion. If I am not on the subcommittee, how can I make informed decisions as a board member if I don't participate in the discussion, right? And then possible solutions, go back to the traditional way of doing subcommittees, eliminate subcommittees altogether, develop a reporting structure and allow for reporting out and discussion as part of the agenda, or add the process to the agenda structure, the agenda building structure. This is a sample. You may have a different burning issue. But notice that I state the issue, I say why it bothers me, not why it bothers this board, why it makes this board dysfunctional. I want you to, when you do the activity, I want you to think about, why does this, why does this impact me? Why does this land on me this way? What might be the perspective of others? That's, that's the third question, what my colleagues say about this, the second question. But I also want you to be then grounded in possible solutions. What I want you to do is, you have the worksheet, you have a hard copy in your, in your folder. I want you to take, I'm going to give you ten, we're going to give you ten minutes, ten minutes only, because we want to get into the norms, because we're, we're already at three fifteen. We want you, I want you to take ten minutes, I want you to reflect on, as we move this work forward, as I try to build trust, all the things you've surfaced that we're trying to put in the rearview and move forward, what's your burning issue? Like, what's the thing, like, like, we, if we don't address this, I, I, like, problem, right? So take ten minutes and jot down your burning issue, but then I want, again, you're not just going to say, oh, here's the problem. It's why it bothers me, what, what my colleagues might say, and then I want you to spend time on the possible solutions. We're not just going to be surfacing problems. I need you to say, here's some alternative things that we can do. Not that you can, not that the other person, see what I'm saying? So those possible solutions need to be grounded in actions of the board. So you see in the sample there, it's like, okay, let me go back to the traditional way, or we eliminate subcommittees, or we develop a reporting structure. Those are not one individual. It's not, oh, the leader or the chair will do such and such. It's what will we do? So your possible solution to address your burning issue needs to be about collective actions that you would take as a board. Make sense? Any clarification needed before we start the timer?
So we picked.
You picked that one, your burning issue, your, your burning issue. This, this sample was just about the committees, because I know committees have come up a couple of times with you all, so I wanted to give you an example that made some sense to you. But your burning issue may be totally different. All right, ten minutes, it's three fourteen.
Keep it clean so we can use it again. I'm gonna use someone I already have here though. Thank you.
No. No. I don't. I'm good. But if others need more, it's fine. I'm not very official, I have to, everything else. But I clipped him too wide. Yep. And the cover under it was. Google what happened. There's a long hallway. From that end to this end.
Well, I'm ready to go. We're headed back today. Oh, really? Was it raining out there the whole time?
Hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
I've read that, that's what I was reading.
Oh, that's okay. No, this is today's date. But it's okay. We focusing on this.
Yeah.
See, that's the problem when you start doing, I was, when I was doing consulting. I enjoyed doing it, but the plane flights and the traveling. And it's not like I was going to New York or New Orleans and I was going out to like. Yeah. Yes, how about, so you rent your car and you're driving through the coal, the, the cornfields. I'm like, why am I doing this? No. Oh my goodness.
My tail six, my tail six, a super eight.
Sounds like Grundy.
Did you have your gun?
No.
It's a little bit scary. Ta-da.
So.
Okay, so my burning issue, lack of trust in teamwork. And why it bothers me, because I said, we are crawling along rather than soaring. We don't trust the superintendent. And we don't trust those outside of our circles of trust. What my colleagues may say about this, they would agree, but then some would disagree. Because, and wherever you look at it, they contribute to the negative behavior. Possible solutions, we need to develop norms, create a space to be open and honest, listen and seek understanding before casting judgment. We all need to be held accountable and develop an environment and culture for coaching and being supportive of one another. And we need to get to know one another outside of just the board meetings and develop relationships around other common interest.
That was well done. I don't want to follow him.
I have a clarifying question. You said we, so that means we as a board.
I don't.
Don't trust.
Yeah, well, oh, you said, I guess that was, why does it bother me? Well, yeah, because we, and because I believe there's more than one, and that don't, don't trust the superintendent. And don't, yeah, yeah, R T O. Ooh.
I appreciate that.
We're gonna have to have a.
Time out, time out.
We're gonna have to let the light go on to check your mic. Did the battery die?
Okay, it's back on. Sorry, my apologies.
I was trying to help you out.
Any other clarifiers or, or reactions to what Mr. Blattin said? Some agreement?
Definitely on the solutions, I agree. Like to go next? Yeah.
Okay. My burning issue is that misinformation is provided to the public about the administration's work. It feels to me that this is done intentionally to undermine the credibility of me and my administration. Why it bothers me, I personally struggle with why this would be done. Like, why wouldn't we want to work together as a team? Why would you want your administration or your superintendent to appear, to not be in a good light? What my colleagues would say, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. I think it, some individually would say that they agree with me. And I think some may not, and they would have a rationale for why they don't believe that to be true. But at the end of the day, possible solutions, it all boils down to trust. We need to develop, work on developing relationships of trust and mutual respect.
Can I react to that? I sing your praises all the time.
Pardon?
I sing your praises all the time. I'm so proud of this administration and the progress that's being done, and I've told you this.
You have.
I've told you this personally, I tell this to every organization that I speak to. I, I know there's a lot of work that we, still needs to be done, but that's one place that I can brag on. That I believe that the intention and the, the thought that has been put into, you know, directing resources into the classrooms is something that, you know, I wanted to see happen, and now it's happening, and now we're seeing the difference. And I just wanted to continue to succeed.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And that's why I asked Carlos the question about who is we. Because I, I personally feel like the majority of board members do trust me, and they trust my intentions, and they trust that I'm working towards the, the betterment of children and the school division.
I'm not the we.
Yeah, that's why I asked you to clarify.
Oh, yeah.
Other people may not know that.
Yeah.
But I do feel like the majority does, and I appreciate that, and she has.
And I always agree with you, but, you know, I let you know.
Yeah, you don't, we don't have to.
Yeah, you don't have to.
We don't have to be disagreeable. Yeah, we don't agree on two things.
And I make it very clear, your operations, I'm in the board, and when it gets to that, it's your privilege. That's what we hire you for.
They put each other in place many times in agenda planning.
I was in a meeting.
But we have that mutual respect.
They do, yeah.
So we can say some things, right.
Sentient opinions and still.
Passion out, and me either, and the next day, you want some coffee, whatever, it's, you know.
I was in a meeting last week with one of the districts I was with, and somebody described, somebody, it was, it was totally unrelated. But on the charts, there were some, there were facilitators and some folks, school leaders, and somebody said, like, we're talking about strengths, and they said, we have an authentic superintendent. And so, and we were kind of debriefing, I said, tell me about that, what makes him authentic? I actually, I've met the man, so I believe that, I, I agree, but I wanted to hear what other people had to say. And they were like, well, we feel like, you know, and he's a new superintendent there, this is his first year there. We feel like he's genuine, like, you can tell from his behaviors, he genuinely cares about kids, he genuinely care. They kept using that he's genuine, like, he's, you know what I'm saying? And I feel like that's what you need to be looking for with, with yourselves. What is that, that, what would, how would I want to be described when I'm not even in the room? Right? And these were like, these were, these were teachers and school leaders, and they said, like, we, you know, we, we have an authentic superintendent. Not, I, I just love that word, like, the authenticity, and so I said, well, describe to me the behaviors. So I, I always think you should challenge yourself to think about, like, how would I be described? Would it be that one word or two? How do I want to be described? And what, how am I actually being described? I think that's, it made me think about that. Like, I wonder how people, what's, what's the, what's that one word, right? Because that's what you want to model for folks. And so I appreciate you, you know, saying, no, no, look, hey, hey, that's not me, I brag about you, right? And I think that your statement could have been that, you know, for just, so that, so that it's never like a, what's the, what's the word I'm looking for? An absolute? Maybe it's that some members of the board don't always demonstrate trust of the superintendent, right? There's no accusation there, and it's, and it may be, you could even say, at some point, so like, maybe at some point, we all, even the ones that are in the five or the two, it doesn't matter, right? At some point, it may be that, you know, I may not have demonstrated trust in that particular decision. But how did I handle it? Did I go back and ask for more information? Did I get clarification? Did I, you know, all, all the things that we want to put procedures in place for, so, thank you. Who wants to go next?
I have a problem with long, endless meetings. Now, I know that seems odd, because we all have this kind of problems. But when we go into meetings, and, you know, I've sat on a lot of boards, and, and they're well planned out. With an agenda time, beginning time, ending time for each of the agenda items. And we don't do that here. I mean, we have the agenda items, but we don't plan out the time. And so what happens is, when I'm, when I'm getting ready for the board meeting, I go through the information that we get. I look at the things that are simple, and I can call someone and ask some questions about, and I'm okay with it. And I look for the things that, that I have questions about, or maybe just a congratulations, because if it turns out as well as it sounds. And I know kind of ahead, and then when I'm speaking, in my mind, I'm always thinking, don't talk over three minutes, because everybody else needs a chance. And I talk fast sometimes anyway, so I don't usually have as much trouble getting there. And, and I just, and so what happens is it drags on, and we were in a meeting till one o'clock in the morning one time. I mean, there's no rationale for that, I'm sorry. It's planning, it's, it's the ability to leadership and plan.
So for your burning issue?
My burning issue is that.
Use of time.
Use of time, use of time. And I don't know, I don't think I have to read the reasons, all these reasons. The main reason is that it just runs over, no, no time, it's, there's, the pre-meetings don't exist where you could go in and talk to the superintendent ahead or with one of her, her staff people. None of that seems to, I mean, I use it, but some people don't.
How do you think it affects the rest of the?
Yeah, so anyway, what I, so my, what I put down as possible ways to improve it was to have some limits on what you do. Everyone should have a voice and be able to speak. They don't need to speak for a half an hour. You need to.
Procedure would be time, time.
Right, a time limits on each item linked to an agenda item. So, and I even mentioned this to Carlos for today, because we have two agenda items and we have two hours. I mean, even if you did the whole hour, I mean, there's plenty of time, so it's gonna be interesting to see how that goes today. But there's, if you put time limits on, well, this is strategic plan, we're gonna give it an hour today. All right, or this is a small thing, we're gonna give it fifteen minutes. And then we're gonna say, everyone gets two questions, three questions, whatever, around the board. So, you know, they go to question one, did you do around the board? A lot of people might say none, or items, I don't say anything on, because I've already done it. So to put limits on the time that the item's done, and then limits on the time of speech, making sure everyone has time to do multiple questions and operate within those limits, sometimes we may still run over the end, but we shouldn't be running over hours.
So it's a, it's a procedure around agenda development?
Yeah, and.
Signing.
Times.
Whether it's whole group, like, when facilitator leadership, we do whole group, small group, number of minutes.
Sort of like grand.
Number of minutes, yeah. I mean, so basically, it's, it's, that's a procedural piece to.
And we always ask, how much time do you think you're gonna need for an item?
So when you guys do your agenda building conversation, that's part of that discussion? Okay, that's perfect. Who wants to go next?
So. We need to do better at modeling a culture of caring and trust as a group of diverse and talented individuals able to work through complex problems for the sake of the success of the students and staff that we serve. And it bothers me because we do not model good behavior. And we, it could be said that we say, do as I say versus do as I do. And our children are watching. And I know this, because my kids have asked questions about the behaviors. And sometimes I'm embarrassed, and sometimes I have to explain things that I don't really feel comfortable explaining to them, because we really should do better. And it bothers me because there is so much potential in what we can achieve. And for our students at Norfolk Public Schools, a lot of them, if they do not have an opportunity at a good quality education, their life could be in a completely different trajectory. And so we truly have the ability to change lives and save lives. I don't know what my colleagues would say about this, I think that they would agree, but I could be wrong. So I, I just really wasn't sure how they would feel about this. And as far as solutions, I agree with everything that Carlos had mentioned, norms, protocols, work on those relationships. I put on here, set clear expectations. So before coming here, we had some discussion about our contract negotiations with the superintendent. And there was a period where I just said, okay, hold on. What do we, what is the timeline that we want to do? What is it that we want to achieve, and are we all good with this? I needed it for me, I didn't know if anybody else needed it, but I do think that probably having some clear expectations on timelines. but I do think that probably having some clear expectations on timelines, deliverables, what the superintendent expects, what we expect, would probably be beneficial. And so, those are my thoughts.
Each, so far, each of the burning issues can be addressed with procedures. So you're, you're hearing it too, right? Like, oh, it sounds like simple, okay, we need a, we need a procedure for this, we need, like, we need to start there. But absolutely, everything that's come up so far are things that can easily be addressed if we put in place and honor some procedures. Want to go next?
Yeah, because I'm the youngest board member. In terms of time being on the board.
He means newest to the team.
Yeah, but that's the way we say it, I'm the youngest board member, since I've had the less, yeah, the least amount of time on the board. So I, I really didn't have a burning issue yet. But one of the things that I think is an issue is sort of about trust, an open trust, is my burning issue, and why it bothers me is because sometimes it can turn into bigger issues, and personal attacks even outside of board meetings. Like, when I saw my name on a sign, and then I heard that perhaps some of my colleagues were involved in that, in the protest. And I, I believe in freedom of expression, I believe in organizations, you know, speaking their truth. But to hear somehow that my colleagues are involved or behind that takes it to a whole nother level. Does that, it takes it to a whole nother level. Because I do believe in protests. In some ways, I've been an activist through my years of life from college on, you know, activism and protests, I believe in it. But when you find out your colleagues are involved in that, then that open trust just changes. Of course, it diminishes being colleagues when you hear and see that your colleagues are involved in a protest somehow against you, you know, by an organization.
Can I stop for a second? When you said hear and see, I'm going to ask a question. Were, were people in this room involved, and who had signs made, or that kind of thing? Or is it hearsay or speculation? And I guess my second question to that is, did anybody confront anybody about it? Were there any conversations and confrontation?
I was going to ask for a clarifying question on that. Like, so, so can you elaborate, like, which colleagues, how do you, like?
Well, I don't necessarily want to get into what, I wanted to bring it to the table. I don't necessarily want to discuss which colleague per se, because that's not the main point to me.
But the perception is that a member of this board has solicited.
Yes, and, and that it happened, but in terms of like, I don't see what it's going to do for me or the board to say, you know, it was this one.
I think to your point, though, is it hearsay or is it fact-based?
It's fact-based.
Fact-based.
Right, it's fact-based.
Was an individual confronted and admitted that, that, yes, in fact, I solicited constituents? I, I'm not saying it didn't happen. What I'm, what I'm getting at is, the thing that breaks down the trust is the, the, making the assumption and then acting on said assumption, right? And it may be because there's no trust, I don't need, I don't need to hear, I don't need to get confirmed, right, or verified. I know this happened, right? And so I, so I act in the, yeah.
And that, and that's how I'm seeing it, because, yeah, and that's how I'm seeing it. And that, why it bothers me is because it's also politically driven. And to me, that really takes away the work that I do on this board. I, I'm not on this board for political, this is, this is public service. As a matter of fact, we had a big discussion at the university yesterday about faculty being involved in the community, and how important their service is. And they asked me to sort of reference about being on the school board, and I said, this is public service. This is, this is, a lot of what I do is volunteer time and public service, and my expertise that I give back to the community. So this is not political for me at all. And I think I made a point also, my personal references, I'm not politically driven. I'm politically savvy, but I'm not politically driven at all. But I know people are, and that's fine. I don't have anything against that. I mean, that's, that's, that's just the way that politics works. I mean, some people are driven by it, but I am not. So sometimes, I think that's why it bothers me more, because I'm not politically driven. So it does bother me when I see that, when it's kind of used against me. What colleagues might say, I think some colleagues may see it themselves, and I did hear a colleague who mentioned it. I think colleagues would also say that it is unnecessary, that it's really not necessary. Because, I mean, we hear voices, we hear people. You know, I talk to people, to communities and families, so, you know, I know their issues. And I think also, people would also realize that, I think colleagues might also say that it is politically driven, and that it happens, particularly since we've kind of gone to an elected school board. So I think it could kind of seep in even more now that we're elected, that that is politics. And I do see that, I'm not, I do know that we're elected, so now it is politics. Possible solutions is to really work on, for us to work on trust and not control, because sometimes what I feel is that, that we can build trust, but if I feel like us building trust kind of starts getting into control or wanting control or sway over, then at that point, I, it's something else to me. It, it turns into something else, if, if I feel like that person said they're going to trust me, or they're going to get closer to me, but if it's for control, then it gets, it gets into something else. And while I'm the, I'm the youngest board member in terms of time on the board, but I'm not the youngest person on the board, so, in other words, I've seen a lot. You know what I'm saying? I've, I've seen a lot, 40 years of professional education service. And also build authentic professional relationships, because I think that was one thing I wanted to say when we were discussing it, is that I am able to distinguish, like, you know, my relationship with my family is very different than my relationship with people on this board. When I was a teacher, my mentor told me to make sure you are not the parents of the children that you teach. And they said, you need to make sure you distinguish that if you want to stay a vibrant, healthy teacher, that you are not their parents, and don't get that in your head. That you have a role for them, and you create, but, you know, they, but do not become their parent. And that was very important, because I've seen that happen. And I've had to tell teachers that I train that you are not their mama, you're not their daddy. You are their teacher, and this is your role. Yes, you're empathetic, and you're caring, and you're supportive, but you are not a parent, because that's a whole nother set of emotions and stuff you got to deal with as a parent versus being a teacher, or being a board member, or whatever. And the third thing is that I think even though this board is elected, but we have to work beyond politics, though, and I think that's very critical, this is a possible solution, that we got to work beyond politics. That's very critical, and that's how I see it, being the youngest board member.
Excellent, thank you, thank you. Who'd like to go next?
Sure, I'll go. Can I just respond to, are we still responding to?
If you, yeah, if you, if you have any clarifications?
Not, not so much clarifications. The elected model is challenging. We're, we're new at it. I do think sometimes there's hearsay, and sometimes there's fact. And even, even as appointed, folks get protested and threatened and all kinds of stuff. But, you know, I've had experience of colleagues who, you know, stood at the polls for my opponent. Sorry, you know, so. I, I think that some of this, as we mature as elected board, will hopefully get better at being able to deal with some of those issues as they present themselves. My burning issue, board intentional focus and time on student outcomes, board attention on student achievement. Why it bothers me, generations of children appear to perform below what we say we believe they should or can. What my colleagues might say, we have to take action, trust the soup. We have other decisions that require retention. Possible solutions, restructure board meetings towards no less than 50% of board public meeting time on student outcomes, devote governance time for now to defining and agreeing, all eight of us, on board work and superintendent work, conduct monthly board meeting evaluations and discuss those evaluations. And then, meeting agenda and content and board material that's to be voted on is received no less than seven calendar days in advance.
And, okay, so that would lead to greater preparedness for the conversations that are held at meetings, and for this, the discussions that occur before the meetings. Okay.
I'm laughing, because I was listening, you know, to everyone else, and then, anyway. So my burning issue was that we are not focused on student outcomes. At a, I said, at a time when they need us the most. Why it bothers me, because they need us the most. And our chaos in the boardroom is chaos in the classroom. What will my colleagues say? They will agree with this, but actions and behaviors will deter us from this focus. Possible solution, continued focus on governance training. Develop meaningful, smart goals and parameters by which we will achieve these goals. We establish and support meaningful and consistent data reports and reporting and monitoring systems. We will dedicate at least 50% of our agenda on students. And that's where I kind of stop my list, but.
Good, that's good. Again, procedural, so every one of your burning issues, we got every. You haven't gone yet, right? Okay, let's hear yours.
Oh, are you done?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Were there any reactions? I, because I, you, you were, I just want to make sure that, were there any reactions to, to Tanya, or questions for clarification?
Yeah, mine was really a lot like Dr. Birdsong and Dr. Rousens, is about the misinformation and the, the made-up narratives. And it bothers me because I real, I'm out there trying to share the truth. I literally will check, like, Dr. Birdsong gets, and probably gets annoyed with my emails, I'm like, please tell me what, like, is this accurate? Am I saying this accurately? And it, it just bothers me. It really, I feel like it's, it's counterproductive, and I really want to, this school district to succeed, and I really want to kill the, there's enough negativity out there about public schools in general. And there's enough negativity about Norfolk Public Schools, and I don't think, I, I think Norfolk Public Schools of today is way different than the Norfolk Public Schools of yesteryear, whenever that year was, that someone had some experience that they're holding on to. So I think the solution, I mean, I'm doing my part, I'm out there checking, you know, I'm saying all the great things that we've been doing, and, but still being very realistic about, yeah, we still have work to do. And I hope that everyone else's, would be doing the same. And, and I think checking in with each other, and more. And having conversations more with each other. And, and, you know, I don't like the idea that people put, on this board, have put other people up against them, and have gone out and actively campaigned against the people on this board. I wish everyone on this board the best of luck in their endeavors and in their, reaching their goals. I don't want anyone to, to not, if they want to return, you know, be re-elected, to be, you know, I want, I want us to continue this work, this is valuable time we're spending.
Unified messaging is what I'm hearing, too, like, developing processes for you to have that unified message around the work that you're doing, communicating that out, so that you're countering the negative narrative.
Yeah, yeah. Edit, edit everything?
Any, any, yes.
So my questions are, there's the negative narrative, and then there's misinformation. So to me, the narrative may be just perception and misinform, and misinformation, which I think I heard a couple of times, is to me rooted in evidence of that misinformation being out there. So my question is, how do we then handle that misinformation once it's out there? I mean, again, going to procedure. I think it's a question that we should think about.
And I would, I, I, yes, yes, and? I think it's also about being proactive, right? So it's not just addressing when the misinformation is out there, but how are we ensuring that good information is out, is put out there first? And then how are we combating?
Right.
When there's misinformation? And then, we also need to examine if we are contributors to said misinformation.
Yeah, that's one of the things I was, I forgot to say, about undermining each other.
Yeah, I think that's the part, too, that we have to think about. Like, what, how do we ensure that we, I say we, as a board, aren't, aren't putting out wrong information, and then aren't perpetuating, you know, misinformation, and that we have a unified response to that? So when there is misinformation out there, it's your responsibility to come together and have that conversation. Here's what is being perceived out there, here's the truth, what's our strategy for communicating the truth?
Well, and the thing that I always lean on is, when people, you know, I always think each one of us was elected by the citizens of this city. So I feel that, out of respect for the citizens of our city, I need to work with each and every person on this board.
Your hand up?
Not this time.
So, we are, our, our time went by really fast this time, and we didn't get to the things, it's okay. I always say, I say every time, that I never want to just rush through, because I think the important, the conversations are really important. But what I, what I want to, a couple of things I want you to think about. So in the toolkit, you have all the slides for, for today. What I want you to do, because we're going to pick up where we left off, but what I, now you've got a preview. Because each, on, you'll see as you go in, you have the proposed norms, which is what we drafted from what you guys gave us last time. There's five of them. And you'll see, and we're going to do it together, so don't do that, but I want you to look at them. We're going to do an activity where, where we're going to look at those proposed norms. We're not going to do wordsmithing, we can play with that later. But I want you to identify the pro and the con of that norm, as it's, as it's proposed. You'll see this, it'll make sense if you look at it. And then, there's another activity we're going to do, where we're going to now name the behaviors that get us to living, that, that's the procedures, right? So I knew it was ambitious, trying to try to get that done today. I thought, I knew the conversation was going to go long, and that's okay. Hopefully, you guys felt like we had a valuable discussion that needed to be, needed to have, to have, needed to be had. But I didn't want you to think that we were going to abandon the norm work. So I, so now you've got, you have all that in your folder. I want you to take a look at that, and you'll see, you'll be able to see what we planned to do. So you can go ahead and do that as pre-work, so you can actually come with that for our next time together, with kind of the pros, the cons, and what the behaviors look like. That'll move us, move us a little further along, because we want to develop the procedures for each of the norms that we proposed. Also, look at it and say, you know what, given the conversations we had today, given the things that came up, given the examples we gave, I think that, of all these proposed norms, we may need another one, right? And so you may propose another that, that addresses something more specific. What you'll see is they kind of address things like, you know, time, trust, confidentiality, procedural types of things that you, that you know will have to go and be put in place to make, to live those norms. So go ahead and preview the rest of the slides, because you do have them there, and that's where we'll pick up. In terms of reading, we do want you to read the next chapter, which is seven. But I'm less concerned about you reading chapter seven, and more concerned about you reminding yourself about the Pelop Coherence Model, which is the, the white paper that I gave you last time. Because what I'm hoping is that we can move into two things. We're going to finish up the norms and procedures, we're going to get that done, because that's where we're going to start in the next four hours, we have to get that done. But, but I also want us to be thinking about, now that you've adopted a strategic plan, how will you, as a board, build coherence around monitoring, right? Identifying the key performance indicators, and spending your time, as you guys have said, focused on student achievement, focused on moving the district forward, grounding it in what's best for kids, right? So we're going to move to that. I know we spent a lot of time, because we've been together four times, but this time has really been about the relationship piece. But I will tell you, we can't get to the real work unless we do this work of correcting what's happening here. So hopefully, while I know it's been time-consuming, it's the right conversations to have, which is why I don't rush you through them, okay? So a couple of things I want you to think about, because we will come back to these. So you have the example norms, the proposed norms. You see their pros, cons, and strategies to support the norm? How will this norm be honored, shared, reviewed, and monitored? I want you to take the time between now and our next meeting to review each of these. And you also have in the decks, there's each one separately. You also have, what are the protocols? I want you to look at the existing protocols. We gave you a one-pager of, of some other protocols to consider around preparing for meetings and such that would address much of what you guys talked about here. Look at those very closely, and say, okay, we definitely need a protocol for that as well. So you'll see, for each of the norms, we were going to solicit suggested protocols from you all. So now you have an opportunity to kind of do it in solo work, right, on your own, and then bring that to our time together, where we're together next, and we will be able to, to synthesize this. And we will walk out of the next meeting with accepted norms, right, that you all come to agreement on, and then the protocols to live those norms. I think that's going to, that's going to get us, it's going to get us a lot of progress. So I actually like the fact that I'm giving you time to do it on your own, and think about it, and then come for the group discussion. It gives you four weeks to. It gives you four weeks to really dig in here, right? And so that way we can make sure we're hearing everybody's voice and you've had an opportunity to really sit in it and think about it. So is everybody good with that as a, kind of some of your work between now and then? Okay.
But I also think it gives you an opportunity to really consider, based upon all of the dynamics that you see, what are some of the things that we really, really, really need to talk about? We've talked about burning issues, we've had discussions about, um, different dynamics within the group. So how do we now create some specific protocols and behaviors that shift that to what you want?
And that don't negate, because you have procedures, already have procedures, that's why I gave you, look in the folder, you have what you already had and you've got, we've given you a list of others to consider. We don't want to ever throw out, I hate the saying, the baby with the bathwater, right? Because there's, there was obviously work that went into developing those protocols. So we're definitely not saying eliminate those protocols. We want to say, which of these protocols do we need to make sure that we scale, right? What might be missing from our protocols that would help us to address the issues of trust, the burning issues you guys referenced today? So we want you to acknowledge, you know, acknowledge the existing protocols and say, how do we move these forward? Which are the ones that are most important? Y'all got three or four pages of protocols right now. You may not need them all, right? So it's a matter of like, what are the five that are really going to move this board? So look at it from that perspective. So take the time, the reflection time between now and the next meeting to really look at the existing protocols, look at the suggested protocols, look at those norms and say, what protocol would help us live these norms and avoid the things that we talked about? Like the, you know, the being blindsided, the politicking, all these different things. Let's name the behaviors that we want to have on paper that address those behaviors. When we come back, we will pick up from there. So we're going to get the norms and the procedures done in our next time together. Because we want to, we, we want to be able to move and that's, that's why I want you to read the PELP again, remind yourself of the PELP because you really want to be able to think about what does board level governing look like as it relates to strategic plan, right? We also, I don't know if it'll happen in the next meeting, but remember, we still want to come to consensus on board priorities. We still need to revisit the vision and mission. So we're, we're, I'm not going to say we're behind schedule because we're, we're together every month. But not, normally by now, like, had we started the school year with a strategic plan that was already adopted, we would have already been into the PELP piece and about the enactment. I felt, and I'm sure you, I hope you agree, that it was more important for us to spend time on the relational pieces before we get into the, the tactical work, right? And so that's why we've taken this many, this many sessions to really hone in on what we need to be doing differently. So I would suggest you read chapter seven, if you can read it. We're a little behind in terms of catching up with the actual reading and what we're doing in the room and that's okay. But read chapter seven and refresh, refresh yourself on the PELP coherence model. In the resource kit, I have a couple of resources around trust, trust in the workplace that I'd like for you to read in your spare time. And it's there in the October 5th folder. There's a couple, just a couple of pieces to look at in there. And then all of the handouts are in there as well as, like I said, the full PowerPoint. So you have it to reflect on the, the norms that are there. Any questions for us before?
Evaluation.
Oh, there's one other thing that we want you to do. So we're, we're not halfway through, but I wanted to do a pulse check. And so in the resource folder, because I didn't want to make the link public to the whole national viewing audience, because this is for you all. In, in the folder, there's a document called resources. There is a link, there's a, I'm sorry, there's a document called pulse check. On the pulse check is the link for you to go and to do a survey. And that survey is on our work, right? Specifically about, you know, the governance work, what you help, to help inform ongoing agenda planning for the, for the governance work, but also where you are right now in this space, right? So if you could anonymously, so if you could go in, it's a, it's a link to a, to a Google folder. Google form. If you could also complete that between now and our time together, I think we gave them a date, I think on the, I might say, I don't know if I gave them a deadline on the, on the handout, but you'll see it in the folder. So if you could do that, that would be really helpful, just and provide us with both, uh, just some quantitative responses, but then there's also space for just additional comments. We'd love to hear your comments. Again, it's anonymous, so you can be totally honest, we can take it.
And we want.
Yeah. So anything for us, any questions that we can answer before we close?
And maybe it's going ahead, but I had written down before, you mentioned again, on key performance indicators. Can you remind me, is there something specific in some of the readings that you've given to us that focuses on that?
Oh, would you like, I could add some resources around, about how to, how to, how to monitor KPIs?
Yeah, as, as it relates to the strategic planning.
Absolutely. We'll add that to the resource folder. Anything else for us? Thank you all so much for your honesty, leaning into the conversations. I know, like I said, I, we know it's uncomfortable, it is inconvenient, particularly because we are doing this for public viewing and that's okay, maintaining transparency. So I do appreciate you being honest about the issues that this board experiences with the relationships, but I also want to commend you on the fact that you're willing to do the work, right? Doing the work of repairing it. We're doing the work of repairing it publicly, which I think is bold. And, um, so I think you should, you should, you should congratulate yourselves for that. I also think that I see, as an outside observer, I do see progress. I know that when I leave and then there's things that happen, but I, I do feel like I see commitment from you all. And so I just want you all to offer each other that same amount of grace, right? To not, not assume, you know, assume positive intent. And that when there are issues that come up, those things that trigger between our meetings, go to the individual, have a conversation, right? Ask for time, not an email, say instead, can, can I have 15 minutes? Can we do a face to face? Can we have a coffee? I think that would go a long way. I think what's happening now is things get lost in translation and that's an easy one. That costs, it costs nothing to say, I don't like this, that this happened, so I'm going to, I'm going to call Carlos. I'm going to ask for Carlos to meet me at Starbucks, meet me at the, meet me at the tree. What do they call it? Meet me at the flagpole, right?
Flagpole.
Flagpole. But I think that, I think that, like even putting that in place as a process, that you know what, I'm going to do the pause and have the conversation, not an email, you know what I'm saying? Like, I'm going to, and I'm going to assume positive intent. If you just do just that one thing, right? When the next thing comes up, unless, and then we can process, how did that work for you, okay?
And that's a norm you can begin practicing right now.
Yeah.
Right now.
Yeah. I have a problem with this, I'm, I'm going to go right to the source, I'm going to have a conversation.
And it might not be a problem, I have a question.
Questions, right? It could be from a place of curiosity, not judgment, right? So, all right. Thank you all so much for your time today. I know I went a little over, my apologies to those who are waiting.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Safe travels and we'll definitely see you next month.
Yep.
Colleagues, we're going to take a recess until about 4:16, um, and then we'll come back and get started then, okay?
Thank you.
Dr. Paul, I know that you're about to present. Colleagues, as we move into this next section here, I know we'll have the presentation. To keep things on track and to be fair, we're going to maintain, um, two questions from everybody, at least go around for everyone who wants an opportunity. And then we'll do the same thing as long as we, till we exhaust the time, okay? For any follow-up questions. All right, Dr. Paul, is all you?
All right. Good afternoon Chairman Clanton, Vice Chair Dr. Gabriel, Board Members and Dr. Birdsong. I'm here this afternoon to share the final accreditation data for the school year. This afternoon, I'll review information pertaining to the school quality indicators, an accreditation summary, academic data, and of course, our next steps. I'll start with a brief overview of the performance levels. There have been three levels established. Level one means the school has performed at or above the state standard with a combined rate of 75% for English and/or 70% for math and science, or the school has shown sufficient improvement from level two towards level one, which is generally a reduction of failure rates by 10% or more. Level two school scores are just below the state standard but approaching it with combined rates for English between 66% and 74.4% and math and science between 66 and 69.4%. Or there has been sufficient improvement on the indicator level from level three. Finally, level three scores are below the standard, which is below 66% for any of the three subject areas, or the performance level has been below a level one for more than four consecutive years, which is called a four-year tag. The rules for accreditation are outlined on this slide. For the achievement of the, all students, the data focuses only on the all students group and the SOA combined rates for each test. To be accredited, all of these indicators must be either a level one or a level two. For the achievement gap indicator, it is all the subgroup data separated and their SOA combined rate for English reading and writing as well as math. However, it does not include science. To be accredited in this area, one gap group within each English and math can be at a level three, but all others must be at a level one or two or above. Finally, the student engagement indicators focus on graduation completion index, dropout rate, chronic absenteeism, which was waived for this year's data, and the CCCRI, which goes into effect with this year's graduating class. For all of these areas, a school must be either level one or level two. This slide shows the trend data for accreditation from 2014, 15 through this year. As a reminder, the accreditation data is based off the previous year's SOL and other data points, and there is a gap in the data due to the pandemic. For this year, we have 24 schools that are accredited and 18 that are accredited with conditions and no schools that are accreditation denied. This slide shows the same data uses percentages in the bar graph style. The 2019, 2020 data included Fairlon Elementary School and the peach colored box next to it has the percentage of our current schools, which does not include Fairlon. As a reminder, this is our first year of accreditation data since the pandemic and the nearly two-year disruption in learning. This slide shows the number of schools per level by indicator. As an example, in 1920, there were 28 schools in level one for the all English, all students' English indicator, and this year that number was increased to 33. There were four in level two and now there are two, and there were 10 in level three and now there are seven. As seen in the data, English showed the most positive results, although the trend data prior to the pandemic was on a downward trend. Our math data showed slight decreases and our science data showed greater decreases. The numbers with asterisks are updates from the data presentation on the performance level trend data by school documents shared during the July retreat's presentation on preliminary data. Now we'll focus on the reading, English reading and writing data. Looking at the overall reading scores and the data broken down by grade levels for the annual pass rates, all grades except for grade six reading scores improved from last year. All of them, and all of them are either 3% below or better from pre-pandemic levels except for grades five, six and seven. With writing scores, that is not the same case. There were declines from last year and both grade levels show more than a 10% decline from pre-pandemic levels. This slide shows the same data set by demographics. Here, all subgroups scored better than last year and all groups were within 6% below or better from pre-pandemic levels except for our Hispanic and English learner subgroups. This slide has the reading data using the SOA combined rates. There is no comparison from the previous year's data as the combined rates were not calculated. However, there were improvements in all grade levels except for a slight decline with, with the end of course reading test for grade 11, for which there is no growth associated with this test, so students were within 3% of where they were prior to the pandemic without a growth calculation. With grades three and four showing 10% or greater improvement from pre-pandemic. As a note, this was the first year of data using the video, video we fall through for growth testing, which allowed grade three to have a growth calculation in reading and in math. This data show the growth in reading levels from the start of the school year to the completion of the school year where there is much to be celebrated. These are the same data by demographics. There was 10% or more growth in the black and the student with disability subgroups. Another highlight of this data is that all of our elementary schools would have made level one for the all performance English indicator based off their data. The only reason the J Cox and Richard Bowling Elementary Schools were level three was for their four-year tag. Both schools were only one point away from making the level one benchmark and removing their four-year tag. This means they were only one or two students away, which shows a tremendous improvement from pre-pandemic performance in reading instruction at the elementary level. Now we'll move into the writing data, annual pass rates. There are decreases in all demographic groups in writing performance from pre-pandemic. The writing test is only administrated, administered in grades eight and 11 and was difficult to teach and give feedback through virtual learning. Additionally, writing has been an area of challenge for the division prior to the pandemic. Here are the SOA combined rates for writing with the same noted decreases as with the annual pass rates. As a reminder, the English indicators for accreditation include both reading and writing for the middle and high school levels. Now we'll move into mathematics. This slide shows the annual pass rates for the mathematics SOL test by grade level and subject. All areas showed improvement from last year, however, all areas are below pre-pandemic levels except for algebra two. The division's math SOL data was on, on an upward trend prior to the pandemic and proved to be a challenge not only in Norfolk but across the Commonwealth and the nation with virtual instruction. On this slide, we have the same data with, by demographic. And as with the grade level data, all subgroups are above, above scores for last year but below pre-pandemic levels. And moving into the SOA combined rates for mathematics by grade levels, as with reading, combined rates were not calculated for the 2020, 2021 school year. When including growth, there's a marked improvement from the pass rates alone showing the amount of improvement displayed by our students over the past year. Grades three through five are within 5% below or above pre-pandemic levels. As with reading, mathematics in grade three through eight had their first pre-test with the SOL three test. This data show how great amount of growth our students showed from the fall to the spring within their math skills coming out of disrupted learning from the pandemic. And this is the same data by demographics. And now we'll shift to science data. As a reminder, there is no growth calculation for science. As noted, when the preliminary data was presented at the July retreat, the science data is where we met many challenges after returning from the pandemic. In fact, eight of our elementary schools and one of our multi-level schools are accredited with conditions only because of science. This slide shows the data by test and as a reminder, the grades five and eight tests are also combined tests. The grade five test includes topics from grades four and five, so half of the, over half of the topics were learned in virtual instruction. And the grade eight test includes topics from grades six, seven and eight. So two of those years were over virtual instruction. Although all subjects showed growth over the last year, all of them are still behind pre-pandemic levels. And this is the same data by demographics. And this slide is the same data with SOA pass rates. And as a reminder, with SOA pass rates, that includes if a student transferred in late or if they were an L and concepts like that that are removed from the data. And the same SOA pass rates by demographics. Included with the uploaded PowerPoint are data charts for English reading and writing, mathematics and science data. The charts include a by grade level by demographic breakdown and they include a side-by-side comparison of the annual pass rates with the SOA combined rates as well as trend data over four years. There is also an uploaded, an updated 2022, 2023 NPS accreditation report by summary by school, which is also uploaded on Board Docs. Now let's move from data to action. As you're aware, we redesigned the data meeting process last school year to meet at schools on a monthly basis with school leadership teams and central support team members from CNI, learning support, special education, and most importantly, school leadership. These data meetings are continuing this year. Additionally, ARA has developed companion documents that are provided to each school and program after each major SOL test administration to include the through or growth testing. The goal of this information is for our schools to plan for the upcoming school year with targeted focus regarding student needs and assets. The documents include a look back companion document, which has radar reports for ancillary information regarding a school's accreditation moving forward, pass rate and combined rate outcomes at the school level and teacher level. outcomes at the school level and teacher level, and student detail-by-question, or SDBQ, reports coupled with unit assessment outcomes at the school level by test and by gap group. Schools also get the look-forward companion document, which includes SDBQs of the current year teacher roster, but the students' previous year SOL scores. This provides a look at their incoming classes for an understanding of the prerequisite skill and standard, and there is also professional development that has been and will continue to be provided for schools to effectively use these documents and to have the ability to triangulate and formatively use the data included with other ongoing local assessment To continue the focus and work towards improvements in reading, the early literacy program based on PALS data is, of course, continuing. Middle school support blocks for students who need additional reading instruction are in place, and they have in-person tutor positions to assist the teacher. The continued use of Lexia to supplement reading instruction is in place. The addition of a high school reading support class for struggling readers coming into high school has been added, and the use of FEV tutor and university instructors that are equitably placed throughout our schools is also in place. This year, we're creating a more intense focus on writing instruction, with middle school and high school unit tests now including short-answer responses, in addition to the multiple-choice format questions on writing, developing unit plans that better balance and blend reading and writing instruction, and providing ongoing professional development on the use of No Red Ink and our online textbook resources to provide Tier 1 writing instruction across the board. There is also a writing diagnostic assessment added to this year's curriculum that will be taken this month, and there are scripted quick write prompts included in the curriculum throughout the year. In Grades 3 through 5, the new textbook adoption provides a writing framework for which students go through the complete writing process once every three weeks. Students use writing to synthesize knowledge gleaned from reading multiple texts in a unit. This built-in reciprocity between reading and writing directly encourages students to ground their writing in evidence and citing sources. And in the 1st and 2nd grade integrated curriculum, students are immersed in curriculum, which includes daily opportunities to write in response to learning. Continued work with mathematics instruction includes the incorporation of edmenum to support daily instruction, the middle school support blocks with tutors, additional university instructors and the use of FEV tutors, as well as an intensive summer review and alignment of the unit assessments. The focus on science instruction will include the use of university instructors and FEV tutors, as well as hands-on lab kits that are being ordered for use in elementary and middle schools. The summer science supposin' had a total of 88 teachers attend, where there was a focus on engaging instructional practices, and the application process has begun for our teachers to gain professional development from the Jefferson Lab and Newport News. This year, the new 4th grade standards have been integrated into the 5th grade curriculum, and all 5th grade students will be taking a science pre-assessment on 4th grade standards to assist teachers with spiraling content from 4th grade to 5th grade. Additionally, each 5th grade unit assessment includes 4th grade standards that have been woven into the curriculum. The CNI team worked with teachers to develop a best practices in science instruction video series, which will help 4th and 5th grade teachers prepare for each unit of science instruction. This is the first year of the new standards being taught in 5th grade, and now the standards are equally divided by 4th and 5th grade, and our current 5th graders had their half standards of the new standards taught in 4th grade last year in person. All of the middle school science classes now have spiraling standards to assist with students recalling 6th grade information on an 8th grade SOL test. And finally, the development and rollout of the pacing app for administrators cuts across all core subject areas to assist with classroom observations and pacing feedback. Thank you for allowing me the time to review this data and a response to the data, and we're ready for questions or discussion.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Poehl. Dr. Martin?
Thank you. Again, I just want to say how, I guess, I don't know the right word, but I'm really impressed by how we're really drilling down to where the needs are in the classroom, so thank you for all of that. But also, I have a question about the writing, because this has come up in conversations lately, that what do you think is contributing to the lower, I don't know, reduced writing skills with students?
So, you know, I think when the video E moved away from the 5th grade SOL, that changed a little bit, because there used to be a 5th grade writing SOL, but then we've integrated into the curriculum, we have a performance-based assessment as well. I think the intense focus on reading and math over years, because of highlighted data is a piece of that, and I think the, sometimes the time constraints of my writing. So we've made sure to write, we've made sure to include writing into curriculum so that it's much more useful and obtainable to the teachers to be able to drag it into their lessons.
Okay. I think the assumption is, is because students are working on computers more, they're writing less.
So I think, you know, the writing and the feedback on a computer is different, and mastering that, I think, is different, and we're working on that as we grow into our one-to-one division.
And are you, are we requiring cursive writing, or is this print?
So really, when we look at writing, it's, the style is, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, it's just the actual, the writing format itself.
Okay.
The structure.
All right. Ms. Campson?
When we took away the, before we did the writing test, which was a 5th grade test, and then was moved up to 5th grade, it was a very, very weak time across the district, and the reason for that was because writing wasn't tested, writing wasn't emphasized. You couldn't even get teachers to often tell you the different levels of writing and what they were supposed to be doing. And so they, so the writing test was put in, 4th grade and then up to 5th grade, and the writing scores were very, very strong. Even before the, we moved from the old thing in the 90s up into the SOL, the writing got better and better at the, for the 5th grade test. Our scores were the highest. And now that I see the 5th grade's gone again, and I don't lament it so much because the children have to focus on some stuff, but I see the scores dropping again. So I see you're doing some kind of test now. Is that a writing test, or is that a multiple-choice test?
So in secondary, the, there's a writing diagnostic now, that we have, the teachers have a better concept of where their students are in the fall, and we focus more on writing in the curriculum. And in the, with the unit assessments, we used to include just some multiple-choice questions on writing in there, and now we have some free response as well that are short, you know, short answer, but the, you know, the writing test is a mix of multiple-choice and free response, so.
So there's no actual writing test that involves writing?
The, in our curriculum or the state level?
At, what the state level requirement I know is no for, for the elementary schools.
Correct.
But, and I'm thinking of elementary schools here, because that's where the baseline's all set. So my question is, is there a writing test that the district does?
Yeah.
That is actually writing to a prompt?
In 5th grade, there's a performance assessment for writing, and specifically, the new texts were purchased. One of the reasons why they, they were top of the notch was because there is a writing component to them that cycles through every three weeks from Grades 3, 4, and 5.
So they're writing to a prompt in that?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And that's been, and you're, is that just starting, or is that something that's been in place?
Those texts were put into place last year. Is that right, Mr. Brady? Those were the new texts last year, the English texts for elementary.
All right. And so what's the motivation to do well on that? Is it a, is it a grade that they receive?
They do get writing grades in the performance.
Are those on their report card, the writing grades now?
I'd have to look. I'm not sure if it's on the report card, but it's a part of the curriculum and the assignments.
Right. But my question is, is, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I'm just trying to get it straight in my mind, because I know that if writing, if there's not something tied to the writing that requires it, then it wasn't done. It wasn't, and that's why we were having such a bad time before the, when the SOLs came out. So is that something that you could check on and let me know? I'd just be curious to know whether or not they were doing writing to a prompt for grade since, so there would be grade at least at the 5th grade level in prep for moving on to middle school.
I will, I will check to double sure. I am pretty sure they do, but I want to check before I say enough of, yes on that.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for this very detailed information.
No, no problem. My pleasure.
Dr. Ross?
Yes. First, I would like to say I really like the plan of action, and that you're sort of attacking specific areas, you know, based on the data. I think that's very important. And of course, I think we all sort of knew, at least I knew, that there was going to be some dips with the mode of teaching and instruction and online and virtual, and I think that happened at every level, public schools, universities, I think everywhere we felt some of that pain. Even though we got, we got through it, but we felt some of the pain, and we were trying to re, you know, regroup. But one of the things that I think, when you talk about writing, or reading, or math, I was looking to see, are there any strategies built in around critical thinking, creative development, and logic? Because we know from research that that kind of thinking ties into all of that. And I'm wondering, are strategies built into that around critical thinking, creative development, and logic?
So we, we build in, the Virginia Five Cs are built into our curriculum, and that which includes creative thinking and critical thinking in there. And then we also have from elementary through secondary, like career-oriented lessons that are incorporated as well. So yeah, we really, we really push for those as well, and actually, writing is one of the areas where those are shown, when you can really synthesize information from the reading, which is another part of the new elementary texts, and the, actually, the 1st and 2nd grade integrated curriculum, to start synthesizing younger, to put thoughts down. So yes, that's a part of our curriculum.
Good. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Poehl, for this presentation. I have a couple of questions, but one point of clarification, if you can clarify for me. On page 3, oh, slide 3, can you, can you remind me again about this Level 3 below standard? Because it includes, I guess, the schools that met, as you said, as indicated on this slide, one of these criteria. So specifically, my question is around this, those with the four-year tag. Is, so when I look at that, and then I look at slide 7, these, these aren't the number of schools with the four-year tag.
No, no, no.
Right. So that's what I, I want to be clear. So do we know what is the current number of schools with a four-year?
So if, we do, and if you look at one of the ancillary documents that was uploaded, the, the one on legal, you can see there's a number 4.
Okay.
Next to those, and those are all red because of the four-year tag.
Okay. Got it.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Absolutely.
So not to, so my other question is around, I guess, around the action steps. So with, with the 18 schools that were accredited with conditions, so a majority, a majority of them have less than 85% fill rate, you know, in their schools, and we know that math is a critical shortage area. What, what, aside from trying to recruit, you know, more teachers, what other additional supports are we providing in that, in that arena?
So absolutely. So, you know, several, several of our open class were, you know, they're temporary filled with their building level specialists, or a couple Title I teachers that are in there. If there happens to be a long-term sub that has to cover the class, then our CNI team is more concentrated in those 18 schools, specifically the ones with the, the highest ratio of long-term subs in there. To do more regular visits and more coaching in those classrooms. We're also paying substitutes to do professional development after hours. We're actually, right now, lining up for our long-term substitutes to have professional development in both edmenum and Lexia use, so that they have that knowledge base as well. And as we've traditionally done in Norfolk Public Schools, any professional development offering that we have is, has always been open to our long-term subs as well. We, of course, are working with mentoring them as well, with school-level mentors, and, you know, giving them any support they can have. Another thing that Dr. Gibson and her team have done a great job, as well, is pairing a university instructor with the long-term sub, so they have a content area expert in there to help with, with certain areas. So, you know, I think we've really put a lot in place to put supports in for our students to make sure they have what it needs as we start the year.
Okay. So then what, if I could, what would be the, what's that?
Yeah. You can go to your follow-up.
So what would be, so that's great to hear, that the, that these supports in place, but specifically, what would be the trigger down the road if, say, you know, there's, there's a high turnover rate with the long-term subs, or there's, you know, where, where some of the actions that you are putting in place, or supports you're putting in place, you know, can't be executed due to these other, you know, challenges? I guess, I guess I'm trying to think proactively, like what would, what will be?
So I think the next step would be, you know, currently, any division-wide specialist or coordinators have not been placed into classrooms. So on a, if there's something that happens where there's an immediate need that hasn't been covered, we still have some backups that we could use for that. The other part I want to point out is with, you know, our unit assessments in place, as well as with being able to pull Lexian edmenum data in place, we have triggers in place, especially at the monthly monitoring meetings, that'll say, hey, we really need additional assistance in these specific classrooms, which we will then, of course, provide to the schools and the specific teachers.
Okay. Okay.
And one other thing that we're putting in place, or we have put in place, we have certified teachers, they have agreed to teach additional blocks at the secondary level, and we're paying them to do that. So that has worked out really well, really well.
All right. Let's talk about elementary.
I know. That's why I'm secondary, I remember that.
All right. Thank you for that, because the other, so the sequencing in math, I mean, and we see it, and you know, we've talked about, like, the Algebra 2, the decrease, because they had Algebra 1 in the virtual environment, so that sequencing, you know, kind of.
Yeah. And the high school data is tricky now, because, you know, when the, when the video E changed accreditation, there has to be one math verified credit, one history verified credit, one science verified credit, and one, or two, one for reading, one for writing at the high school level. So if a student comes in and passes their Algebra 1 SOL test as a freshman, or they took an 8th grade and passed it, they don't have to take another SOL test. So the majority of our Algebra 2 students are transfer students into the Division, or they're students who may not have been successful in Algebra 1 or Algebra 2 with the SOL test, or were sick and didn't take it. So, and that goes with your science as well. So earth science.
Yeah.
It, you know, we have, you know, some of our middle schools offer earth, and some offer environmental science. Earth has the SOL test. All students have to take biology in high school, because that's a federal requirement, but chemistry, very few students take the chemistry test. So, you know, those are the things we have to think about when we look at that high school data.
Yeah.
Which is why the majority of our, like, all students number comes from Grades 3 through 8. Because after you get to Algebra 1, your math numbers start to decline. And then the reading and the writing is only 11th grade test beyond middle school.
Good. So I see Mr. Jordan, and I think, oh, and then Dr. Gabriel, and I think everybody would have had an opportunity, and then we'll come back, and I know you probably got some more. Okay?
Mic check.
I'm like brushing up against it. Can you remind us with the, the gap, the gap data, the achievement gap data as it's described, can you describe again the, the formula, what the comparison is when we're looking at the, the gap groups? Is it internal to a school? Is it internal against the district? Is it against the state? Can you just explain how the gap group information is determined?
Absolutely. So they look at each specific gap group score, and then they put that against the benchmark. So if it's math, then they have to meet 70% with the combined rate. If it's reading, or math, it's 70%. If it's reading, it's 75%. So in other words, if, when you look at your, when you look at your Black Gap group, it's not against other groups in the Division, it's against 70% for math, or against 75% for reading. And if, and the same level scores go for those. So if they've shown growth, then they may be a yellow, a Level 2. If they make the 75% mark, then they're going to be a green automatically, and each group gets scored individually.
So just, just for clarity, so I try to repeat back what I think you said.
Absolutely.
So you said there's a benchmark, then there's a gap group or subgroup, using Black students in particular. And so then, by school, when we see the gap group summary by school. And so then by school, when we see the gap group summary by school, is how that subgroup in that school performed against the benchmark?
Correct. And when you see the one that's on this sheet that was provided, in the gap groups, one group, one subgroup can be red.
Right.
In level three.
Right.
As long as all the rest are level two or above, you're still, you're in a level two area, so you can still make accreditation.
Right.
If more than one of the groups is in level three, then their, the, the gap group becomes a level three. So when you see a gap group of level three on that chart, that means two of their groups must have been a level three, or they're at a four-year tag.
And just, and the benchmark is the same for all the subgroups?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, the only thing that would change is if, when you talk about growth, or like improving the failure rate that moves up, like we talked about going from, you know, red to yellow, because you've shown improvement in your failure rate, that'll be different based on pass rates. But the, to be a level one, a true level one without any help from any of the other areas, that benchmark is the same for every group.
All right. But you just mentioned for the pass rate, so if the black students at school X, if the pass rate was 40% last year, then when you're looking at growth, it is compared against the 40%, it's not compared against the, the benchmark. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, but 40% is not good, it has to be 50% or higher.
Okay.
There's like a thousand rules here, Mr. Jordan. You're really testing me today, aren't you? No, but I, I would really like to, I'd really like to, to say this. So you're correct. So let's say the black subgroup was at 50%, and they were, uh, it was their first time to be there, and they're a level three right now. So there are no four-year tags, let's just take that out of the picture. And that was their pass rate of 50%, not their combined rate, but their pass rate. So if they improved by 10% of their failure rate, which is 10% of the other 50%, so five points up, they could go to yellow, because they've shown that R10 of growth. But the, the problem with a slow 10% growth, if they don't meet the benchmark within the four years, they get a four-year tag in their rep.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
And then my, my.
I think he has another question.
I appreciate that clarity, because it's, it's been, I asked about it before, it's just kind of baffling. It's hard to dissect it on its own. My, uh, second question. So when I, when I look at the, so in our, in our Norfolk political system, they've gerrymandered us into wards. So I represent, I'm elected from Ward Seven. So in our wards, they are gerrymandered by race. So I have one half the city, Dr. Gabriel has the other half of the city. My half of the city is 70% African-American and disproportionately low income. When I look at the schools that did not meet accredited status, all but two are in Ward Seven. And I'd like to know, what are your thoughts or what discussions have you had or will you be having about, what is it about the circumstances, resources, whatever it is, that if we have 18 schools that have not reached accredited, that 16 of them are in Ward Seven, and many of them are on a Ward Seven pathway from,
Elementary.
Feeder pathway from elementary, middle to, to high? Can you talk about, have you looked at that? Does it mean anything to you? Is it something we should be giving some focus and attention to?
So I, I think we, we look at it in how we look at, at supporting schools equitably. So let's just take university instructors as a, as a point. So we have a limited number that we can have in our contract of university instructors, because we, the budget is not unlimited on that, unfortunately. But the, the supports went to our lowest scoring schools for, first. So Ward Seven is going to have the most university instructors included in them, is, is for support. When we talk about our, our pals tutors at the younger level, same thing. You know, it's increased support levels based on their data. When we do the monthly data meetings and we get support requests back, the ones that get, um, kind of get put to the front of the line are, would be these 18 schools. And since 16 of them are in Ward Seven, as you pointed out, that means the more support's going to go there, because that's an equitable distribution of our resources.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Poole, Dr. Bergzong. Very much appreciate the presentation. Just wanted to comment that the tables and the data were very easy to understand via the color coding. It's been consistent with what you have presented in the past. It, um, it clearly outlines where our challenges are, and I appreciate the transparency of that, especially when it comes to the writing and the science. We have made some very credible gains in reading, which we should applaud, as well as math. And when I went back and I looked at our statistics compared to the state, although the state is outpacing Norfolk Public Schools, we actually outpaced the state in the gains that we made from last year to this year. So while the state may have made seven percentage gains in math, for example, we made 14. And so that tells me that on a state level, we are doing the work that we need to do in order to catch up faster. And I think that's very important for everyone, including our viewing audience, to understand. That is a testament to strong administration, strong teachers and commitment. And so I, I have to give credit to our teachers and our staff and our support personnel for that. When you teased out the, the slide that says the additional uploaded data, can you just walk through again, real quick, this document here? Because what I'm seeing here is the, the annual pass rate and then the SOA combined rate. The annual pass rate, what that says, if we just put it into street language, is this is the percentage of our students that have passed the test. And when we say pass, we mean either.
Benchmark of the test.
Met the benchmark, right?
Met the pass rate benchmark of that test.
Okay. And then the combined rate is what the, what the state is giving us credit for and is?
With growth.
With the growth.
And with our growth.
With the growth.
Correct. And with recovery as well.
Okay. And so I appreciate, again, having both of these data sets for us to review and to continue to review and build upon. My second item is do not underestimate the power of the parent for your strategies. Because every parent cares, whether it's the parent, or the grandparent, or the aunt, or the uncle, uncle. It, make contact with them. I know, I know you have a lot of elaborate strategies there. But sometimes, if, if we don't understand the situation, it's hard for us to do what we need to do. And I understand getting kids to school, making sure they're on time, all of those things. But do not underestimate the power of the parent. And, and let's try to engage them as much as possible, because they are, they are the, one of the key ingredients that we have in order to really propel the success of our students.
Absolutely. And, you know, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I actually met with a couple of coordinators. It was either Monday or Tuesday, or no, it wasn't Monday, it was Tuesday. And we talked about our kickoff of parent university. And we will be working on science for the first one, because science has a high need, and talking about engaging parts of that. So our hopes are early November to be able to have our first session across the division, to, to run those at various schools. So yeah, absolutely. Should have put that on the list. hindsight.
And, and maybe, since you mentioned parent university, maybe we could look at it being family university, because parents can be kind of limited, because people live in different.
When you say, when you say family, that kind of opens it up.
Not a family.
Okay. You got anything else?
No, not right now.
Okay.
Great presentation.
I think we're at, uh.
Did you go?
Did you go? I, I, no, I didn't. I'm, I'm actually feeding off everything y'all said so far. Uh, Ms. Basine?
So I'm trying to get my. They all, I'll pass for now.
Turn on Jeopardy music.
What's that?
Want me to turn on Jeopardy music on? Who's here, mom?
No, thanks.
Well, just a point of clarity. So Dr. Gabriel, you were mentioning the, the growth rate against the state. What, can you just show me which chart you were looking at? Or do you, are you looking at that?
Yeah, which one you're reading?
So I was just looking at the Virginia Department of the School Quality Profile, and I pulled up Norfolk Public Schools. And then when I pulled it up, and this is what I was looking at before, because you had sent us some information.
I'm on the profile now.
With, with the data in comparison, I'm going to see how that compared with MPS. More so for the style of the format presentation, more than anything else. But then I started to look at the trend, and I just, I just noted that Norfolk, while we are under the state performance, where the state is ranking, we almost in all categories outperform the rate of growth to the state.
You mean, from the previous year to the current year?
From the previous year to, to this year.
Okay, okay. I wasn't quite, quite following.
It's online, it's online. Education, pull up school quality profiles and the district's profile. Look under assessments.
We're, we're catching up faster.
She's looking at a number.
Which is what we need to be doing.
And, and, you know, the, when you look at our growth, that, I mean, that's why we're really focusing on growth, because the growth for the assessments last year was based on coming into the year, because we had the first year through growth tests to the end of the year. And to show the amount of growth that we showed, when you compare it to our pass rate, you can see our pass rates still aren't where they need to be. We know that, right? But the growth that we've seen was tremendous enough to, to move almost all of our elementary schools to be accredited with reading, or to be level one with reading. And the two that weren't would have been if they were one more point above. That's impressive. You know, that's impressive work coming out of the pandemic. And to understand that writing and science might not be there, it's because we know that math and reading effort was really put in last year to catch our students back up.
Right. We had to prioritize.
And Dr. Gabriel, just like you said, don't discount parents, don't discount the power of growth. Because if we want our kids to pass, they're going to have to grow. We can't expect them to go from 20% to 90% overnight. It's going to take time, so we do celebrate the growth. And speaking of growth, if my may, a little commercial. So, um, some very positive publicity that we had for St. Helena Elementary School was really just some wonderful news. They were celebrating the fact that in math, we had a 19-point increase, and in reading, 20. And so an interview was conducted with the building principal and a lovely teacher at the school. And so they're very excited. The momentum is very positive and going in a, a very positive direction. So we need to take that time to celebrate.
Go ahead.
Our positive news. Good job, Principal Angel Robinson. Good job. She is really good.
So can you, can you speak a little more about the role, the chronic absenteeism played in our accreditation results as well? Because I know we've been monitoring that through, you know, throughout the year, and I think we've all recognized and acknowledged, you know.
So, yeah, I, I, I can a bit, and then you, that data was finalized by the, I think, on the 29th of September, which is why we didn't highlight too much of it in here, but in November, the reports will be coming to the board for chronic absenteeism. However, we partner with the VDOE on, with the support coach, basically. And one of the high, one of the high focuses of that group is to focus on attendance. So Dr. Gibson and her team, you know, we have monthly meetings now. We, and we've always had them, but now they're more intensely focused with more people across the division to focus on what can we do early on chronic absenteeism? And, and we'll bring some of that to you in November, as, as well, when we talk about those numbers.
So if I, if I could, you know, bring a comment for, because when I, I kind of made my own chart looking at, you know, the, the 18 schools that were not accredited, but all the schools in general, you know, almost all of them had a high.
If I can clarify, they, they are accredited just with conditions?
Right, with conditions. That's what I mean. Accredited with conditions. But in general, when we receive the report on attendance and chronic absenteeism in November, do we have the capability to also look at, you know, I know you're, I know you're going to share with us, you know, how chronic absenteeism is defined, and then, like, what point in the day that attendance is taken? And if there's a way to look at absenteeism, you know, first block, second block? You know, is there a way to kind of capture that data? So that when we look at potential strategies about even, you know, if it's, you know, the block scheduling, like I know is one of your, one of your strategies, and even staggers and things like that, like any adjustments that we might need to make? Will we have, is that, is it easy to capture that data?
So, you know, there are two ways of looking at this. One, for chronic absenteeism, the, the regulations actually changed this year to where as long as a student's in school at any portion of the day, they're, they're counted as present towards the chronic absenteeism. So, you know, that data's a little different. But if you're talking about it secondary school, block by block attendance, that, that would be a pretty immense report. And the, the teachers, though, and at the school level, they flag that at the school level. And there are things they have to do after day two if they've missed a class. And, you know, that, that go with contacting parents and, and reaching out, and, and ensuring that the students have the proper documentation. I can assure you, with the state waiving the chronic absenteeism for accreditation this last year, there was a sigh of relief from our principals at that point, just because of the COVID issues that we found with the tenants last year. But this year, they're, they are, they have a radar focus right on. Radar's not the right word, because that's broad. A laser focus on their chronic absenteeism.
So if they show up for any part of the day, they're considered present?
Present for the chronic absenteeism, correct.
Okay. So they could come in at 1:00 PM? So I guess I'm.
Technically, yes. Basically, what this is saying is if, if a child comes to school and, and is there for like, you know, half hour, an hour, and gets violently ill, we're not, that date doesn't count as that. So, you know, that's what it's put into place for. It's not put into place so that a parent can come check their kid and then check them right out. It's put in place for a reason that, you know, for, for, for years, it was.
I used an exaggerated, you know, I was just trying to get the point of, you know.
Difference between bell attendance and daily attendance.
Well, that's, and that's what I, I was, I guess, trying to get some clarity around. If there's a way to differentiate the bell attendance and the chronic absenteeism data, which is different, I get that. But if that's something that, when we're looking at strategies and action steps that we might take, is that what role that plays in coming up with those strategies, is that the bell attendance, you know?
So, I mean, it would, of course, be a data point we'd be looking at.
Yeah.
You know, but it, it's, that's a pretty deep dive into school-level data.
And I'm not asking for, but, but if you found that, you know, we see this consistent trend of, you know, bell one being, you know, where you're, where you're seeing a lot of absences, you know, I would expect that you might come back to the board and say, you know, this is what we're seeing, this is some strategies we're thinking about. It may impact transportation, it may impact, you know, different things, but, or just a different model, perhaps, I don't know. But, you know, I just wanted to see how readily available that was.
So, um, I think we've had a good conversation. I don't, you have some additional questions, Ms. Basine?
Not at this moment.
Just got to say one technical question.
Yes, sir.
The, the manner in which we measure the fall growth or growth through, fall-through growth, however the terminology is, for this year that we're looking at, is it the same methodology for this, this year that we're in?
Yes. And this, this will be, this will be the second, I mean, yes, it is, because we're using from the fall, the fall growth test. It's technically a through test, which we don't really like, but it's all right. So the fall test to the spring SOL test are how, is how growth will be measured. The, now, the way the fall test is laid out this year is a little bit differently than it was last year. Just, just like the third grade test is now on, you know, it used to be just a third grade test. Now it's based off their second grade learning coming into third grade. So there are little, you know, little things that have changed, but technically, yes, from fall to spring testing is growth. And there are no more growth tables, if you remember those old growth tables, those are out now.
So just, just for clarity, so is it, is it correct or incorrect that last time, a fall test was on the previous year content? And is this year a hybrid, or is that not correct? Some last year and some this, some grade level, previous grade level or some current level?
Friend, really quick.
Okay.
I, I was trying not to.
You can come back later, if you, if it needs.
Last year's year correct was previous year content.
That was heavily taught. In second grade that were introduced in second grade. This year it is current year, so it's almost like a pre-assessment. And then it is going to also adapt above one grade level and below one grade level, depending on how they answer the current year content. So they're struggling in the area answering questions that let's say a fourth grader, it's going to throw out some prerequisite third grade questions to be able to assess where is that student with the prerequisite of those standards. And then a grade level above as well. Um, third grade only goes above. Next year, we'll bring on second grade questions and we'll actually adapt down to second. So that's the shift for this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGary.
Okay, um, thank you, Dr. Poehl, introducing Dr. Poehl. Uh, continuing the drive strategic plan update.
All right.
Take this time to show off my, my daughter David for father's sake.
What is it?
Dad's uploading.
I got a granddad.
Aww.
That's sweet. Did you find it?
All right. Thanks, Ms. Tanner. All right. Good afternoon Chairman Clanton, Vice Chair Dr. Gabriel, members of the board and Dr. Birdsong. This afternoon, I am again joining you by now with Mr. Billups and Dr. Gibson to present the first set of David, data tables and SMART goals for the strategic plan. As discussed when presenting the strategic plan, the specific measurable, achievable, relevant and time-bound goals or the SMART goals would be brought to the board for discussion and collaboration to determine end goals for the strategic plan measures. This afternoon, Mr. Billups will present on staffing data within workforce and resources tables fifteen through nineteen and table twenty-six. Dr. Gibson will follow, presenting on discipline and attendance data within safety and climate tables thirty-six through forty. Then I'll return and discuss academic data within student excellence tables two and five through nine, as well as resources tables twenty-two A, B, and twenty-nine. The SMART goals being shared this afternoon have been created following several discussions with multiple levels and input culminating with discussions with division-level leadership to finalize the targets and annual measures that we share with you tonight. Please provide us the opportunity to share goals and annual targets. And at the end of the presentation, we'll take questions and discussion for the presentation. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Mr. Billups.
Thank you, Dr. Poehl. School board members, good afternoon, and Dr. Birdsong. I'll be starting with table fifteen, the retention rate of teachers. Um, this measures, of course, the retention rate of teachers. The administration suggests the following SMART goal. Increase the retention rate of classroom and non-classroom teachers from eighty-seven point three percent into the twenty-two, twenty-three school year to ninety-one percent into the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. To reach this goal, annual targets have been set, as can be seen within the green row, um, on the chart. I'd like to point out that, um, the, how we got to some of these numbers. Um, retention, of course, is inclusive of retirements, resignations, as well as termination. So we had to look at all of those things. When looking at this SMART goal, these incremental increases are realistic and are supported by current education staffing trends and data that we've reviewed. For example, one thing that we reviewed is the Economic Policy Institute's, um, information that has predicted by twenty-four, twenty-five, the demand of new teachers will reach over three hundred thousand, while the supply is projected to decrease to less than one hundred thousand in number. So we couldn't deny those statistics based on the Economic Policy Institute's, um, data and research. Also, we looked at the National Education Association information that they've produced as well. And fifty-five percent of all educators sadly are considering leaving the profession earlier than what they had planned. We, we recognize and know that we exist in a very competitive market here in this tight water region known as the seven cities. Um, candidates and anyone can get to any school division pretty much within fifteen and twenty minutes of each other. So we could not deny, um, that observation. And just looking back at what we have done in order to staff our schools just over the previous year alone, we hosted six teacher job fairs of our own, as you are aware, if you were to go back and look at them. And we attended thirty-one recruitment events hosted by other organizations. So we've been very, very proactive and aggressive, but we're also being realistic with what the numbers are telling us, um, with this data. Next chart, number sixteen. The retention rate of, the retention rate of staff. This, this table focuses on the retention rate of classified staff members. The recommended SMART goal is to increase the retention rate of classified staff from eighty-three point three percent into the twenty-two, twenty-three school year to eighty-eight percent into the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Again, we were trying to establish a target that was realistic and, and smart, recognizing that all that is happening within our current environment, that some of the terms you may have, you know, heard such as, you know, individuals not, um, not really going back to work or dropping out of the workforce for whatever reasons these are. This tends to hit this population as well. So we're again looking at how we can, how we can meet our goal, but at the same time establishing a, a realistic goal for us to try to achieve. And again, important here to note is that some of our efforts, um, as far as, as, um, particularly here in this region, are uncontrollable separations, specifically when you start talking about military relocations and the transancy that's involved with that, as well as, um, individuals choosing to retire. Um, that's one of those things that we really don't have a lot of control over if someone comes in and tells us that they want to, um, retire. As well as we have to remember that our classified staff members here and in any larger city for the most part are going to have ample other types of employment opportunities um, that we're competing with. So we're not just competing against school systems. We're also competing against private sector employers for classified staff members. Table seventeen, this is the retention rate of our administrators. So when we talk about the retention rate of our administrators, this focuses on retention rate of administrators with the goal being to increase the retention rate from eighty-nine point seven into the twenty-two, twenty-three school year to ninety-four percent into twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, how we got here is, we've recognized that many of our administrators are relatively new or relatively young as they enter into administration. Many of our senior administrators, we've recognized have begun to, began to transition out, begin to retire for whatever those reasons are that they've chosen to do that. So we recognize that at eighty-nine percent, that's a relatively high number. However, we want to take that further by instilling in our administrators, making it why they need to stay with Norfolk Public Schools. So we, we see that as a realistic goal and have the opportunity to work with our younger administrators to make them want to stay with our school division. Table eighteen. Teaching positions filled by the first day of school. This focuses on increasing the percentage of teaching positions filled by the first day of school. The SMART goal here is to increase the percentage of teaching positions filled by licensed teachers the first day of school from ninety percent to, um, ninety-eight percent into the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So that's a, that's a, um, an attainable goal, we feel. Part of what, what is an obstacle here in trying to fill positions by the first day of school is if you recall some of the discussions that we've had, individuals technically, their contract ends on June thirtieth. That's typically, we ask for the, their contracts to be returned to us sooner than that, but some of them may not return it until that last day. So if we don't even get some of the contracts back until June thirtieth, then that vacancy now becomes available in July and we're now still trying to hire for that position. As well as sometimes we don't get resignations until, it could be July or August, because perhaps again, as I spoke earlier, somebody's getting a relocation. Someone got a promotion, um, military transfer. So then that vacancy that shows up before school starts is dated back to June thirtieth because that person never started on the new contract. So then that's what puts us in this position where we never completely always know what vacancies we're going to have unless someone, the earlier someone tells us, of course, the better and the sooner we can work with that. But when people still are resigning in July and August, then that causes the vacancies to also still occur. So that's why we said trying to fill them by the first day of school is a challenge, but we want to increase that, that number. This year, we've, we've been more successful in that we were able to offer contracts before, um, before, be, before the end of the school. In previous years, it was, it was not supported that we would be able to offer contracts, um, earlier. We were offering letters of commitment, but that's not like a contract. And so we were able to, to, to offer those this year. Table nineteen, new hires before July one. This is very similar to what, um, I was just speaking about. Um, this focuses on new hires before July one of each year. This is the first year we've tracked this data and fifty-four percent of the new hires were offered contracts before July one and they accepted them and began working with NPS at the start of the school year. The SMART goal was to increase the percentage of new hires offered contracts on before July one from this fifty-four percent to sixty-one percent for twenty-six, twenty-seven. Again, we expect we'll be able to make greater strides simply because this was the first year that we were ever able to actually offer the contract as opposed to a letter of, of intent to a person. And offering the contract, it, it, it makes us more competitive with our neighboring school divisions if we can commit to individuals, particularly individuals that we're meeting as we're traveling on our recruitment trips who are looking to maybe move to this area, but they want something more definite like it, like such as the contract. And again, here, trying to get this, um, higher, these individuals hired before July one, again, is a challenge in some cases because unless we know that we have the vacancy, then we can't necessarily hire to fill it. Now, we've been carrying vacancies, so this year it was, um, easier to actually do that. But in previous years, if you don't know the vacancy and we weren't in this shortage, then due to the budgetary situations, we weren't allowed to actually move forward with offering the contract. So we, we started taking this measure and the goal is that, is for the target to, to go higher now that we can offer contracts before July one. And lastly, table twenty-six. Um, we're looking at, so non-accredited schools not fully staffed by the first day of school. Again, focusing of course, obviously on decreasing the number of our non-accredited schools not fully staffed by the first day of school. At the start of this school year, eighty-three point three percent of the schools that were accredited with conditions were not fully staffed. The SMART goal here is to decrease the percent of schools accredited with conditions that are not fully staffed with licensed teachers by the first day of school from eighty-three percent, eighty-three point three percent in the fall of twenty-two to zero percent, you know, by the time we reach fall of twenty-twenty-seven. So again, we have our eyes set on positively trying to reach this goal of, of making sure that our schools are fully staffed. Although we're faced with, um, challenges in an uphill, um, battle, um, we see this as, is, is a, a stretch goal for us. And that concludes, um, the tables relative to staffing.
Are we asking questions in between?
Wait till the end, I want to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Billups. Good afternoon, board members and Dr. Birdsong. Many of the goals from here to the end of the presentation focus on all student group. However, data is being shared on subgroups to be transparent on where the work will have the greatest emphasis. I will be starting with table thirty-six, which focuses on chronic absenteeism. The goal is to decrease the percentage of students who are chronically absent from twenty-four point three percent at the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year to fourteen percent at the end of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. For table thirty-seven, the focus is on student referrals for disruption. As a note, the percentage outside the parentheses is the percentage of all students for that subgroup, while the data within the percentage is the percentage of that subgroup that had a referral for disruption. The targets listed are based on current demographics of the division, which is where each subgroup's data should match. The SMART goal is to decrease the percentage of students with referrals for disruption from thirteen percent to eight percent within that timeframe of twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-six, twenty-seven. Table thirty-eight focuses on students with no disciplinary incidents with a SMART goal to increase the percentage of students with no disciplinary incidents from eighty-five percent in twenty-one, twenty-two to eighty-eight percent in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Table thirty-nine focuses on out-of-school suspensions. And the SMART goal is to decrease the percentage of students receiving either long-term or short-term suspensions from thirteen percent in twenty-one, twenty-two to ten percent in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Table forty focuses on black students issued out-of-school suspensions. The emphasis is on our black student subgroup here and the goal is to decrease the percentage of black students who are issued out-of-school suspensions from eighteen percent in twenty-one, twenty-two to ten percent in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Thank you for your attention and I will return the presentation to Dr. Poehl at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Gibson, and good afternoon again, everybody. Um, I'll begin my work with, uh, table two, which focuses on meeting accreditation. And the SMART goal here is for the percentage of schools meeting accreditation to increase from the fifty-seven point one percent we saw this year to one hundred percent by twenty-twenty-eight. The target year of twenty-twenty-eight is due to the fact that accreditation lags behind the testing year. Therefore, this is calculated off the SY twenty-seven data. I think you all know that, but I just wanted to make sure the public knew that. For table five, the focus is on college and career readiness with a SMART goal for the percentage of students who pass an AP or advanced placement exam with a three or higher, who pass an international baccalaureate exam with a four or higher, or successfully complete a dual enrollment class with a C or higher, or earn an industry certification by graduation. And we want this to increase from the thirty-seven point four percent we saw this last school year in twenty-two to seventy percent in twenty-twenty-seven. Table six focuses specifically on IB diplomas. And the SMART goal here is for the percentage of IB students earning an IB diploma to increase from fifty-five percent this last year to sixty-five percent by twenty-twenty-seven. I just want to emphasize, we've tracked the number of IB diplomas in the past, but not the percentage of the graduates. And I think that's a, we think that's a more important number to track. And table seven is focused on students passing the SOL reading tests based on the annual pass rate, not the combined rate. And the goal is to increase the percentage of the all-student group who passed the reading SOL test from sixty-one percent, um, in the spring of twenty-twenty-two to seventy-five percent in twenty-seven. And this is the same for math, going from forty-six percent to seventy-five percent. And again, that's the pass rate. And the same for science, going from forty-seven to seventy-five percent for the pass rate. So table twenty-two A focuses on achievement gaps on the reading SOL annual pass. So table 22A focuses on achievement gaps on the reading SOL annual pass rates. The data shown in the table is the gap from the subgroup to all other students. Therefore, based on last year's SOL reading tests, our Asian subgroup of students outperformed all other students by over 24%, while our black subgroup of students were 21% below their peers. The SMART goal here focuses on each of the target scores seen on the right side of the table, and it's to decrease the student achievement gaps among all subgroups in reading from their 21, '22 gap to the target gap for each group by the spring of 2027. Meeting these targets would place the majority of achievement gaps at a maximum of 10% between the group and students not in the group. And this is with the exception of our, our SWD and EL subgroups, where that gap would be a little bit bigger. And this is the same table layout, except for the SMART goal is for mathematics, decreasing that gap. And our last table update for this portion, up to this, this portion for the strategic plan, is table 29, which focuses on students identified as gifted or as one of our new emerging scholars. And this is to align this population with our division's demographics. So the target data is, that's presented on the right, is this year's demographic breakdown. And the SMART goal is to increase the percentage of students that are identified as gifted or emerging scholar to align with the division's student demographic trends by 2027. And that's the last of our updates, and I would ask Mr. Billups and Dr. Gibson if they'd join me for questions.
The lineup comes. So my question is for Mr. Billups, actually, about our, um, the assessment of the classified employees. I know we've spent a lot of time talking about pay corrections for our teachers and bus drivers, but as far as classified employees and the shortage that we're anticipating, right? And we're experiencing some of that already. Um, what type of strategies, um, I mean, is it salary increases? Or what kinds of strategies have you all discussed, if any, about attracting more people to work in? For example, the nutrition, um, facilities and, and driving those trucks and so on and so forth?
Well, again, as I said earlier, it's, um, we're, the competition is just, is just very steep. We feel as though our salaries are competitive, but what's happening is that, as you hear that language, the great resignation that's out there, many individuals are just disappearing as far as wanting these types of jobs. And so, again, we feel that our salaries are competitive, but many individuals are just not even available, or even applying, or are qualified for some of these jobs. So we're trying to look at, are there ways that we can help qualify individuals more easily? And weigh that against what the, uh, the market is that, that's available. So that's what we're kind of looking at. And certainly, by all means, pay increases would certainly help, definitely, because, um, again, the market is such that individuals can go other places and, and, and compete and negotiate for their wages. And that's what we're hearing a lot from individuals who we, we interview, we make selections, and then we offer them based on their knowledge, skills, and experiences, and then they end up turning us down. So those are some of the factors that we recognize, that we, we have the job fairs, we advertise, we get candidates, but then the compensation becomes a problem with them, for them, because we're in such, we're such in a competitive market right now.
So the, I really liked a few years ago, and I talk about this quite a bit, because I thought it was so creative, the cross-training that, of the bus drivers with nutrition workers. Is that program still happening?
Yes, they can still do, have two assignments, if that does work for their schedule, so, so certainly, yes.
I mean, I think that kind of creativity would, would, you know, probably benefit us. And also, um, our administrators, um, which, so, so we, one of the things that really caught me is how you said we, a lot of them are younger. So what are we doing, what kind of strategies, like, um, I'm thinking, uh, the educational credit, uh, red, educational stipends. So as they're in these positions, and they want to become, get certifications or master's degrees, um, are we doing any type of incentive plans?
Yes, we have our, we have our tuition reimbursement program, as well as there's a grow our own program that we also have in place for aspiring administrators for our school division, so that they know that we believe in them and we want them to remain with our school division. So that's, that's a robust program right now as well.
Are there any other strategies that I'm not asking about? Or considerations to attract more of the classified and administrators?
I think that those are the, the, the ones that we would most, you know, we know what, we know what our competition is out there, and we're facing it, um, you know, head-on to deal with it. But like I said, it's just very, very steep right now, but we have to stay present, and we have to stay out there, and we are, we're at everything that we can be, you know, be at. Have some other ideas that I want to, um, put into place to, to make us even more present, taking advantage of some other opportunities, but I'd prefer not to say them, to give away my thoughts at this point, but, but, but being, being present in some other types of places at some other types of times.
Okay, we'll look forward to that.
If I could, if I could add, you know, a, a large part of these data tables and the monitoring of the data tables is, is it's the development of the strategic, strategic plan and the implementation. So really, we're at the infancy of this, this, this plan, and the implementation committee is now being formed, now that we have a strategic plan, and that's the sole source of the implementation committee. Those questions exactly, Dr. Martin, is to challenge ourselves with moving these data points. Because, you know, we've, we've set some challenging data points for the next five years. And if we just sit here and wait every year and see, did we make it? No, yay, no, there's a, there's a tremendous amount of work that, that's being lined up to meet these data points and to ask and answer our own questions like that, Dr. Martin.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Gabriel, I saw Ms. Bessine's hand, did you have your hand, Mr. Jordan, too?
Oh, I will.
Ms. Campson, then Mr. Jordan.
Well, I just wanted to make an observation that on our monitoring calendar, we have hit almost everything that we said we would hit, from July, August, September, to October, as far as the SMART goals. So, great job. Two questions. In the, in table 5, where it discusses, um, passing AP, IB assessment, dual enrollment, and industry certification, I am very excited to go from 37.4% to 70%. My question is, are these, are these the same thing? So like, if, if I'm getting threes on my AP exam, is that equivalent to an industry certification?
No, it's not, and that's the purpose of this measure, and this SMART goal is a well-rounded student who's ready for, for life after high school. You know, a three on an AP exam says someone might be college-ready. Um, but the certification, in, in industry certification or dual enrollment, might say they're more career-ready. So this encompasses every part of it, trying to reach that CCCRI measure here. So it is, these, these would be different measures, which is why we have the "or" in there, so that, you know, we want to make sure that the students are on one of these pathways. And if we don't move this needle, then that means that we're not focusing on college and career readiness.
So, does the division track the number of advanced placement pass rates with three or above? And we, we track all of those things.
So we, we have, we get the reports every year, and we've talked about AP enrollment, and we've talked about AP test takers, but I don't think in front of the board, we've ever brought the specific three or higher. But three or higher is generally a college credit for a student. So that's why, again, with the strategic plan, putting this out in front and saying, this is what's vital to it. It's not just taking an AP class, although that's, I don't want to steer wrong, that's very important, taking an AP or a dual enrollment. Every one of our students should experience that. However, if we're looking at really college and career readiness, then you need to make a C or higher in that dual enrollment class, or a three or higher on the AP, or a four or higher on the IB.
Right, right, okay. So I might just have some follow-up questions that I might email Dr. Birdsong, just to follow up on this a little bit more, that I might have for my own needs, not for the board. The other item was, um, table 37 with regards to the discipline and decreasing the amount of referrals per student. I know that the division has a number of strategies in place, PBIS, um, all of the social supports that have put into place. I, I just want to make sure that we say as a division, that we're, what we're not saying is, don't write referrals. Deal with distractions. And I'm not saying that, I just, I just know that sometimes, things can be interpreted in different ways. And, and that we want to emphasize all of the strategies that we're doing, because we do not tolerate disruptions. We do not tolerate bad behavior. We're going to try to work at the root cause of it. Um, and I also want the public to hear that we take these things very seriously. We want every student in the classroom to be in a very healthy and safe learning environment. And we, um, we want our teachers to be able to teach and to not have to be, you know, distracted. And so that's the point that I want to just emphasize with this table right here.
And we want to ensure, I can say amen to that.
Okay.
We want our staff and our teachers and our families and students as well to be assured that through our framework with multi-tiered systems of support, we're getting to the root causes. We are developing children, they're not already who they are when they come to us. We have to help them become who they are. At the same time, we have to maintain order and safety in our buildings. We have to maintain an expectation, as well as the realization of respect. And that respect has to be mutual. We have a lot of work to do in this respect, we acknowledge that, and we're working with our staff and our students daily. Our goals here show that we're trying to go green, so to speak, but we're going to get there together. But you cannot get rid of behaviors or reduce those behaviors if you don't acknowledge they exist. And we have to have environments where our teachers feel they're safe, and they can report to us their concerns and receive the support they need to help our students.
Thank you very much.
Just before I go to Ms. Bessine, I want to, because we learn in our governance training to celebrate our growth. So I had my meeting with Dr. Constan last week at TCC, and I was talking about dual enrollment. And she told me we had about 100 students last year, but we're up to about 350 this year.
Wow.
And I'd like to recognize Mrs. Gilchon for her hard work in that area.
Thank you. Publicly celebrate that, but we're in the right track.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you. Um, so I have a few questions, and I guess we'll, I'll start with staffing first. So, piggybacking on a question I had asked earlier, um, in, in the previous presentation. Um, so can you, so I guess I'm thinking about table 26 specifically. And, you know, our efforts to be intentional around, um, some of our schools that are non-accredited currently. And what we might do to specifically look at those schools that, I know we have a couple who are, who have a fill rate of 67% or, you know, below 80%, there's a couple of them. Would, would this overarching goal mask that potentially, if we're not being intentional about focusing on, like, on schools that we will not allow schools to have less than X percentage of, of vacant positions, for instance? Would that, would that be something that makes sense? Like, is there a threshold where we don't want any school to go below? And should we be monitoring it, is my question?
Well.
Does that make, does that make sense, or?
No, I'm not clear on your question. Um, however, I'll attempt to answer. The goal, as we've stated, is for every school to be staffed. However, we know that we are facing many and multiple challenges at the state, local, and national levels. From our perspective, we, we work with, and we strive to, to treat each school equitively and the same. Individuals who we work with, as far as our candidates that we select, they have choices, and we've, we've spoken of that. And they, we can't force people to go to certain schools, it just, it just won't happen. We cannot make a person go to a school if they choose not to, not want to go there. So what we have to do is try to make an environment conducive to a person wanting to go there. That's what, that's the change that we could affect. Making them feel something that says, in spite of what they may have thought, or what they may have heard, something instills them to still want to go there. That's our challenge that we would face, and we, we accept that, and we know that that's a concern and that's a challenge. So we've got to try to change that mindset as best we can, while working with our leaders as far as the things that we may hear, you know, about people maybe not feeling as supported as they want to feel. Um, what can we do to reverse that and make them feel supported? So that's our challenge, and what we can control, what we, what we can control. So hopefully, that provides you with some semblance of, of trying to answer your question.
I, I appreciate your response, and I, I, um, I, I understand that. I mean, we've heard from, you know, teachers over the years about not wanting, ha, having that voluntary piece be part of the picture when, when being asked to serve at a school. But given the challenges that we are facing with staffing shortages, you know, build, making that climate takes time, as we know, it takes time. And in the meantime, as, as we've been talking about around this table, that time is ticking at the same time for our students. And I know we all are on the same page about that, there's, you know, we, we all care about that. Um, but at some point, you know, I've seen other divisions where they are thinking about, um, you know, hard-to-staff stipends, um, trying to encourage, uh, teachers to work in, in those schools by, through those stipends, or with that expectation that we, the board has been committed to, you know, we are truly putting our students first, and with that, we have to make some adjustment. There's got to be some decision around that. And I'm just, I'm just putting that out there as a way for us to monitor that, so that if we do get to that point where, okay, this school, school X has been in this, uh, place of a staffing shortage for X amount of time, whatever that, that might look like, that this is the decision that we have to make, the board needs to, to make, you know, and that.
In response to that, um, as Dr. Poole mentioned earlier, with our teams, we have champions around this work. These teams are being developed as we speak. So they need a chance to get together to develop these strategies. So you won't hear all of the strategies, the things that we're thinking right now, because we, we've just not had the opportunity to, to meet. We just approved the plan just a few weeks ago. So if the board will just give us some time to work with our groups, we are certainly, we will certainly bring those strategies back to you, okay?
If I may, sorry, Dr. or Ms. Bessine, but thinking of the plan also holistically, and your original question around, are we harming other schools? If you go back here, we also have the percentage of teaching positions by the first day of school to be at 98%. So if you look at it holistically with both these goals together, so of course, our schools that might have been struggling academic, we, we have a higher focus there, right? To, to have that, however, division-wide, we also have a goal of 98% by the first day of school.
Okay. And, um, so my last question around the staffing piece. So we have the retention rate, or was there any discussion, or could there be any discussion around looking at the turnover rate as well? It's just like we look at graduation and dropout rates, you know, because they're not the same, so, um...
Over versus retention?
Yeah, because you're, you're using a measurement, if you're using a specific period of time, you could keep, you could keep filling a position, like if there was a,
I see what you're saying.
You know, a class of eight teachers, I'm just using, you know, eight teachers, and you kept filling that position, but that turnover has significant impact, yeah.
That third grade position is a different teacher every year.
But your retention, because you've had a certified teacher in there, might remain the same, but your turnover rate is going to be higher, does that make sense?
And we do provide that to the board monthly.
They give us a report on that.
But I'm talking about the turnover rate, not the termination, not the number, percentage of teachers that have. you know, we called terminated.
So you're proposing that we, a new thing that we potentially look at is a turnover.
That's it. That's what, that's what it is.
Because that report that, that I provide to you all monthly, that, that particular report um, records all of the reasons why month by month
Right, which is different.
A teacher would have terminated and left the, the school division.
That just tells you the reasons why they've left, but it doesn't tell you the turn, the turnover rate.
But it tells you the position. So you're seeing who, who's leaving and why.
Right, but if we're monitoring it like we're monitoring the retention, I think that would be easy for us to, easier for us to, to monitor when we are bringing it back to, to look at it.
So, but, but, and if I may, um, Ms. Basine, so if we were bringing it back to a board level, a decision that we would make about the turnover, I mean, is that really board level or is that more a strategy for HR to figure out? Because I, I think you introduced the whole segment that we're seven cities. We're highly competitive, fifteen minutes away. Um, so you could be looking at turnover potentially, somebody leaving. But I understand, and I'm trying to get to the point where, because I'm feeling you on those back, if it's like a particular position that's constantly turning over, maybe we need to raise pay or something like that.
Well, exactly. So that would be, it could come back to a policy decision. It could come back to a budgetary decision. If we're looking at stipends, if we're looking at pay, um, those kinds of things matter. And I think it's, it answers a different question than the retention rate. So it also could indicate something about climate. It could, you know, and other supports that we might need to put in place to support, um, teachers. It could be, you know, we could look at it and see that, or we have higher turnover rates, which isn't rocket science, you know, where we have new teachers.
Yeah.
You know, and maybe we need to put some budgetary, uh, support around, um, you know, strengthening, you know, our current mentoring program.
So could I, could I pose this then? I know that Dr. Paul said that they're putting the working groups together. Could we possibly send that to your, to the working group that's looking at this particular one here? And at that level, kind of look at it.
To change the SMART goal.
I'm not saying to change the SMART goal. I, I'm saying to go ahead and take that in consideration.
About adding.
You're talking about add.
Adding another one.
She's talking about adding a SMART goal. I'm saying before we direct, saying that, that we kind of look at it holistically with the group. So I'm, I'm going to say parking lot it, work with the committee there. Let's make note of it so we can come back and see if we truly need to make it as a SMART goal change.
That, that would be fine. Yeah. I'm just, I'm asking the question.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm with you. I'm just trying to figure out a way that.
I think it has an important implication, but I'm ask, you know, if it could be examined, what that might look like.
With you on that one. Just with the, because I think, um, colleagues, we're at five fifty-four. I want to make sure everybody gets around there. I'm gonna, we were supposed to join at six. I'm gonna ask for ten minutes additional outside of that. Is that okay with everybody? Six-ten? I know you have to leave.
I have a hard stop at six-ten.
She has a hard stop at six. Is everybody else okay with six-ten?
I can stay till six-ten.
Okay. All right. So, um, Ms. Basine, I, I'm gonna give, once, I'm gonna come back. I'm gonna try to get these others in and I'm gonna come back to you, okay?
Okay.
Um, who did I say next? With Ms. Campson? Go ahead.
Well, on personnel, hate to drop it on us everyone, but this is year one of the three years we put for our step situation. And I think it's too long. I said that last spring when we looked at it the first time. Um, and I'd like that to be looked at again to finish it this year and then let it be done next year. It's like a burden that hangs over our heads. It, it, it attacks morale. I mean, and I know exactly how they feel because I've said before, I'm in that group. I don't get any money because I retired and that makes me bitter. Well, yeah, maybe it does a little bit, but I would like us to take. Well, maybe a whole lot because I know I could never get it. And I'm up here plugging for the teachers that are still hanging on so they can get it. But I, but, but they're hanging on with good reason because this was unfair when it was done and it's been bundled, bundled. I'm using the wrong word there. But it's been, it's, it's being not taken care of in a timely manner because it's been dragging on year after year. I'm tired of hearing about it. I think, so what I'd like to request is that we put some focus on it now this early to see if we could wrap it up next year. And that's, you know, so then we could move on from the situation that's such a weight on all of us. And so that would be my request for this year. I do sometimes get, you know, angry with people where they don't listen. But we have, we have teacher shortages. That means there must be a little bit of money. Probably, I know you're using that money to bring in the extra support. But it's, it's something that I think it's ready to go. I'm not going to talk about it forever. Just said it about a hundred times. I, this is something that you will continue to hear from me. So the best way to get away from that conversation is to see if we can figure out a way to end it by the end of next year. And perhaps some of the money that's left over from the shortages of teachers would be a beginning pool to go to. That, I may be incorrect and that's not the money that's there for it, but it would seem like it is. So if that's something that could be worked on, Dr. Birdsong, I think I just got moved to the top of her list.
List? What list is that?
I think we know what list it is.
There's some agreement around the room.
Right. So I won't keep, I'm not going to talk about it anymore, but that's something I, uh, something I'd like to plant. And then I'll ask again next month. All right, I'm, thank you.
Go ahead, get back with it. Mr. Jordan?
Yeah. Yeah, um, for the sake of time, um, my comments some more geared around, uh, conversations that I think we should have as a governance team and obviously with the supporting input from the staff. There's a, um, book that comes out of Franklin Covey, uh, it's titled The Four Disciplines of Execution. And, uh, wanted, I'm gonna paraphrase a, a piece of it. It says that, um, when you ask your team to focus on multiple simultaneous goals at the same level of priority, the more they focus on, the less they can accomplish. And so that's why prioritization around the goals that can have the greatest impact are, are important. So I wanted to share that. I also wanted to say that for my comments, uh, when I'm speaking of student outcomes or student outcome goals, I'm talking about what students can do and what they know versus adult outcomes goals. So for me, staffing is about adults. It's not about what students can do and what they can know. So I was trying to, oh, and one other thing. I also think there's a difference between monitoring and reporting. So to me, if what we're, what we call our monitoring calendar, again, going back to what we as a board prioritize and focus on is very different than what gets reported. So we can get a whole lot of information that's reported to us. I think that's different from the board establishing priorities and goals of where we can have the greatest impact and then monitoring around that. So I was trying to make a, just a chart as I was, as we were going through the presentation. And I, I lost count of the total number of, uh, SMART goals listed on the tables. But somewhere I came in around twenty. And I think that, uh, of that twenty or so, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight are student outcome goals. And then when you look at the student outcome goals, can you go to table six, for example? Let's do another one. Let's do one of the reading SOL ones. Okay, reading SOLs. So, and I'm trying to tie this back to the strategic plan. So in the strategic plan introduction, it describes the impact of the pandemic on children of color. When we get into these monitoring tables, like on this table, the SMART goal is addressing all student groups. Who pass the reading SOL test will move from sixty-one percent in the spring of twenty-two to seventy-five percent in the spring of twenty-seven. Then we have all the different subgroups. So to me, on this one chart, the SMART goal is around all, but they're about whatever the total number of subgroups really are, uh, multiple goals or subgoals unto themselves. And so what I'm looking for, what I think the board needs to have a conversation around and what I was trying to suggest that we also consider during the strategic planning process is if we know, for example, that, uh, that the pandemic has had a significant impact on black students. And if the data is showing us, or students with disabilities, pick another, but I'm just choosing black students in this example, then I think we should be prioritizing SMART goals around where we can have the greatest impact based upon what the data is telling us and what our demographics show. And so when we come to the board and monitoring and start monitoring, I think if we try to monitor every single subgroup and send the message to the administration that the board is prioritizing every single subgroup on every single table, I think it goes back to what the four disciplines of execution recommends that you do not do. So I would like for us, in our next conversation, before we get too far down the line, to really come back and talk about, uh, what are we going to monitor? What are our student outcome focused SMART goals versus adult outcomes and goals? And then really have a conversation as to whether or not on our monitoring, not our reporting, we can get reports on all of this. But in our monitoring and in the goals that we establish as a board, the goals that we establish for the administration, for the superintendent, in terms of moving the needle, of moving away from all these SMART goals that say all, 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 when the data is clearly showing us that there are student groups or schools that need focus and prioritization towards achievement. And so that's the conversation that I still think we need to have um, as a board because otherwise, again, if we're asking our team to focus on multiple simultaneous goals at the same level of priority, the more they focus on, the less they accomplish. Thank you.
Great points, Mr. Jordan, and that's a great continuation of the conversation we had earlier. Um, and will be the continuation of the next two meetings that the board will have when we talk about those goals, being more focused on those. Um, did anyone else have any? Um, we're at six oh-three. Good, Ms. Basine?
Well, so, so along, along those lines, and I think, uh, something I heard or thought I heard Dr. Gabriel, um, touching on earlier, um, you know, so I appreciate like the, the college and career readiness piece, that that is something that we monitor. Um, and I think that table gets at that. But I, I think it also is important to separate out the or, the ores to see how we, as, as our interim, as our interim piece. The part of it that, that struck me that I think, um, needs attention is table six. It's slide sixteen. And I don't know if this, so when I look at the subgroups here, so there were zero percent of black students that earned an IB diploma last year.
If my memory is certainly correct, I think there were three African-American students enrolled in the IB program and none of them earned an IB.
So I think that part is the part that, that, what's that?
Oh, no. I'm sorry. I just echoed that that was, I didn't see where we have a concern.
So as we, as our, as we continue these discussions about creating access and opportunities for our students, so it has to go beyond, and I know we probably all agree on this, just having students enroll into the program, but ensuring that they are being supported along the way to complete the program. And how we monitor that is going to be really important with that, as Mr. Jordan said, intentional focus of looking at those subgroups that we know, have been impacted by inequities in the system all along. So, so, you know.
And if I may, Ms. Basine, you know, when, when we look at these overarching goals, these, these are, these are high-level goals, right?
Right.
We, we're digging down to that data. That's how I knew that number that you asked today is because we know that data. And we also know that that zero percent is not going to change if we don't change the students who are applying and getting IB.
Exactly.
So that's all part again of the strategic planning process because we're looking at this data. If we want to move the needle on this data, we have to strategically plan on how to do it. And that's why we can't, we're not looking at a hundred percent here because we also know this is a four-year process, right?
Right.
If we can begin with this year's eighth graders with the, with the program selections, you know, I think information by early November, advertisement for everybody, um, you know, then that's, that's what we have to hit. With true academic and career planning is how we start moving these numbers. So it's not, I don't want you to think that we're just throwing these level, high-level data at you. We know the intricate data and that's what we're looking at as a strategic planning committee on how do we change those numbers based on the depth of the data? And not just this percentage we put in front of the community of what's getting monitored around the strategic plan.
And, and I appreciate that. And I think where it's important for the board, for board discussion is because, you know, when we talk about budgeting and we talk about policies around exactly what you're talking about, ensuring that we have an application process that is equitable, having a selection process that's equitable, and then having a support system that is equitable, that all comes back to us. So, um, and that is board level. And so I, I just want to ensure that, that piece, when we get a presentation, like today, I was just, you know, kind of trusting, trying to trust the process here with having the tables up. But I guess what I was expecting with it being on the monitoring calendar, like for discipline, which we haven't um, really talked a lot about, is that we would have a discussion, that would be the topic, that we would all have an understanding of the tribunal process, all have an understanding of, you know, the reporting that, that you have. But then what does that mean for us as a board in terms of budget, in terms of policy, in terms of all the things that we are responsible for? And I think that, as, as we come back and we think about how this, you know, in agenda planning, how this discussion could take place, that's what, what I'm expecting. That's not really at you. It's, it's, it's how I'm expecting, um, these topics to be covered. So, um.
Mr. Chair, I have a, can I speak to that? Because my, I have a slightly different view, although I agree with the direction. So to me, I think, as we were talking earlier about what's board work and superintendent work, I think we should be out of managing your strategies. What I think is the board, the board, but there's a piece to it. So I think the board should establish the goal. And I think, so if this goal were, I'm just gonna leave it as is, all students. What I think we should get back from the administration is the interim goals that belong to them. And that's part of where they will know the strategies as to how they're going to hit those interim goals. And then we can monitor that. But I, I still think we need to have some more dialogue and conversation around what is it that the board is prioritizing? What is it that we hand over to the administration to come back and report to us? How they're going to get it done and how we can then monitor those interim goals? Because even like on this particular chart, it has annual targets for, well, it just says annual targets. But we don't really know yet what the, what the interim goals are. And I think that's what we should be asking the administration to come back and tell us what the interim goals are over that cycle based upon the, the SMART goals that we, that we have, we have approved. And then give the administration, the superintendent, the freedom to go off and execute the strategies they need to execute and give us reports as we move along the way.
So it's got to really be not just the board, but in tandem with the superintendent. Um, because we have to have the educational executive table with us before it's just making random goals. I know we have the data, but it's incumbent upon the entire governance team to have that conversation. And so as I stated before, we've got, um, the October twelfth special call that we've got and we will have a continuation and we're going to build on time on the front end of our, uh, meeting on the twenty-sixth, um, to continue this conversation at the, uh, with the board, um, piece there. Um, it is six-ten. Uh, I tried to stay on time there. I appreciate the conversations, uh, from my colleagues, the presentations. Um, always, um, and I know Dr. Birdsong, you were concerned, I know Dr. Um, uh, Gable, you stated it there, you had additional. Um, don't let this be the end of the conversation. If you have additional follow-up questions or things, please reach out. If that's okay, right?
It's always been okay.
Have a two-by-two, uh, have a deep dive, have a conversation. Um, we appreciate it. Uh, just again, I mentioned, so it'll be announced, uh, this week. But October twelfth, we have a special call meeting for the board. And then please, for, um, any people who are. And then please, for any people who are watching, we will not have our normal third Wednesday board meeting. Several of the board members are going to the Council of Great City Schools, so we're moving that to the fourth, um, Wednesday of the month, which will be October twenty-sixth. Uh, with that, thank you for staff and everyone that's here and everyone watching. Y'all have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.